Welcome, everybody. Grand Forks City Council meeting Monday, April 18th, 2022. Get a roll call, please, Maureen.
Weigel.
Here.
Docler. Weber. Mr. Weber, are you on? Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Levine.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Weber's here.
Thank you. We got you.
Weber online, okay. Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. I'm going to keep that tight today. We had a lot of proclamations last week, so we'll move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.0 is Home Improvement Partnership, HIP, Loan Program with Gate City.
Mr. Kalman, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Excited to be here tonight with Brittany Quentin, Becky Mindeman, Vicky Geller, and Katie Graham from Gate City Bank to announce the opening of our 2022 program year for the Home Improvement Partnership Program, or HIP. This is, I believe, our third year partnering with Gate City on this program. Program offers low-interest loans to homeowners to help them make improvements, repairs, that sort of thing, to help both increase the lifespan of their home while also improving property values as well as improving, obviously, a surrounding neighborhood. Homeowners whose property value is valued at $250,000 or less are eligible for the program for both 10- or 15-year loan ranging from $10,000 up to $75,000 with interest rates as low as 2.26%, which, of course, today is quite a reduced rate. From a process perspective or how this program works, applications will start with the city where I'll review for things like zoning compliance that are current on property taxes, that sort of thing. And then the applications are then forwarded on to Gate City for the financing component of the project and then to, obviously, close a loan. This year's program runs from April 15th through October 31st, so the application window is open and live on the website. And yeah, just very excited to participate in the program. I know we have those four here, put back here, to say a few words. And then, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds good. Is this Ms. Clinton and Ms. Mindeman? Am I saying that right?
Ms. Mindeman, yes.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor Bocinski and members of council. So he actually took my first line, was introducing everybody. So my name is Becky Mindeman, and I'm a Senior Vice President of Retail Banking for Gate City Bank. And with me I have Vicky, Brittany, and Katie, who will be facilitating the program at Gate City Bank. At Gate City Bank, we are committed to creating a better way of life for our customers and the communities that we serve. The home improvement program that we have with the city just does that. This program is designed to assist local homeowners, encouraging the preservation of older homes and beautiful neighborhoods in our communities. In addition, the initiative helps the city maintain affordable housing and adds long-term property value for our local homeowners. Since 2005, as Andy said, we have been proud to support and invest in this program in communities across North Dakota, Minnesota. Third year in Grand Forks, but since 2005, we've actually had this program in other communities. We are very grateful for the opportunity to have this within our community to create a better way of life for our friends and neighbors and have set aside $2 million in funds for Grand Forks. We have a nice big check to present to you tonight to do that.
All right. Thank you. Give them a round of applause, too. Thank you.
Oh, you were fine. Now I can see you. Maureen, just look that way. No, you're fine. Now you're in the picture. There you go. You're good.
Thank you. Item 2.1 is the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Inner City Bridge Update. There's four attachments and also included is a citizen comment.
Mr. Fiel and Mr. Karinko, take it away.
Hello, Mayor Bocinski, members of city council. I've asked Dave Karinko to kind of give us an overview. You recall, and there's been a lot of press coverage over in East Grand Forks, they've been working on the inner-city bridge. We have been working with the MPO. Obviously, right now, we're in a little bit of a state of flux with the MPO. They have hired Stephanie Hallford from our city planning department. She's going to start her work sometime in May. So we have a bit of a time gap right now. I did speak with Mr. Levine, who is one of the representatives on our MPO Executive Board, along with Ms. Mock, who is the chair. And so what I've offered up to East Grand Forks and their city administration, Mr. Murphy, is my understanding is the MPO Executive Board asked that the two city administrations get together and try to plan a course ahead. I did speak with Mr. Murphy and did enlighten him that we have several things going on right now in the city of Grand Forks and that if he wanted to take the lead on behalf of the greater good of the project, I was good with that. The project has moved, or they've moved further and faster than I anticipated that they were going to move forward, so they do, on this week's agenda, have an RFP process set to take the next step. Also, on their agenda for this week is a land purchase for the 32nd Avenue corridor on their side of the river. So with that, I thought, I did get some inquiries, I should say, Councilmember Cavami, I think this is in your ward, for some citizens concerned about, hey, is our city council engaged on this? So I placed it on the agenda just so that we can get re-engaged on the matter, get up to speed, and then get some feedback from US City Councils so that we can start to have a dialogue with our administrative colleagues over in East Grand Forks. So with that, I'd call on Mr. Karinko to give us a five, 10-minute update of where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Fiel. Mayor Bocinski and members of the city council. So what I have before you this evening is kind of a recap of what we've kind of accomplished in the last four or five years. So first, we're going to start off with back in about December of 2018. Okay, yeah, we do have it up on the screen. The MPO completed their 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, Street and Highway Element. And as a piece of that, they ended up looking at the Red River Crossing Analysis Technical Report. Now, this study itself ended up looking at a bridge crossing at five different locations, which included 17th Avenue South, Elks Drive, 32nd Avenue South, 47th Avenue South, and Merrifield Road. This study in general was pretty much used to do an analysis of the potential traffic pattern shifts as well as looking at the different benefits of savings for vehicle miles traveled, vehicle hours traveled. Some of the big things on this one is, as you can see in the highlighted area, in looking at some of the level of service for the Point Bridge, it ended up identifying that under the 17th Avenue, Elks Drive, 32nd Avenue, crossing alternatives, the Point Bridge level of service improved. On the Gateway Drive Bridge, it operated better under the 17th Avenue South, the Elks Drive, 32nd Avenue South, 47th Avenue South, river crossings. Demers Avenue didn't really see a whole lot of change, no matter the alternative, and Belmont Road operations were better under any of the river crossings because it shifted that traffic. In looking at some of the vehicle miles traveled decreases and vehicle hours traveled decreases, they ended up looking at all of them. 17th Avenue South River Crossing had the lowest reduction. Elks Drive River Crossing had the third lowest reduction. 32nd Avenue showed the largest decrease of any of the alternatives. 47th Avenue showed the fourth lowest reduction of any of the alternatives, and Merrifield Road had the second lowest decrease of any of the alternatives. Now, in looking at the different benefits and actually putting a dollar amount to them, and I do have to apologize because this wasn't taken directly from the document, I had to do a little bit of data data on this one, but these are all the different tables that identified the benefits for each of those different alternatives under the no-truck scenario. When this was, when this study was done, they ended up looking at both a no-trucks bridge, so would only handle local traffic, as well as a truck bridges, a bridge that could handle trucks as well. So later on, we ended up looking at just a local bridge without trucks, so that was the information that I pulled. So 17th Avenue had a total benefit of about $30 million. The Elks Drive was about $27 million. 32nd Avenue had a total benefit of about $44 million. And 47th Avenue had a benefit of about $4 million, with Merrifield Road having a benefit of about $32.5 million.
Sorry, Mr. Karinko, can you clarify the benefit that you're talking? Is that over, like, what timeframe?
This, I believe, was over a 20-year period, starting in 2030, which was when they had originally projected the bridge to be built.
And this cost is calculated based upon fuel savings?
Travel time.
Travel times?
Travel times, operations, crash costs, as well as air quality.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So after this study was completed, city of Grand Forks ended up partnering with the city of East Grand Forks and ended up hiring AE2S and KOLJ to perform a hydraulic analysis. Now, this analysis was kind of used to look at the top three picks, which were Elks Drive, 17th Avenue, or sorry, screwed up on that one. Thank you. Elks Drive, 32nd Avenue, and 47th Avenue. And let's see. In general, this one to look at not only the bridge locations, but whenever you end up installing anything in the 100-year floodplain, you can potentially have impacts to that floodplain that you need to then mitigate. In addition to these three locations, the study also looked at three different bridge heights. There was a low-height bridge, which would need to be closed at about a 10-year flood event, a medium-height bridge, which would need to be closed at just under a 100-year event, and then a high-height bridge, which would need to be closed at, well, which would need to be closed at some point over a 500-year event. Costs for these bridges, as well as the mitigation required for them, were identified in this table, and I do apologize if, oop. Let's see if we can't. There we go. Make that a little bit larger there. So in looking at the costs themselves for the bridge, as well as the mitigation costs, some of the things that kind of came to light were that the Elks Drive low option was almost as expensive as the medium-height bridge option, and for the 32nd Avenue, the low-height bridge was substantially more expensive than either the medium or the high, and that was primarily associated due to the mitigation efforts that would be required. And so those were a couple options that were recommended for removal. In addition to that, though, 47th Avenue does have fairly comparable costs. The issue on that one was primarily where the flood protection levees were. On the Grand Forks side, our levees go all the way down to Merrifield Road, but on the East Grand Forks side, their levee system stops at about the equivalent of our 32nd Avenue. So one thing that this study didn't take into consideration was the additional, if you wanted to keep the bridge high and dry and open during those high and medium-level events, you would also have to build another mile, another mile and a half of elevated roadway in order to keep that bridge open. Otherwise, the roadway that was attached to the bridge would end up flooding, and you'd have to close the bridge anyway. Now, one of the things that this study did have is it did have some next steps that were identified in this, and one of which was the MPO doing a regional street and highway study or a traffic impact study, and the other was also to have Grand Forks and East Grand Forks jointly decide on a preferred bridge location and height. Oh, sorry. Following that, the MPO ended up completing a future bridge traffic impact study, which was completed by Alliant Engineering just here in January of 2022. And as part of this, this ended up kind of combining the information from those previous two studies, the benefits that were taken from the street and highway element, as well as the costs and the mitigation efforts that were identified in the hydraulic impact study. And then this also ended up looking at what the costs would be for intersection improvements if a bridge were to go through. And with the associated costs and the other issues on 47th, this study ended up looking only at Elks Drive and at 32nd Avenue. In looking at some more of these details and the actual breakdown, this study also ended up looking at a no-build alternative, which, if a bridge wasn't built, what improvements would we have to make in order to still allow a decent level of service for our traffic? And that no-build alternative ended up incorporating intersection improvements as well as a partial continuous flow intersection, or CFI, which was pulled up from a 2011 MPO study on the North Washington Street Corridor, I believe. So you can end up seeing that the no-build alternative would still cost approximately $17 to about $26 million. The Elks Drive would be between $32 and about $34 million, and the 32nd Avenue would be somewhere between about the $40 to $41 million. Now, in developing large-scale projects like this, one of the things that you do need to look at is, you know, what are the benefit-cost considerations? And this study ended up looking at the benefits from that previous MPO study, as well as all of the costs. And one of the things that kind of summarized here is that the benefit-cost ratio for the Elks Drive was less than one, 32nd Avenue Corridor was greater than one. Those are kind of the summaries on that one. Now, in looking at steps that have been taken after these three different studies, on the Grand Forks side, we have engaged Bolton and Menck, and they are doing a deeper dive on a lot of these intersections that would likely need improvement. With the MPO and their federal regulations, they can only get so deep. They can't do the very, very detailed layouts and the very detailed estimates. And that's what we've hired Bolton and Menck to do, is to get into those intersections, find out how much right-of-way are we likely going to need, what are going to be some of the ideal layouts on some of those things. And that is a study that is currently ongoing. On the East Grand Forks side, at the March 22 East Grand Forks City Council Work Session, they had discussions as to hiring a consultant and sending out an RFQ or an RFP in order to get a bridge project as shovel-ready as possible, and that was what Mr. Fiel was talking about earlier. As well as on the agenda, I believe, for tomorrow is an item to discuss adopting a resolution approving of a land purchase for approximately 64 acres for about $700,000. That piece itself is located approximately where that 32nd Avenue Corridor Bridge would be located, and you can see those parcels on the screen. That is about what I have for you for a general update.
Mr. Karinko, I got a quick question for you.
Certainly.
One of the steps you had mentioned earlier was finding a preferred bridge location with the city of Grand Forks and East Grand, did that, did that part happen?
As far as I'm aware, no.
Why did they purchase land at one location, then?
Mayor Bocinski, I think they saw it as an opportunity. My understanding is they purchased the land through an auction, and I suspect it was one of those moments in time where either we go forward or we don't. My understanding is they did submit a bid and were the highest bidders, so they are planning to go to their city council, I think, tomorrow to, you know, consummate that purchase. Well, we have talked about, just because Mr. Halligan, I think he retired at the end of February, we've been going through a process. So I think it's really important now because we certainly, the other pressure I think we have right now is certainly, what I explained, East Grand Forks is we have the underpass at 42nd and Demers. We've got the 47th Avenue to 49th interchange that we're working on with the DOT. And one thing we want to make sure, and those are prioritized about when we can get those done, and we're in study of both of those projects that are to get them to shovel-ready, is that we're just trying to align ourselves with our own DOT, that these are our priorities. Not to say a bridge is our third priority because we're just further behind, because what we don't want to do is go to the DOT and then confuse them, as we've been telling them for the last several years, is that these are our first two priorities, and that's what they're partnering on. However, on the East Grand Forks side, I think their priority is that bridge, because this is their large transportation project that they want to move forward with, they are in line, my understanding is, on the appropriations committee as part of their bonding bill to get some funding. However, as part of that story, they need to make sure they're aligned with the city of Grand Forks, so if they're going to go ask for, you know, appropriations for this particular bridge, they need to make sure that they're aligned with Grand Forks. And so those times are coming sooner rather than later, and so I think we really are going to have to get engaged. And despite not having an MPO director, I think, that's why I asked Mr. Karinko, he's been following it from the city of Grand Forks perspective. I think also we need the MPO Executive Board to make sure, you know, that's what they're there for, is to make sure we're aligned between the two communities, and so that when we go to the DOT or we go to the Minnesota DOT, that we're aligned in what we're doing here. And my concern right now is I think East Grand Forks is moving out, and we're a little behind in the conversation. I think that's concerning people in and around 32nd Avenue South about where's the city of Grand Forks on this measure. So this is kind of our first option. Really, what we're looking for is some feedback on what you would like us to do from here, knowing that East Grand Forks is, I think, going to move out despite that. I would think whether Mike, or Mr. Karinko talked about that, RFP or the RFQ, they're going to look to hire an engineer. They're going to look to a cost share from the city of Grand Forks regarding that study, and not only a cost share, but to agree on what we're going to study next, as they're trying to get the project moving sooner rather than later so they can catch up to the interchange project and they can catch up to the underpass project here in the next two years. And they got that funding appropriations on the Minnesota side of the river.
All right. I know we got two MPO members on our board here, if anybody wants any comments for now. Mr. Levine, please.
Sure. I'll start, and JD, please, go ahead. So what I recall is back when this was in the 2045 transportation study, the city of Grand Forks took a vote on this and selected 32nd Avenue South as the location for the bridge. And then, then to augment that, we went and did the additional study because we had to determine if you could even build it at 32nd and what the hydraulic analysis were. So originally, in the 2045 traffic study, we looked at an array of options. The highest priority rating, I believe at that time, was the 32nd. I think both the cities of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks adopted that, not unanimously, though. That would probably be the one thing that I would say. And then, because there was some questions, we went back and at least did the hydraulic analysis, because it was no use selecting a location if you couldn't build it. We didn't know what was going to happen. So we did that, and then as a second phase or whatever it is, we had that Citizens Advisory Committee, and they went through the process again. And so all those times, that was the location that was selected. And I think that then, when that last one came through the MPO, that's when East Grand Forks, I think, selected the process or of hiring somebody to help shepherd something through. That's what I recall. If somebody tells me I'm wrong, gladly hear it, but, Ms. Mock, maybe you can correct me or whatever.
No, I believe that that is correct in the, in that plan, we did have 32nd Avenue that was voted on by the council, not unanimously, but by a majority. So I believe by programming standards, in order to change that, that plan would have to be reevaluated, and it would take a formal motion and a formal vote to reconsider that. I do think that we had this further study, the traffic impact study, and we did have representatives from all of the affected corridors with the intent being that we get numerous voices at the table and discussing, and I guess there was not a formal recommendation on a location made by that committee. So, you know, to some extent, that means they didn't recommend overturning the decision that had been made. I guess it's somewhat concerning to me. I think I had been under the impression that the Merrifield Bridge had environmental documentation that was done that was adequate for potential funding, and that is not the case. They did not have up-to-date environmental work. So as a city and a community, we're sitting at a time when there are potentially road dollars available and bridge dollars available, and we don't have any environmental work done on any potential location. So I think some of the continued planning from an MPO perspective has been to start to get us into a position that we could be ready for potential funds. You know, that's why we've done some of these studies, and so that would probably be another course of action. I don't recall taking a vote to put 47th Interchange above a bridge in terms of priority. Perhaps I forgot that, but I think that, I think that there's, that's probably not a unanimous decision either. The other thing I would note is that we currently have intersections by the Point Bridge, by Belmont and Fourth, that are at Level of Service E under 2021 condition, existing conditions. And my concern is that we're already at a Level of Service E. That traffic comes up Belmont, it comes up through the city, and we're also talking at the same time at developing south of 62nd with no real adequate plan for getting people across to the other side of the river. And we're talking about redeveloping the water treatment plant, which will also cause more traffic in and around those intersections that are already at a Level of Service E. Also, we've got a school right next to there, so we've got considerations from a safety perspective, and that's current conditions that are projected to have increased traffic. So I did think it was interesting that part of what they found in the study is that the morning hours are worse than the afternoon hours. So, you know, that is a little bit more concerning. So I guess, I think we need to take a serious look at what happens if we don't have a new bridge built, because we've got a lot of neighborhoods through, especially that Belmont area, where traffic comes through there and comes up to connect to the Point Bridge, which is our furthest south location, to get across the river. And when you consider how far south we are, that's a lot of traffic that gets in those neighborhoods. And my, my concern is that at some point, you're going to talk about either no parking on those streets, which we all know how people get when we start talking about taking away side-street parking, you know, that is very sensitive. And I guess I don't know at what point we'd be talking about buyouts to add a lane or something of that nature along those, that's much more of a technical engineering question. But I do think, you know, choosing to not move forward with a location also means we're going to have choices for what we do with a no-build, no-bridge, and no-connection. And my biggest concern is the development in that area that will help bring more cars and more traffic, as well as continuing to develop south, which, you know, we need a way for people to cross the river. So those are kind of some of the ongoing concerns, I think, that we need to start addressing.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. Any other comments for today from council? Mr. Cavami, I think your ward did shift south a bit, so I don't know, 30 seconds in your ward.
Yeah, I don't think it is. I think now it might have shifted, but, you know, as a member of the task force or committee that helped with the traffic study, the most recent one, it was really interesting. I think everyone, everyone on the committee, which represented all the different areas within the community that could potentially be impacted on both sides of the river, I think everybody unanimously agreed that the current solution wasn't going to work long-term. I think there was a lot of discussion where we couldn't really come to an agreement on where that belonged. So for me personally, I was a little surprised to see the MPO recommendation kind of still just stand, rather than saying, hey, we had a group and there's still a lot of things that need to be answered. You know, I was pretty vocal in feeling that 32nd was not a fair compromise to our citizens. You know, unfortunately, that would be a really ideal location if you're wanting to create a thoroughfare to go shopping or to connect to I-29, but it also runs right through our, you know, our community with established homes that, for me, you know, our, you know, our, a community with established homes that, for me, you know, we talked about Elks and the opportunity to create a true intercity connector, not, not a place to get off the highway and cross the river, right? It's, it's to connect the communities. It's not the fastest way, but it's, it's almost, we want, what's the most painful way for most people, right? We don't want something that's really, really a great option for someone because that means that somebody else is, is not feeling the equity in that decision. And what's really great is that the property impact in Elks is pretty minimal and the, you know, one of the owners of, of the only house on Elks was actually part of that task force and supportive of an Elks location. So it seems to me that there's still a lot to consider and I'm excited for us to get together and talk about it, you know, as a, as a council.
Thank you, Mr. President Sandy.
Mayor, I appreciate that. And Mr. Veen, I, I do appreciate your rendition of what happened a few years ago when we approved the 2045 land use plan or transportation plan. But of course, I remember it differently because there was a lot of discussion about how we had to have a placeholder in the plan of a bridge location because we had to have it in order to qualify for, potentially for federal funds. And so how, Mr. Haugen, and if you recall, I was on when we approved the 2040 land use plan, and we even discussed it at that point when we were just choosing a placeholder in the plan because we had to have it in order to qualify for federal funds. There wasn't a discussion about should we have it at 32nd or should we have it at Elks or should we have it at 24th? It was, yeah, we just need it in the plan. And then it became part of the plan. And then East Grand Forks jumped all over that and says, well, it's part of the plan. And of course, you come in and say, well, it's part of the plan, so it's got to be part of the plan. So we've already decided that, which we certainly hadn't had any of these discussions at that point at all. And, and that's okay. I think, I think it, it is very telling that that committee, the citizen advisory committee, didn't actually come out with a recommendation. And I know they didn't because it would have been very controversial. And it was very difficult to pit one neighborhood against another, which is why I believe that they didn't want to come out publicly and make a recommendation. Mr. Phelan and Mr. Krenko, why haven't we gotten, that, that whole committee was run by the MPO, was it not? Why, why did Mr. Haugen not bring a detailed study back to our committee or to our council to talk about what happened there?
Mayor Bochinski and Council President Sandy, I think that would have been the best case. I think we're just caught in the interim on this. You know, typically, once MPO is wrapped up with a study, and I think it was a, probably a non-recommendation, and it should go, you should have gone back to both city councils for further discussion and deliberation. And I think what I'm trying to do is, East Grand Forks is moving out and this is our first conversation. So at the very least, we'll probably need it at the next committee, the hold meeting, just to make sure we're aligned and we don't have any, obviously, it can't be a bridge to nowhere. And we don't want to look a follow of our state agencies when we go, go to them.
I think, what, the city of Grand Forks, we could decide today that we want it at 47th, we started buying land at 40. Well, tell all the people that own land there by the river at 47th that we're interested in purchasing your property. East Grand Forks, in 25 years, they're going to be there and so they'll be ready. And so whenever you're ready to sell, let us know and we'll pay you what your property's worth. And we could make that decision today. As a matter of fact, I would say, I wish when my mother was on the council complaining that there was no bridge back in 1996, she should have said, hey, we're going to put the bridge at 47th and let's buy the land today. She should have done that. She did not. The people that were on the council here in Grand Forks 20 years before that should have said, hey, we want the bridge at 32nd, let's buy the land and, and plan for it. The problem is our communities are growing in different directions and at different rates. And I don't know how we're ever going to marry this up. What, what I do know is Mayor Gander's had a couple of opportunities to do things for the city of East Grand Forks recently, including putting in the roundabout at Biglin and Reinhardt, which would help a lot of, alleviate a lot of their congestion in their own community. But instead of doing that, he vetoed that plan that was presented and approved by the, the council members in East Grand Forks. And so, and then he put it toward their industrial park or whatever else he did. So in my opinion, he's had opportunities to help the citizens of East Grand Forks and he's not actually doing that. And he has told us very, very vocally that this is not an either or, inner city and Marifield Bridge, yet I haven't heard him say one thing about let's get the Marifield Bridge done yet they're going ahead and buying land in, in, on 32nd without actually us coming together and having, having the meeting that was discussed by the previous MPO studies. So ultimately, what I'd like, I'm, I'm happy to continue having these conversations and I can 100% back Ms. Mock's statements. We need to figure out how to alleviate the traffic and we need to do it in my lifetime. We've got to get this figured out. But we also need to continue to have the conversations with the relevant parties. For example, has anyone talked to the school district? Has anyone asked the school district where they stand on this issue?
Mayor Bochinski and Council President Sandy, the school district did have a representative as part of that traffic.
That, that didn't provide a recommendation. Great. I think we, as a community, should go to the school district and ask them their opinion. And it, they don't, they don't get to make the decision, but wouldn't it be nice to know how they feel about this? Considering we're talking about essentially making a major highway to run by two schools that we all support that have young people wandering around? I'd like to know how the school district feels about that. Can we get on their agenda?
Council member, Council President Sandy and Mayor Bochinski, what, maybe what we ought to do, we haven't done a joint meeting since I think the last time we talked about a bridge. And so I think what I would plan is have another joint meeting regarding the bridge matter between both councils. And, you know, I tried to hold them off until May when we had Ms. Hallford here, but I think they're moving a little bit quicker than we are. So I think it would be, it's about time that we have both councils together and discuss this, this matter. And I would try to do that, you know, in the April, early May timeframe. If we can find a day, we can get together.
I think we should rent the empire and do it on stage and fill the auditorium with people that actually care about this issue and take public input.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, thank you, President Sandy. One second, Ms. Mock. I know we've got Mr. Weber online. He hasn't got a chance to speak yet. Mr. Weber, are you there? Do we got him back there, Cheryl? All right, go ahead, Ms. Mock. Mr. Veen, please.
Just a couple, a couple additional comments. I agree with Mr. Sandy. I was hoping we would have actually had a recommendation out of that committee instead of having, just go to the committee and have discussion. I did listen to some of the closing comments that were made by both, about them by most members, and I, I probably feel fairly confident that this 32nd was the preferred location. It's probably different than maybe what you think or recall, but that's what I recall. But I do think having another meeting with all of us get, getting together, I think makes absolute sense, that we need to, to get some direction going on this because we've done the two additional studies. I, I do disagree that this was more than just a placeholder. It was actually a selection because there was, again, a number who approved and those that didn't. And, and so it was obviously that never, not everybody wanted it at that location too. And I think that's been the case for at least 30 years that I remember. Nobody's been willing to make a decision on where that bridge should be. We were trying to move it along. We opened it back up from 32nd to also include Elk's Drive because we just need a bridge. You know, I'm, I'm not here to fight for aid location per se. We need to figure out a way to resolve this issue. And that's what I wanted to see happen and come, because if I come in with a preconceived notion, then I'm not going to be open-minded about it. But if I come in and say, let's figure this thing out, let's sit down, what's best for the city, have Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, because East Grand Forks is growing different than we are, but this, these transportation plans are meaningful and they need to be, we need to work with them. And, and we got a new one coming. So I'd just say, let's get together and follow and, and continue this. There's a lot of comments that could be made that haven't been made here as you go back and look at all the, the impacts and, and the like. Because we did last time have input from the schools and the safety, Safe Kids Coalition or what, routes to school. All of that's pertinent for what we're doing.
Ms. Mock.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I completely agree. I think we should have more discussion. We should have more discussion so that we're all on the same page. We should have more discussion with East Grand Forks. I also wanted to point out that there was survey data that was done where it's probably one of the more robust samples that we've been able to get on this. So, you know, overwhelmingly, it's not popular to not move forward with a new bridge. However, the location of the bridge is the sticking point. And so that is really the part that needs more discussion. So that's very interesting. It would be nice at some point, maybe, if we can present that and perhaps that's either before or after we have that new MPO director or that could be part of a meeting to go over especially some of those survey results because it did get pushed out through the schools. I know that they did send that survey link out. So, you know, it's not perfect data, but it's more robust than just maybe what we've heard before. I also, in addition to fully understanding what it means for the city to not move forward with a bridge as we go forward, because the traffic counts currently are some of the highest in that Point Bridge area. So I think we all need to fully understand that lack of action is taking an action. And that means going with the no bridge and that will have consequences at some point where we're going to have to plan for that. So I think we need to understand what that means for the city, especially before we're redeveloping a water treatment plant and things like that. I think we just need to wrap our heads around that. The other point that I think is something that we could potentially all agree on and I think is very important that we get on agendas, is that we do have safe routes to school. We currently have Phoenix Elementary that has these traffic counts today. And it, there needs to be solutions. They need to come with potential solutions and we need to visit those and see what we can do. And we currently have issues pointed to some of those schools on 32nd Avenue as currently having safety issues for kids today with the traffic counts as they are. I think all of that needs to come forward and we need to try to address all of those issues potentially completely separately from a bridge. Because if we have traffic concerns or safety concerns, you know what, Kelly or Schrader today, I think we'd all be interested in whatever we can do to solve those so that we address those issues. If there are needs, we need to take care of them. So I think that those are all, I think that's a step that we could all agree on and that we could all be willing to support and it would help in the conversation as we understand, you know, what it would fully mean to put a bridge at 32nd. We need to understand that before we select that location too. So.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. Mr. Weber, are you on there? We heard you shuffling. We'll see if it works this time. We'll give you a couple more seconds there, Mr. Weber, if you can get connected. There you go. Please.
Hello, can you hear me this?
Yes. Speak loudly if you can.
Not a whole lot to act. I'll be very quick. The, the situation is we have a problem, a problem that needs to be solved. We've got some possible options for solving that. And we've got an opportunity in terms of federal funding to, to move this forward. So as Ms. Mock, as Vice President Mock has just mentioned, we all seem to agree that we need further discussion and we're, we're, we're all willing to engage in that. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Yep, Mr. Sandy, please.
One last thought. I believe, I could be wrong, but I'm reading the tea leaves and paying attention to people and how they've been voting. I would be willing to bet that if we took a vote today on no bridge or a bridge at Elks, for example, we would get support for a bridge at Elks. The council of the city of Grand Forks would support an inner city bridge at Elks, yet there's nothing but controversy for a bridge at 32nd Avenue South. And so what I don't understand is East Grand Forks and Mayor Gander continues to say we need to compromise, but they're not compromising. They're trying to put a bridge through an established neighborhood. If they would be willing to compromise like we're trying to and agree to put a bridge at Elks or 17th Avenue South, we would have a bridge and we'd be moving on, but instead, they're not compromising. So I don't know what to do for Mayor Gander and the city of East Grand Forks. I recognize we've had 32nd Avenue South in the plan, but if we, there aren't the votes for it, yet we say we need it, I don't know why we're not just moving forward with the bridge. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you, President Sandy. Any further comments, we'll move on for today and we'll look forward to, you'll get something scheduled that will take the next step and President Sandy can say that right to, to Mr. Mayor Gander.
Absolutely. Well, we will target within the next four weeks having a joint meeting.
All right, well, thank you. Let's move on.
2.2 is the Blue Zones Project update.
Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Bochinski, another, sorry, I know we have a long meeting here, but there's another immediate update that I, we needed to provide. Kristi Halduran from the All True Health Foundation is here. Mr. Weber provided me some correspondence that the project was moving forward, a little bit different than what was first presented to you. And so I wanted to have Kristi come forward to provide you an overview of where they're at. As you recall, the last time they were here, the city council did not move forward with a million and a half dollar investment. As you recall, that was voted down. Alter was going to be in at that time for a million and a half dollars and then there was about a two and a half million dollar state grant, if I recall, plus or minus on all those counts. So Kristi's going to come give you an update and get some further feedback and, and ask you some, some questions about if you want to be further involved with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mayor Bochinski, Council President Sandy and members of the council, I'm Kristi Halduran. I'm the Chief Philanthropy and Partnership Officer at All True Health System. Very pleased to be back with you this evening to give you a brief update on the Blue Zones Project and our journey to bring Blue Zones to Grand Forks. My first thing I'd like to do is to just ask you all if you want any kind of primer on Blue Zones again. I am happy to go over what Blue Zones Project is and what it's all about, but if you feel like you're well enough informed from our previous interactions, I can jump right to the update, so.
Yeah, please.
Your pleasure. Yeah. So if you might remember, Blue Zones are areas around the world and there are five of them where people regularly live to be 100 years or more. And they don't just live that long, but they live that long very well. So they're very active into their 80s, 90s, even over 100. When these areas were discovered, a group of researchers went out to study those areas and figure out like, why? Why is this happening in these different parts of the globe? And so they came back with what they call the Power Nine, which are the, the nine things that all of those populations had in common. And it's some really obvious things that you might think about, like they moved very naturally. They didn't necessarily go work out, but they, movement was a natural part of their day. They tended to eat more of a plant-based diet. They understood their purpose in their life. They had healthy social interactions. They have wine at five is one of their Power Nine where they are regularly engaging in social relationships, as well as, you know, living with, sometimes intergenerationally and really putting family first. So those were some of the things they found to be in common. The Blue Zones Project then is a movement to try to bring those principles to cities around the country. There are about 70 Blue Zones cities now in the United States and basically integrate those principles into the way you design your city. So basically really trying to make the healthy choice the easy choice. And you do that by looking at people, policy and places. And what I love about the Blue Zones is that you have all this evidence-based research backing it. And so you've got like a team of people that have all the science behind it, but then you get to decide as a community what you want to focus on. So the Blue Zones Project, people don't come in and say like, Grand Forks, you need more of this or less of this. They say, here's what we know works, here's what's going well in your city, here's where we see some challenges, but you tell us what you want us to help you with. And then you hire staff who are local people, so it'd be local people that would be hired to help you then start to change people, policy and places. So since we last reported to city council, we've made some really good progress. And I'll just give you a brief update on our progress in partnerships, our progress in the scope of the project, and then just as Mr. Phelan mentioned, some of the implementation that we started thus far. So our main partner continues to be the North Dakota Department of Health and they have increased their contribution. So they are willing to invest $2 billion into the city of Grand Forks. And then All True Health System is making a million dollar investment and All True Health Foundation is making a $500,000 investment. We have had some really great dialogue with University of North Dakota since I was last here, some really exciting researches being done by researchers at the School of Medicine at UND. And I wish I could get them here in front of you because they are doing some fascinating research on aging and they are studying chronological age versus biological age and how you can actually reverse aging or at least really slow it. And that really fits well with the Blue Zones concept. And so just had some really exciting dialogue about how that might look to have this public health. health effort of Blue Zones kind of marry up with their research that they're doing on reversing aging, and that we could really set Grand Forks on the map for being sort of that first metro region to kind of marry those two principles. Kind of more from a logistics perspective. We've also had some really great conversations with the University of North Dakota and are really just finalizing the details of what that partnership will look like. But we have looked at everything from in-kind office space for the staff positions to a staff position at UND that could liaison on the Blue Zones Project, shared worksite wellness messaging, promotion of what we're doing, giving our materials out to people on the UND campus, doing cooking classes at the Wellness Center. There's just kind of a plethora of things that UND is willing to bring to the table. So we're just finalizing what that actual partnership will all be entail. And then we've also worked, done a lot of work with the Grand Forks Public Schools. So really looking at how we can promote Blue Zones in the Grand Forks Public Schools. And we want to look especially at some of those schools where they have the most at-risk kids and some of those social determinants of health that are maybe the highest. We know that Blue Zones has proven to work over and over, and specifically in schools. It really shows improved academic performance, fewer discipline issues, improved staff well-being, and then just really strengthens that school and community connection. So that's sort of the partnership piece. As far as scope, if you might remember, last time we were looking to raise $6.7 million, and the scope was Grand Forks County. We since worked with Blue Zones to reduce it to what it would look like if it was just the City of Grand Forks, and that cost would be $5 million. Because the Department of Health funds, that $2 million have a window on them, and that window is now firmly shut, we had to move forward and either let that money go or further reduce our scope. So at this time, our plan is now to move forward with a reduced scope and looking at sort of that near-north neighborhood. I don't know if it's the exact same dimensions or population center as what we call near-north, but basically it would include the downtown area, Riverside neighborhood, and then everything between Demers and Gateway, all the way out to the interstate. And so that is what we are able to do with the current $3.5 million that we have raised would be to really focus on that neighborhood, which of course includes UND and then six schools as well. We would love to grow this to be, include the entire city of Grand Forks. And so really wanted to just come back and check in with you all to see if you would be interested in talking more about what that might look like. And then finally, the update on sort of that implementation phase. We had the Blue Zones team in town. The week before last, April 4th and 5th, they came on site for a visit. They had three people here. We took them out to Darcy's and some other fun places in the north neighborhood and just really introduced them to a lot of our stakeholders and leaders, and just spent some time talking about what the implementation would look like. Also met virtually with about 10 more of their staff that will be assigned part-time at least to Grand Forks. So we really have that national expertise at our fingertips. We'll be looking to do a press release later this week or early next week. And then we'll also be starting to... Or Blue Zones, we'll be hiring three staff members to actually start the work in the community. So just now, looking at setting up our governance and steering committees and starting our worksite wellness piece. So that's a piece that Altru is doing, is just like you do people policy and places in a community, you could also do it at a worksite. And so the calculations show that Altru could save about $12.7 million over the next 10 years and are just our own reduced healthcare costs and increased productivity. So we're really excited to also focus specifically on our own employees and how we can better care for them and help them to live healthier lives as well. So that's really the main thing I had for you all this evening. Just wanted to check in, and I don't know, Mr. Weber, if you have anything to add. I know you've been part of these conversations as well.
Mr. Weber, we can see you, but we can't hear you yet, so... Yep. Have you shared, is it possible for you to unmute? Mr. Weber from our end. Well, we'll continue the conversation, Mr. Weber, and see if you can join in progress. Mr. Vean?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation.
We've got him now. We want to just pause for one second. We'll let Mr. Weber case to lose him again, please. Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Vean, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kristi, thanks for all of your work for keeping this effort alive. It would have been a shame for us to tell the state and the federal government that we don't want $2 million to help improve the future health of our citizens. I'm disappointed that it's no longer possible to include all of the city, or at least not at the beginning. But I do like the idea of the near... All of the north neighborhoods providing a pilot for this effort, especially with our ongoing efforts to develop industry on the north end of town. The north neighborhoods are often lowest-income neighborhoods, those with the oldest demographics, and those most directly impacted by some of the development going on in our communities. So Blue Zones is a way to tap the resources of having the state's medical school in that community and to work forward to not just improve the help of our elderly or our young people, but the help of our community for generations to come. So I thank you again for your work on this. I realize the train is leaving the station. We want to hurry up and catch up and try to jump on that train before it's gone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Vean, please.
Yeah, if I could, thank you again for what you're doing. The boundary right now is Demers Avenue, right? And that's going north, even as it comes through downtown?
Yes.
So south of Demers is not included in it?
Right.
And what would it take to expand it?
Yes. So originally, we had asked for an investment from the City of $1.5 million. I spoke with the Blue Zones Vice President last week. He said he would be very open to a million-dollar contribution from the City of Grand Forks with a good-faith effort by all of the partners to work on securing that last $500,000 over the next four years.
Do you know what population we're able to do just north of Demers versus the whole city?
I don't know that, but I can find that out for you.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I would like to see us all do it.
Yes.
I think there's advantages. I was supportive before I continued to do that, but I guess we need to know a little bit of the cost and the timeline.
Yep. And remember that that is over a four-year time period.
Any further comment from council? All right. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving on to public hearings. Number three, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
3.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to taxi fares.
I don't think we have much controversy in these three, so I will open the public hearing, item 3.1. Anyone here to speak on item 3.1? Seeing nobody, public hearing period is closed. If you're looking for a motion or comment from council, got a motion to approve from President Sandy, second from Mr. Kavami. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
The motion carries with Weigel dissenting.
And 2.3, 3.2 is public hearing and second reading of ordinance repealing City Code Section 6-0814 relating to bonus personal leave hours.
All right. Again, we'll open up the public hearing, item 3.2. All right, that public hearing period is closed. Same procedure. You have a vote or comment from council, or motion or comment. Got a motion approved from President Sandy, got a second from Mr. Weigel. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries unanimously.
And 3.3, public hearing and determination of protests for the two projects listed. Project 8401, District 761, reconstruct South 12th Street, Park Drive to 25th Avenue South, and Project 8469, District 765, to reconstruct South 20th Street, 20th to 24th Avenue South. We have received no protests on either of these.
All right. Thank you. Once again, we'll open the public hearing, item 3.3. All right, public hearing period is closed. Open up to council. You want to get the third? Oh, we got Mr. Vean's got a motion. Got a second. Looking for a second. Second from... Let's give it to Mr. Kavami. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll move on to four action items. Mr. Weber requested item 4.7. We'll pull the... All the planning items, item 4.13 through 4.16. And then Marine wanted 4.12. Any other items that council would want to pull at this time outside of 4.7, 4.12 through 16? Okay, we'll get down to consent agenda, I'll read those in. Item 4.1. It looks like item 4.0 had been taken off the agenda, so will be deferred until April 25th. So we'll be looking for item 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.11, and 4.17. Got a motion to approve those. Got a motion from Mr. Vean, a second from Mr. Sandy. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry unanimously. So we'll be on to item 4.7, Marine.
Okay. 4.7, plans and specs and funding of Project 8510, City Hall Parking Lot Expansion, Lot C.
Thank you. Mr. Weber, did you want some further information on that?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment. I'm disappointed that the staff report does not include any information about the 2019 parking study, which was approved by this council. Well, it was approved by city council, and which finds that for most blocks, parking downtown has an availability at 50% or higher. We don't always get to park right across from the front door of where we want to go in, but the studies have found that 800 to 1,200 feet is considered acceptable, including during difficult, you know, during our colder season. But we have ample parking, and I'm opposed to spending a quarter of a million dollars to add more parking that's not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any further comment from council? Item 4.7. Mr. Sandy.
I had a nice exchange with one of our planning and zoning commissioners, who also disagreed with this concept. I asked Mr. Brooks to put together some information related to how far the parking spaces are from City Hall. He sent me a nice diagram. I don't know if you have access to that now. I think generally speaking, Mr. Weber is probably correct, as well as the gentleman that had been emailing me. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. So depending upon how far, or depending upon which parking area you're using, central ramp, on-street parking, and then the riverboat lot, I think they all fall within that distance, right? I think the one thing that wasn't discussed at planning and zoning and wasn't contemplated by this was we're building right across the street. We're building a facility with lots of apartments. But... And I've had this discussion with people that have been emailing me, my friend Tim, who is always concerned about parking downtown and making sure. And I told them that there was going to be plenty of parking already for the apartment dwellers. Well, we... I guess in my mind, I didn't take into consideration that we're putting in a significant amount of commercial space there. And commercial space that is... It operates at peak times when our city staffers, for example, aren't going to be parking there like after-hours, for example. I think they're interested in getting businesses that, you know, restaurants and those sorts of things that will need access to additional parking. And although I agree that the riverboat lot is within reasonable walking distance, I think everyone that's in here doesn't... Will admit that we don't like to park two blocks away and walk on a Thursday night when it's 18 below and flurries. So I think for the future of the commercial people and the potential for needing additional parking, I actually reached out to the gentleman that's building that facility, and I know he has meant... He told me that he hasn't spoken to you about this, but I think they're interested in leasing the parking after-hours from us, which would become a revenue source to help offset the cost of this. And I don't mean to speak for him, but he told me I was welcome to say that once their property is done and filled, they're interested in redeveloping that lot. And I think that that was one of the arguments to building a flat-surface parking lot is once you build it, it never goes away. Well, I think based upon what they're doing across the street, it proves that they want to build up. And knowing that there's an opportunity that they need the parking, and we've been talking about the potential for a parking ramp with additional, whether it's residential or commercial space above, I believe that based upon what they're doing here, I would take them at their word that assuming they can continue to fill units and fill up space, they're going to want to redevelop that lot, just like anyone else, any other developer would want to redevelop that lot. So I actually had every intention of voting against this tonight until I did a little more digging on it. And I think it's going to be important for the near term for us to make the investment in this parking lot. It'll be good for our employees to use during the day. Hopefully, we can get some revenue on the spots at night and make it nice and convenient for people to utilize the commercial business that's there, so that that developer or another developer will want to redevelop that lot at some point in the future. So I'm prepared to move this forward, but I'm certainly open if others have other arguments that this doesn't make sense. I'm all ears.
Mr. Brooks, we... You got Lot C here. That says 360 feet. It's roughly... There's already two-thirds of that is already a parking lot. It's just...
Yeah.
Would just be the south, one-third of that roughly.
That's true.
Is that enough to fill in for what's lost just north of the Herald Building roughly? I mean, we're not gaining any spots. It's really filling in what's being lost as part of that development. Would that be a true statement?
Yeah, I'd say roughly that it's close to offsetting the Herald. And we do have... Some of the Herald folks may be parking in the central ramp. That's a little bit closer for them. And actually, the ramp has been a little bit more popular than it used to be. It's covered parking. It's monitored. Police have been going through there, fairly active. We're doing some upgrades, camera, lighting, those types of things as well. So that's available as well.
All right. Further comment from council?
Mr. Mayor, from me.
Yeah, Mr. Weber, please.
Part of the solution that's available to us is diagonal on-street parking, which takes care of the majority of this. As President Sandy has pointed out, this will become valuable real estate. Rather than the city being in the business of leasing to commercial developers, we should let them develop that. There is parking available. Quarter million dollars essentially for nine spaces seems expensive to me. And with that, I'm ready to vote.
All right. We have a motion. Yeah, Ms. Mock, please.
If we didn't move forward with the parking lot, and as Mr. Weber is suggesting, you focus on the diagonal parking, then what happens? Are we willing to develop it early?
Yeah. I think it would still be a transitional use. We're always... It would be available to be developed. You're talking about the space where the addition would go? Is that your question?
Yeah, that would be available for development, and we just look at what the timing would be of that.
Are we in a position to actively develop that? Are there interested parties in developing that?
I think at some point there will be. I don't know if we would bring that on at the same time that this whole block would be... This half a block would be ongoing. But as we've always said, we see surface parking lots as transitional uses, so they're always available to be built on and potential to be redeveloped.
And how much would you gain from the diagonal parking, as Mr. Weber suggests?
I think it was in the staff report, perhaps, what the additional amount would be. I didn't... I don't have that in front of me. Apologize.
That would be on University Avenue, we'd have more diagonal parking?
They were looking at on Fourth Street.
20 diagonal parking slots.
Is there room, I guess would be the other question, on Fourth Street? To do... Is it one side, two sides? I guess I'll pull it up here as well.
I believe it was just going to be one side, I believe, on the side of the parking lot. Some of the concerns I heard in the past, we have had folks wanting to go back to two-way traffic on both our Third and Fourth Streets. That would make that a little bit more difficult, but certainly something that we could still look at. That could still be done, potentially with two-way traffic as well, still having annual parking as well.
Mr. Mayor, Bruchinski, I'm reviewing the staff report from Ed Lieberman. Right now, the expansion of Lot C is expected to add additional 28 stalls to the lot, and then it goes on to say 20 diagonal parking stalls along, as Mr. Brooks said, along the street side. We are going to lose 30 parking stalls with the Herald lot, so that's trying to get us back to whole. And as Mr. Brooks said, you know, if we expanded that lot to University Avenue, we're minus two, but it's probably close enough. With the 20 diagonal, we'd be at 10 short. We're still going to ask the developer to, we're waiting, there's, we'll call them the Schneider garages, those are going to get either moved this summer, or they're going to get demoed by the city, so we are going to clean that up as part of the development. But we thought, expanding this surface lot to the corner provides an opportunity for city employees to park near the building. It also provides, I'm glad Council President Sandy said that, because we're going to, with the Lyons redevelopment, and with the alley being reactivated, it's going to get reconstructed, we're going to bury the Lyons, that alley is going to become quite an active alley, and Mr. Miscavige has even committed to doing some cafe lighting through there. And so what our anticipation in the evenings and nights, is that people are going to park in that lot, when city employees aren't there. You're going to park there, and you're going to walk down that alley, not only to take advantage of the new development at Lyons, but you're also going to be taking advantage of other developments down that block. So we're just trying to activate that alley, and we think that parking is going to be pivotal for that. But again, when a great offer comes along, we're not going to hold on for dear life to a surface parking lot. But I think in the meantime, it's really going to add some life and some parking.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Well, Todd, maybe you know, is this a minor arterial or a collector street, when we have the two one-ways? Because it's intended for bringing traffic from Gateway Drive downtown, right?
I think that, I think that would be, that was Fifth. Fifth is the one where we have state participation, this would be Fourth. So we have the two pairs, we have the Third going north, we have Fourth going south, and then we have Fifth, which is, again, we've done a lot of repairs on that, primarily because the North Dakota DOT has been paying a lot of those funds, because that is that arterial that the state of North Dakota participates in.
Mr. Sandy.
I think it is important to point out as well, that unless we designate that the surface diagonal parking as city employee parking, for example, there are going to be all sorts of central students that are competing for those parking spots. So although we say we're plus or minus eight or whatever, we don't know that on a daily basis, right? So again, because I've done enough thinking and research on this, I'm prepared to move forward. So I'm still open to other discussions, but for the sake of argument, I'll move approval of the...
We got a motion to approve, we got a second before we have further discussion. A second from Mr. Veen. All right, now we'll open up any further discussion. Item 4.7.
No comment, Mr. Veen.
Yeah, please, Mr. Weber.
So if we keep that street one way, can we put diagonal parking on both sides of the street, and for the cost of paint, retrieve more parking when we're losing, and forego the quarter million dollars to expand the existing surface parking lot?
Mr. Brooks, or Mr. Phelan wants to take that?
Well, I'll jump ahead, obviously Dave's in the back, but I think it's safe to say that two-way traffic and diagonal parking on both sides, there would not be enough for that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks, I was suggesting, let's keep it one way, until this further development that we're all anticipating happens, let's keep it one way, and put diagonal parking on both sides of the street, gaining parking at no cost, other than the cost of paint.
And if I understood your question correctly, it was looking to see if we could put diagonal parking on both sides of the street and still maintain one-way traffic, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bruchinski.
I believe if, with the width required for diagonal parking, I believe that if you put diagonal parking on both sides, I don't think you would have sufficient way, or sufficient width for your lane of traffic to get through there. Right now, we have it set up, or planned for diagonal parking on the east side of the roadway, and then you'd still have enough room for your one lane of traffic that's through, and I believe at the intersection, you'd still have enough, I think, for a turn lane in there as well. But I can double-check that and get back to you on that one.
The road feels wider to me than that. I haven't measured it recently, but couldn't we have diagonal parking on one side, a lane of traffic, parallel parking, and as President Sandy has suggested, reserve that all for city employees from 8 till 5 o'clock each day?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that, can you repeat that?
I'll try, thank you. The road seems wide enough to have diagonal parking on one side, a lane of traffic, parallel parking, and that we could follow President Sandy's suggestion, and reserve all of that Monday through Friday, 9 till 5, for city staff.
So diagonal parking on one side, one lane of through traffic, and a parallel parking on the opposite side, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't know if that, if we have a sufficient width for that, but we can double-check, and I can get back to you on that one.
Thank you. And reserving those for city staff, that's certainly possible, isn't it?
Oh.
Monday through Friday, 9 to 5?
That I do not know. Let's see.
Is there a reason we couldn't do that? We set other restrictions on parking.
Answering that one?
Mayor Bruchinski, we're becoming a big city where you get to get a parking permit in your residential neighborhood, so I think there's probably a way to do it, we've never done it before, but I've been in other neighborhoods where you do get a residential parking permit to park on your street. We'd have to do it for city employees during the day, similar to what we do with our lots.
That seems less expensive than a quarter million dollars. Thanks.
Ms. Mock.
If it's not incredibly urgent, I guess if we took Mr. Weber's suggestion, and had staff look at it, and actually see if there's enough width, and what the possibilities are, it might be better to bring that forward, so we know exactly what it looks like, and what we're holding on, and we could consider it then.
So we've got, I guess we got a motion on the floor and a second. Do we want it, you're asking President Sandy reconsider to postpone that item for further diligence?
Sure.
Sure, let's get some more info and bring it back next council meeting. How's that?
Does that work? Mr. Weigl, why don't you, if you've got a comment first, before we'll take any action?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I hate to see parking on both sides of the street. I think the one thing that nobody's mentioned so far is winter. Roads tend to get, they go from 30 feet wide, or whatever they are, to about 3, 4 feet less on each side, so I think that's something that we need to look at as well. It's easier to plow a parking lot. If you ask any of our people that are working midnight shift, that are plowing the downtown area, it's hard to do, with a lot of cars parked everywhere, and picking up that snow is a chore. So while it's great in theory, it's probably great in May through October, but the other months, while it's snowing, it's probably not such a great idea, and it's probably going to lead to more accidents.
Thank you, Mr. Weigl.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may, one more time. I think we're talking about two different problems here. One is a loss of parking, we're trying to replace that parking. The other is a problem with being able to clear the streets during the winter. We need to take a look at those policies, but these are separate issues. Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Sandy, I guess at this time, I guess it's up to you, if you want to withdraw your motion or go forward and vote on it tonight.
Mr. Bruchinski, would you and Mr. Brooks, by next council meeting, would you have time to look into the width of the road? And Mr. Brooks, could you have the opportunity to visit with the neighbors that are building here, and find out if there is an opportunity for leasing some parking, and what that would mean to the community? And then, I don't think the next two weeks are going to change anything, so I'll withdraw my motion, Mayor, and as long as you can get that done in the next two weeks, great. Thank you, that works.
Do you consent with that, Mr. Veen?
Yep.
All right, so that motion was withdrawn, so I guess, wouldn't we be looking for a motion to postpone?
I would postpone for, till the next council meeting.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Sandy. Got a second, one second from Ms. Mock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
4.12, Residential Development Master Planning. I can speak to this, turn it over to Mr. Phelan, and then for city council for further discussion. But last week, Mr. Brooks reviewed with you an informational item regarding residential development, and city council asked for staff to come back with a recommendation of items to move forward with. And what we can move forward with now, and what needs further input from city council for future discussion for deferral program. So on one of the slides that Mr. Brooks had presented, was regarding the changes that had been made back in 2016, 17 timeframe. Some of those included deferrals, which expired in 2019, other changes are still in effect, which we looked at lowering the market, or the markup interest rate, and it's been roughly about five years now, since we made those changes, so it's a good time to analyze those, once again. So after looking at this, I would make a couple of recommendations, and then need further discussion for council's input going further. But first of all, as you reviewed in the staff report, I would recommend to reduce that markup rate on the bond interest rate, down from 1%, down to 0.5%. That risk does look to cover the city's risk, but by making that adjustment, that would help reduce annual payments charged on residential lots, and I believe the city still adequately will cover our risk. But I would like to just notate that we'll reanalyze that again in five years. The second change I would recommend moving forward with, is that miscellaneous charge that we place on special assessments. Covers things such as office expenses, legal notices, fees related. We currently charge 4%. I would recommend lowering that to 2%. That doesn't always cover, but on an average, 2% should cover those related costs, and that would also help reduce overall special assessments on properties. Deferrals get a little more complicated. I did review last week, and including the staff report, just the administrative side on there, just some of the takeaways. So for your information, at that time, we did meet with Realtors, provided information on the lots involved. We did file with the county on each of those lots, sent annual letters out on an annual basis to property owners. I think we did a pretty good job trying to communicate the best we could, you know, some still get surprised when that special assessment actually hits the property. But overall, I think the goal was met and achieved, to bring in more residential lots at that time into the city. When looking at the flood protection special assessments, we could talk about a deferral there, three-year deferral, three to five years. I'd look to city council for further direction, as far as a deferral program, and some of the parameters you'd like to look at there, the goals that you ultimately want to achieve with that. When looking at bonds, it's hard to go past the three-year mark on deferrals, but that's something we could, we do have a process in place now, so we could take a look at that, and reinstating that program. But I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Phelan.
Thank you, Maureen. And Mayor Bruchinski, I did follow up with some of the developers that are doing a lot of the larger residential developments. They have, they've said that a deferral program would really help and assist, similar to what it did several years ago, have them install, you know, more infrastructure, larger developments, and provide a larger development for lots, and I think there were some cost savings on the infrastructure side. I think it opened up a lot of areas that normally would not have been. Otherwise, I think with the developers, what I communicated with, we're going to get the 10 to 25 lots per year, instead of, you know, the 100 to 200 lots that they're willing to put in. The developers have said, you know, the three-year that we did previously, Maureen mentioned the flood specials, but they, even beyond the flood specials, they think with the new infrastructure, whether that's all the water-related infrastructure in the street, they really need that further deferral on that additional infrastructure to go in. They said the three years worked, and that would be acceptable. In a perfect world, they probably want five years, but that's kind of that timeframe that they're asking. I know we had a conversation about this last week at the committee of the hall. It will take two readings, it is in ordinance right now, and it has sunsetted right now, so we're back to normal. I'm not deferring, and so if you do make a motion today, just keep in mind, it is a preliminary recommendation. Mr. Gostad and his team would have to come back with an ordinance in a few weeks, and you'd have final review and approval opportunities. But just so you know, from the development community, if they don't get the three to five-year deferral, they likely are not going to do grand and large-scale residential developments. They're going to mitigate their risk by doing more the piecemeal fashion that, what we've been seeing. And our biggest concern right now, we do have to make a decision with the development community, they are moving forward with developments, and our bigger concern, it does take us two years to get a lot of this infrastructure in, and it looks like from our last meeting last week, we're at two to three years, and so we don't have a lot of leeway or gap in between that. So that's kind of where we left the conversation, that if you're willing to do a preliminary recommendation, kind of some frameworks and parameters, at least we could get through the preliminary, with Mr. Gostad providing the final details and conversations before final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Veen.
Mr. Storsted, how much money will we, well, how much money will we, do we usually get from these kinds of costs? What I'm really, what I'm really trying to get is, with the savings we get here, how much will we save total? And will that money have to ultimately be made up, because it'll be less income to the city through type, any type of increase in general fund?
Mr. Veen, members of council, so overall, on the average, you know, there's going to be some that we bring in more than enough, some that we don't bring enough, so on an average, it's been coming out pretty good. An average for the residential lot, special assessments upon development is, you know, roughly between $35,000 to $45,000 on each lot. So if you were to, you know, take 2% of that as, you know, what you would save on that, and then as far as the markup rate, 0.5%, that's going to, you know, over time, it would be a greater savings on the front end, and then as the principal balance, over time, of course, that would reduce. But I don't have exact numbers for you, but does that help in your...
But that money does go into the general fund?
This is going to the bond fund, actually.
To the bond fund, not general fund?
Right, that's correct.
Any other comments? Mr. Cavani.
So if we're looking for a path forward to explore what options are available to go to a five-year, generally, are we looking for just a motion saying, we'd like that to be explored, and then brought back? Is that the direction that we're looking for? Because for me, if we've got two years of infrastructure, or two years of lots built up now, then we need to, we need to get going, you know, we need to work on it, we need to make sure that's an option available.
Mr. Cavani, members of council, so I think if council's goal is to bring in more of a large volume of lots, I think the deferral program is more important than if your goal is to reduce special assessments. The reduction in the markup and the fee will help reduce, but not generally, not help with the developer's risk to bring in a larger area at one time, which you would hope, size of scale, that'll help with the cost as well, when they're bringing in the large scale. On the bond side, we did do a three-year deferral in the previous deferral arrangement. You know, that does involve capitalized interest, it accrues interest during that time period. Hopefully, that was more than offset by the larger-scale development. I don't know that we can completely answer that question with cost savings, but with security of bondholders, it gets, I know it was quite a conversation for the three-year deferral, it would get a little more complicated to go all the way out to five years, so, but I, you know, we can explore that if you want to go, but I know we can do the three-year, five-year gets to be a little bit harder.
President Sandy.
Can we talk a little bit about the last deferral that we did? I think several of us here had the conversation that making sure that we have an adequate amount of residential lots available for development in our community is important. We are all seeing the pressures that there is on the real estate, residential and commercial real estate in the city of Grand Forks, in Grand Forks County. It isn't a Grand Forks issue, it isn't a North Dakota issue, this is an issue all across the country. There is a shortage of residential housing, whether it's apartments, at all price points, all across, not only our community, but all across the country. I think we were trying to take advantage of low interest rates at the time, we had met with the major landowners in our community, trying to figure out, how can we incentivize them to put in the infrastructure today? The city of Grand Forks is on board, get them on board, put in the infrastructure at that time, in order to lock in interest rates, favorable financing for us, and although the special assessments that were assessed to those properties... And although the special assessments that were assessed to those properties at the time carried the interest for three years, the thought process was by doing a major development at the time, the developer can take advantage of better interest rates and economies of scale. And the, in theory, the reduction of the total amount of the special assessments would make up for the additional interest that the homebuyers were going to pay at the time. I don't know if we've actually done a calculation on that. I'm not sure we could. But I believe that it did, by bringing an additional amount, significant amount of lots in our, into our community, it did provide other options for people wanting to buy homes, for builders wanting to build homes. We've had over the last three, four years, a major shift in builders in our community. I think as we sit today, if we only have two and a half years' worth of infrastructure, worth of lots in our community, we're going to have a real problem. And so I know, because I've heard from people, and I think Ms. Dorst said you probably got tired of me talking about notifications for people, letting them know that there is an additional special assessment that will be coming on at three years in the future. I think from my personal opinion, the only downfall of that concept was the fact that there were some people that fell through the cracks. It wasn't our fault. I don't think the realtors were trying to be nefarious about it. I think it's just, it's the nature of the beast. We're notifying people after several years that you're going to see an additional special assessment on your property and so be prepared for an additional monthly payment. People buy and sell houses. Some people come in and out of town relatively quickly. Either way, there were some people that were missed and there were some people that were noticeably, visibly surprised and upset that their home payments were going up so significantly. And so in my opinion, if we could tie a deferral to whether it's a certificate of occupancy or a building permit so that you get the deferral for that fixed amount of time, but me as a homebuyer, I don't get the deferral. I start paying the special assessments the following year that after I purchased the home. I don't know if that's easily doable. I think that that would be something that I would be interested in. And frankly speaking, we all know that inflation is hitting us into where the Fed has told us that they're going to raise at least a half a basis point in the next few months. The sooner we finalize this sort of a deferral, the faster our developers in town and the landowners can get to work getting the infrastructure, making those payments, figuring out how to get their loans, the faster they can do that, the better it's going to be for them. And ultimately, the better it's going to be for the eventual homebuyers in our community. So, and I'll point out that this is something that we've done in the past for the builders in our community. We've done this because they talked to us, they asked us about, about helping them figure it out. So we, as a council, addressed this and gave a break to the builders in our community in order to get them to bring more lots in, buildable lots in, into inventory. And I think it's important for people to know that we're, we're doing what we can when we're asked. So I don't know if Ms. Dorst said, or Mayor, if you, you have thoughts on that or if there would be a way for us to tie that to some sort of trigger, but I think that would be important. Otherwise, I'm fully supportive of changing the interest rate from 4% to 2% and a half percent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Jeff, something, Maureen, please.
Sure. President Sandy, Mayor Bochensky, members of, the only thing that I would want to be careful with as we're speaking of when that special assessment hits is I would just probably need an end date. It can be sooner, but an end date certain to tell the bondholders that it would be deferred no longer than a certain time period.
I still believe that that three-year threshold makes sense. I think we should implement it for, for three years again and try it again. And in a year, get a report on where we're doing with lots or probably two years, get a, get a report where are we doing with our inventory and do we need to extend for future, for future bond issuances? Thank you.
So the two items that are on here today are the interest rate related. Do you want to have a work session to go further or what do you, I guess will be the next step for council? What are they looking for? Or are they ready to? What are you looking for, Maureen?
Well, and if, and if a three-year deferral is what you're looking at, I guess we do have a process in place from the previous. It would be a matter of two readings of ordinance to make a change as far as parameters that you set, as far as if this is a pilot program for a certain extended date or if this is a permanent change with a deferral program going forward. And then we'd have to draw up the ordinance and have two readings.
I'm ready to move that forward. We, of course, would need to see the ordinance language. And so I would assume between now and, and then your, Mayor, you and your staff would visit with the city attorney and have that language drafted. And then certainly at that point, if we need to tweak it, but I think you understand my meaning. So as long as the rest of the council is on board with that concept, I would move approval of both the items that you've outlined in the staff report, at the 2% and half percent, as well as having the city attorney draft the ordinance for the three-year deferral.
All right. Would you have time, Mr. Gostad, with that being something that's been done in the past for, say, next committee of the whole?
Yeah. I'd get together with Ms. Dorst and Mr. Phelan and yourself and other staff members and Mr. Brooks and try to come up with, I think, the appropriate triggering event and then tie that to a three-year ending date. So we'd be able to get that done. I know the next, maybe not the next call, but as quickly as we possibly can.
All right. Any further comment from council? I guess we need a second from Mr. Sandy's motion first before we go to comment.
So I'd second and also just for discussion's sake, so that we'd have the opportunity to review the triggers and potentially review the terms prior to approving anything to the first reading, I'm assuming.
Correct. You would require two readings.
Mayor Bochensky, this would be your, this would be your preliminary recommendation. You would come back to a city council for final review and approval. I think what we would do, Mr. Gostad, you may not have everything written, but what I would do, just so you have further conversations, we could, we would put it on the call, just so you'd have some further discussions of that prior to it coming back to you. And you would provide further guidance to Mr. Gostad too, before he puts it in final, final written approval.
All right. So what's the motion then exactly? It'd be to, I guess, if you want to clarify, President Sandy?
I think Mayor Bochensky, it's, it's the two recommendations Maureen has in the staff report. And then also further to recommend a three-year deferral, similar to what we approved previously with discussion on those triggers. And then we'll bring it to, that would be preliminary approval for all three of those. We would bring it back to the call next week for further conversations on what those triggers look like and other particulars before that ordinance would come back for final review and approval.
That works. Go a second. Okay. All right. Any further comment from council? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries unanimously.
4.13 is introduction of ordinance, preliminary approval of the plant of P and E first three subdivision located at 3527 Devon and R.
Mr. Phelan, I think, I think the planning and zoning kind of did this all together. So maybe it's better if you're going to have a presentation, do that first, then we can go through each item. Then if anybody else has a comment card out there, if you want to get those in now, I got a bunch of them and I will, I'll call everybody up. If anyone else has one or wants to get it in, sure, go grab that now. So otherwise, Mr. Phelan, if you wanted to, I'll take it away, please.
Thank you, Mayor Bochensky and city council members. What we're planning this evening, we have obviously four recommendations that are coming from planning and zoning, but anticipation of that, obviously, there's some big items here. We're going to plan an overview. And so we're going to start off with, if we maybe just go through the presentations and then we're all available for Q and A. If there's something that comes up, we're certainly willing to answer any of those questions. So Mr. Eric Schuderech, he's going to come up first and talk about the Fufang project and provide a project overview. Mr. Brendan Bombach from the EDC, our business development director, he's going to come up and provide a brief overview regarding the EDC. Mr. Gaddy and I are going to give you an update on the development agreement and some of the due diligence items that we've been working on and provide an update in that form. We've asked Mr. Gostad to, there were some motions at regarding, at planning and zoning. So we've asked in two particular requests. One was there's, there's a corinta annexation that was brought up. He's going to go over that one with you. Number two, there's a discussion of a contingent annexation. So Mr. Gostad is going to give you a preamble on that in advance of finally, Mr. Brooks is going to come up and give you, provide an overview of all those four action items and what those recommendations are. And along the way, we'll try to integrate those four presentations and ultimately into those planning and zoning items that are going to be for that. So with that, Mr. Schuderech is going to be here on behalf of the Fufang team to start us out.
City council, thank you for the time today. You're talking to Todd. He thought it would be, you know, helpful to, I guess, just give a general overview, talk a little bit about the project. And then also, also just some questions that keep, you know, kind of coming up to talk through some of those items as well. So, you know, Fufang Group, we're a global leading biofermentation company. We serve various markets, animal nutrition, food and beverage, pharmaceutical, health and wellness, oil and gas. Founded in 1999, listed on the Hong Kong Stock Exchange in 2007. Last year, revenues of $3.4 billion, about 15,000 employees worldwide, selling into 90 different countries. Berkeley integrated supply chain. So we really, all our facilities, including the one planned for Grand Forks, where we source the, the raw material, corn, and then convert it to our finished products. And then we're one of the largest producers of Xanthan and MSG. Company values, you know, really focused on prosperity for employees, alliances, community. So really win-win solutions of getting integrated into the communities that we operate. Our, you know, expertise is the biofermentation, really strong entrepreneurship spirit as our, you know, our chairman started the company with, you know, really a shutdown liquor plant and grew it into a, you know, $3.4 billion company that we have today. So that spirit holds on. You know, professionalism, focus on company unity and sustainable development. So we're looking at the community and those alliances. I mean, really, everywhere we've been, just focused on the workforce development, employee employment, economic development, and then, you know, collaboration and ways of reinvesting once we've, you know, joined the community. And then on the, you know, environment, health and safety, some of the certifications you may, you know, may be aware of, may not be, but very common in the food industry. So the ISO 9000, food safety, ISO 22000, 14000, 18000. So those are all food safety standards, environmental safety standards, BRC, GMP, kosher halal. And really expectations that our, you know, our customers have of the company, kind of the, you know, need to have to do business. So because we sell into the U.S. currently, we sell into Europe, you know, it's really become expected to have these. So global presence, majority of our sales are mainland China, 68%. And, you know, second by rest of Asia. And then if we look at the other, you know, continents, North America, about 2%. Product mix, you know, various products that come from corn wet milling. The biggest ones in our portfolio are the, as mentioned before, the MSG Xanthan and then amino acids. And, you know, as been discussed, the, the products that we're targeting for the U.S. market is the three-ene and lysine. So going back to the first slide and the different markets globally that we're in, in the North America, the focus will be on the animal nutrition markets. Five facilities currently operating in mainland China. I highlighted one, Longjung, that's the most recent facility, but also the facility that will, you know, we're really based in the design and the build here off of in many ways. And I just highlight this because of, you know, multiple reasons. One, the presence we have today, but also this isn't new to us. This is a facility that we've done five times. We know, we know how to operate it. We know how it runs. We know how to put good controls from an environmental, health, safety standard quality. So just sharing the corporate structure, we've talked about this, it's come up, but, you know, maybe you just wanted to kind of put some, you know, a picture to it. So that listing on the Hong Kong Exchange, wow, what that ends up being on the top is the, the ownership structure. So our chairman is a 39% owner of the company. But then, you know, second is Treetop Asset Management, which is out of the EU, 16%. And then the rest is individual investors and institutional investors as well, all without a concentrated share of less than 5%. And so really highlights when it comes to the, the ownership structure, that those institutional investors and those asset investors, they own the majority of the company. That's a 61% share. It's not the chairman at 39% share. So there's a lot of controls. The shareholders have a, you know, they have a lot of ultimate control in, while in the ownership of the company. And then from there, the group is what owns, you know, the five plants in China and then also, you know, Fufang USA through our Hong Kong affiliate. So today, we're small, right? We're building. I joined the company in May of 2020. It was just me. Then we brought on HR, we brought on commercial, now we're bringing on engineers. So a relatively small team, but we're, you know, we're posting for jobs and we're in the process of growing it as we speak. So our product manager just joined us today, not physically here, but the company. But future plan, I mean, it's going to be a fully integrated standalone U.S. entity with, you know, all the major departments, functions to really be self-sustainable. And then what that means for the facility is, you know, similar. So have a, you know, an operations director that runs the facility, have all the different managers, engineering, maintenance, operations, and, you know, ultimately the production operators. But, you know, I think as the number's been shared, about 233 total for located in Grand So, you know, why the United States? I mean, as we saw, the, the global sales were in every market, but a low concentration in the U.S. and that's through, you know, an export-import model. So we see this as a place we can grow. Our product's known, our customers are familiar with us. And so having a, having a location makes sense here to, to break into a market where we see there's an ability, there's capacity that's needed because the U.S. is a net importing country of amino acids. So producing here serves here. It gets us closer to our customers so that we can work with them, understand them better. Also, just, just from a production cost standpoint, supply chain costs, we have loaned that corn in the U.S., lots lower than in mainland China. You know, energy's about, you know, neutral. And then, but when you start looking at importing, exporting duties, it makes sense. You can do it competitively in the U.S. Global, diversify that supply chain network, not be so concentrated in one country, avoids disruptions, as I think everyone can appreciate last two and a half years with the pandemic and seeing what can happen with global supply chains, getting us closer to the end market and then just be more integrated with the U.S., you know, corn wet milling, biofermentation industry here where, you know, several of the world leaders are located. So why Grand Forks? You know, the question that comes up, you know, has been shared, we did a nationwide search, submitted for states to submit their locations from, you know, five different states depicted in the area on the left, about 110 million acre search area. Originally, we came back from 25 sites. And, you know, even though there's a lot of land in the U.S., when you start to match, you know, where's the corn, where's the natural gas, where's a railroad line, where's your customers, where's an acreage site that fits? You know, we ended up coming back for 25. You know, I, I show it on the right because of the question about the corn. You know, the, I think the search area, there was no, you know, I think you'll see it lines up pretty closely to what our search area was, is where's the plant at acreage? You'll see where Grand Forks, you know, county is in that. But then I, you also wanted to show on the left is the footprint of current corn wet mills and ethanol plants. So when you start to look at where's the search area, where's the corn grown, where would you put a new... would you put a new site, it doesn't make sense to put a new site right in the middle of all the buyers of corn. So, it pushed us further west, pushed us further north, and ultimately, when you start looking at rail access and size, available utilities, on the right, you look at natural gas markets, where the, where the lines cross, we ended up landing at Grand Forks. Where do our products go? You know, I shared animal nutrition, but just to kind of put the visual to it, you know, corn comes in, we make the amino acids, mix that with the livestock feed, primarily swine poultry, little bit to dairy farms. You know, the, the corn or the DDGs or the corn gluten feed isn't a complete protein, so you use amino acids to supplement, complete a feed formulation of complete protein, feed it to those animals, and then our end customers are the ones where you'd see our product are ultimately where your, you know, bacon, chicken, eggs, milk products come from. So we're, we're kind of a step up the chain from where you'd see a retail consumer brand. You know, so why us? You know, want to really focus on, what do we bring to the community besides that, you know, 233? A lot of questions on property taxes, but ultimately, as been shared, right from the get-go, property taxes go up. Our contribution brings to the community, doesn't take from the community, $9.2 million net in 10 years. That goes to 26.6 in 20 years, and then after that, 5.8. And from what I understand, that puts us at 13, 14 times the second nearest contributor in the community, so the impact of that is huge. The natural gas pipeline, yes, the state is helping us out with, you know, that east-west subsidy, our side of that is still 20.6 million. So we get 10 from the state, we're 20.6, just to get the natural gas, so, and that pipeline brings an extra capacity above us. Special assessments, we're at 4.6, we're doing the upfront payments on raw water and wastewater at 9.2, and then, you know, it's not directly into the community, but then we start looking at corporate income taxes and payroll, about 2.5 a year. And then, also as mentioned, you know, that the grants that come in because of our project, because of the five things above that it delivers, we're getting grants of 26.7 to help with infrastructure. So those are the direct. When we start looking at the economic development, a lot of talk about the agriculture, 25 million bushels per year, locally sourced, locally processed, improving basis across the region. You know, I think if you ask 20 different people, you're going to get 20 different guesses of how much it goes up by, but the fact is it's going up. So there is going to be a benefit on basis by putting a processor in the area. Every time a processor goes in, that's what's occurred. Partner with the, both the farmers and the elevators, fun delivering that corn, because we also, we're consistent throughout the year. Our end customers, they always need their product, so we have to always be producing. So that mix might change on how we source, but we'll always be sourcing. The, you know, as shared, finished product support, that livestock and nutrition markets, you know, don't want to get ahead of ourselves, we've talked about these facilities, do they, you know, opportunities for cross-the-fence or, you know, more investment going in, but also, just like what we did to get near the corn, the processors, where our ingredients go to, they look to locate there too. They want to get their logistics costs down, it starts to look attractive for them to be in the area. Transportation, you know, I won't go through the numbers, they've been shared, you know, before, but the point here is a lot of different modes. So, you know, we've got liquid bulk, we've got hopper, we've got dry van, so there's a lot of opportunities for a lot of different logistics companies. Plant engineering, construction, you know, this is a major undertaking with the engineering package, we have a mix of, you know, on the larger design package, to work with US-based firms to make sure it meets all the local standards, then focus with regional engineering firms, you know, as you've seen representing us on a couple of the items here, that really bring that local expertise, on the operating permits, the management, the site plans. You know, the build, pretty extensive undertaking, about 700, 900 contractors, two and a half years, and again, we want to bring in that expertise that's, has that local geographic presence, that's operated in the area, but also match it with who has the manpower, so they're not competing as well, and it actually can bring in resources that they have that are maybe in different areas of the country, but bring them here for the build. And it's really got every trade that you can imagine that we'll need for the plant. And then indirect, just a lot of things here, you know, I don't think I need to read every single one, but the point here is, it's almost hard to think of a business that doesn't get impacted positively, because we need everything. We need food, we need catering, we need meetings, we need cleaning, we need landscaping, we have people that are visiting, that's going to be, you know, restaurant, retail, and housing, just bringing up the, you know, well, bringing up the population, if people move into the area, income growth, disposable income, and that really offshoots to everything else. So there's just a lot of indirect benefit. That's all I had today, didn't know if you had any specific questions, I'll solve, just Brandon, pass it to Brandon after that.
All right. You guys want to, should we go through the, is there a couple other speakers you got to? Should we go through all of the have questions? If you guys be prepared for some questions, maybe everybody at the end, does that work for you, Todd? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Baumback. Thank you, Mr. Shudarash.
Okay. Mayor Burchinsky, President Sandy, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in here, provide the overview of the economic impact from the EDC's perspective, beyond just the direct impact that was just mentioned. We did just a couple of different modeling numbers, a little bit further impact throughout the community that we wanted to point out here today. Six slides here, a couple of different dimensions to look at. So first and foremost, those jobs and wages, it was mentioned, 233 jobs are anticipated, paying a direct wage of about $60,000 on average, that's understood. The next modeling that we had done here from the Department of Commerce, they run a REMI analysis that we've made available on our website and our FAQ, shows that they'll see an impact of those 233 jobs through indirect and induced jobs, equating to more than 500 additional jobs. That would be, you know, contracted companies that are going to be driving to and from that facility, or even when it comes to induced jobs, all of those, all of those jobs that are throughout the community that keep us, keep us meeting the needs of the additional folks. So, as Mr. Shudarash just pointed out, it's really that last slide he just had that listed a lot of those, a lot of good paying jobs. We work with Praxis Strategy Group to kind of model, get a handle on maybe what this could mean for additional population growth within the school-aged children. There's assumptions in there, and these are projections, and one of those being that, you know, all of those students would come to Grand Forks Public School District, they could go to surrounding public school districts, but it's showing that to be additional 53 children within the community, and then with the per-people payment from the state to the local districts, that could equate to just over a half a million dollars into those budgets every year. And then those construction jobs are showing, you know, on average, two and a half years of a build, right around 1,000 construction, good-paying jobs, averaging 73,000. Another economic impact worth really underscoring again, is what those property tax receipts will be off of that, that plot. So, currently, that plot is deriving $5,500 within the county structure. Now with this exemption, the first 10 years, even with the 90% exemption, is looking to derive $927,000 annually. You get into that second set of 10 years, again, annually looking to derive $1.7 million with that 75% exemption, and then of course, when you're, after that 20-year outlook, you're paying that full freight off of that, that property tax revenue would be equivalent to $5.8 million. So again, in the first year nearing, just rounding, a million dollar annual income with the exemption, it's greater than that 5,500 that's currently being derived. You can look at then, what does that mean for the taxing entities? Won't run through all the numbers here, but just to be known, you know, the school generally takes about 32% of property tax, city takes about 31%, the county, 25, and the park district will get 12. And so doing that math on those numbers that are just explained, you can see how that can all come together in the first 10-year window, the second 10-year window, and then full freight. So, all taxing entities ahead from year one. Spent a lot of conversation about the corn basis, what that does, you know, simply put, when you're having that local demand for your corn processing through a value-added egg project such as this, is you're going to see an increase in pricing. Just quick snapshot today, if you look at just what you'll get paid at the Thompson Elevator for corn, at Daraldson Ethel, excuse me, Daraldson Ethanol in Castleton, and then also the nearest, which is the nearest value-added egg processing location, or then all the way down to the closest corn mill in Wapatin, you'd see these basis points, how the pricing works. At the end of the day, the summary is that you will get an additional 30 cents per bushel from either that Daraldson Ethanol facility or Wapatin today, if you were to take your corn today. With the 30% or 30 cent increase on 150 bushel corn, that can make a real impact annually. As Mr. Shudarash said, there's no guarantees that it will remain 30, could be 40, could be 20, and there's been conversation around that. Just, you know, one of the experts we've pointed to in the past, Fran Olson out of the NDSU, has pointed out, and just a quick quote, is that the estimate of 40 cents per original isn't unrealistic. At the same time, it may, maybe won't stay that price for years to follow, the economy will balance itself. So it's uncertain, but just as Mr. Shudarash said, the takeaway here is I think on all accounts, everybody agrees that value-added egg will, will increase the price of corn locally, which is beneficial for our farmers. Just two more slides for me. Wanted to point out too, and there'll be a lot more to come from Mr. Phelan here, that this, this project is accelerating some of the infrastructure investments that we've long talked about within the community, including the already planned $50 million of improvement to the wastewater treatment plant reconstruction and modernization. Just kind of runs through some of those numbers on how what this project is doing is not only accelerating that timeline, but it's taking the burden from what we had, you know, originally scheduled to finance that, our residence, to industry, and then also that cost share across state and county. And similarly with that natural gas, where we're able to leverage some of those additional dollars, the industry paying just over that $20 million to bring additional gas into our community, and the state with another $10 million to get that done. That last line is just, even that option of that final, final decision point that the city still has yet to weigh in on, but could have the possibility for a very affordable last dollar in, increase the additional natural gas into our community. So therefore leveraging ourselves for, for future value, which is really, my last slide I wanted to point on, you know, we can run through the numbers as Mr. Shudarash just had, and what the plan is, and we can run through the models and what we expect that to be. There's also a big point that's worth underscoring here on what's to come. Mr. Shudarash, you know, has mentioned that with the industry as large as Fu Fang, there could be additional value-add coming alongside that, whether it be livestock or otherwise. Those are possibilities right in front of us, that's adjacent industry. There's also the infrastructure piece as just mentioned, we will be better positioned as a community to entertain larger investments because of this project, because our wastewater facility has been upgraded, for example. You know, Grand Forks has been open for business for some time, and this enables us to be even further open for business, but it's important that we get this done, we go through this process of due diligence and continue to move forward, because the world is watching, and by that I mean, just anecdotal, you know, my job, Director of Business Development at the EDC, is to talk with those industries that are considering Grand Forks, that are looking at Grand Forks, and make sure we put our best foot forward. And I've had two conversations in the year 2022 with possible investments, there's no guarantee of them landing with any certainty, but possible investments, one in the size of $700 million and another with $400 million. And just, the only point I'm trying to draw to is the comment they made, that they said they have to watch, they have to wait and see how this works out, because there needs to be some certain in those decisions, certainty in those decisions if they were to invest. So, again, not to overstate that, but Grand Forks has always been open for business, and I think this is a real leadership opportunity to reaffirm that, and I just wanted to make that available. I'll be available for questions at the end of the presentations, as I understand, but I'll hand it back to Mr. Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. Baumback.
May I ask a question?
Ma'am. Ma'am, we're, now is not the time, I'm sorry.
But was this on the agenda?
Ma'am, we're conducting a meeting, please, this is part of the agenda for the annexation, yes, this is the presentation for it, please. Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Burchinsky, Sean Gaddy and I were here a few weeks ago regarding the development agreement and kind of where we're at, so we're going to, we're not going to, we're going to hit all the slides, but we're just going to hit the high points of kind of what are the updates to date. We've also mentioned, you know, this is a historic project, but with that, this development agreement is something unique and new that we've done, and a lot of the issues that people have been concerned about, we even came up in planning and zoning last week about how was the city addressing these, and we really feel good that we have addressed all those issues within the development agreement. So, Mr. Gaddy and I are going to give you an update regarding where we're at. Again, it was an environmental review process, Mr. Gaddy's going to talk about that, he's going to talk about the utility service evaluations, and then under three, four, and five, I'm going to give you some updates on funding, the annexation area, and then also national security, which has been discussed previously. Again, similar to what we did, Mr. Baumback talked about, you know, two potential industries coming. Really, we follow the roadmap of what we were planning to do with Northern Plains Nitrogen. Again, they're another company, you know, we're looking at all $3 billion for that project, certainly would serve our whole region with nitrogen fertilizer, but we're following that same review process through the development agreement. Certainly, an MPN is not at that point, but if they came forward, we would do something similar. So, really, currently, we are working with Advanced Engineering, or A2S, we're working with Black and Beach, and then Bolton and Manka is doing the traffic study. Mr. Gaddy's going to give you an update on all those various issues. What I've asked Mr. Gaddy really to focus on this evening are some new developments regarding water, and so we're going to, he's going to discuss specifically raw water supply and, and also portable water supply, those are two state water commission funding partnerships that we're working with, with the state of North Dakota at 60%, so we're going to give you an update on that. We're also, thanks to Mr. Vian, serving at Lake Agassiz Water Authority, we are updating currently the Red River Valley Water Supply Project and some of the modeling there, so we've done some work on that. Specifically, I've asked Mr. Gaddy to talk about that wastewater and pretreatment related, because that's going to show up regarding this annexation in the site plan, about where we're at with Fu Fang's pretreatment system, and because it leads into some of the site planning and annexation part of that, so he'll highlight those issues. On the airside, we have had some meetings in the, in the near term regarding visual and thermal poems, and that's another issue that we've had some good meetings on. And then finally, there are some traffic updates, since you last saw some, Mr. Gaddy will, will update those too as part of the process. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Gaddy.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Good evening, Mayor Burchinsky, members of the city council. One of the first items we want to hit on here, just as a quick update, and many of these slides you have seen before, so I'll do my best to zoom through what is in new information here. But from a water supply standpoint, we have had some further conversation, in fact, there's been some, some questions that have been asked of us just around plans for this and the, the use of the raw water within the city's overall permitting context. Questions and conversations were had as recently as last week, just with some, some individuals from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, questions around our permit with Minnesota relative to North Dakota permits, just to give them a little bit better context. Maybe just real quickly, to point a few things out here, I think most have seen this graphic before, but one of the key things that we are proposing with Fu Fang's proposed raw water supply is to upgrade the city's intake, and the city's intake has the ability, so downtown here on the right-hand side of the graphic, that intake has the ability to pull water supply both from the Red Lake River as well as the Red River, so there are two pipes that essentially extend out from the bottom of the intake, go quite a few feet underground, catch within, like I said, the Red Lake River, as well as catch upstream within the Red River. So we have the ability within that intake to segregate the supply from which we are pulling from the river, which is key relative to the city's permits. If we talk quickly here about the permits, we've talked pretty high level about the permits we intend to use and the total volume that we have available. Those couple of permits that we've mentioned to this point are the, the city's perfected North Dakota, North Dakota Permit 835, which is a 33,600 acre-foot annual allocation from the Red River. If you were to look at that flow that that will provide on average, on an average-day basis, that's about 30 million gallons. basis, that's about 30 million gallons per day. And then similarly, we've talked about the Minnesota Permit 19630449 here, that is the city's Red Lake Permit, which is a 10,500 acre-foot allocation. Again, if we were to convert that to a per-day usage, that would be about 9.4 million gallons per day. So as we've, as we've been looking at the city's day-to-day use, the water in essence that flows through the city, through each of the rivers that create the Grand Forks, these are the two primary Minnesota supply permits that we're working on. Under most conditions, that would be the water supply between those two that we would be looking to provide to the plant, along with the rest of the residents' businesses and industry in Grand Forks. There are a few additional values here, we've talked a little bit about redundant supply, and so the city does have a perfected permit within Lake Ashtrabula that we've mentioned, should there be a supply shortage, that water is available. We don't list on a per-day basis here, that's stored water, and so it would be released as needed. We've shown some values on that, I'll recap those in just a second. But then the city also has what's a low-head dam permit. In essence, this isn't really an allocation, this is the city's ability to hold water back within the river to a certain level in order for it to inundate the intake, and so even in periods of low flow, you always have enough depth of water, in essence, to be able for your intake to operate properly within each of the rivers. So those, that low-head dam permit, again, is storage, pretty minimal storage, which gives you the ability through different flow conditions to pull that water from the river. There are a couple of other additional permits here as well, 6559 and 6560, these were two permits that were pulled, was it 20, I believe it was 2015, I was gonna say 2014, 2015, and these permits were pulled when we were looking at the addition of Northern Plains Nitrogen. You'll probably recall that you do have a conversation on a recurring basis, looking at the letter of intent to serve Northern Plains Nitrogen. That intent to serve comes from these two bottom conditionally-approved permits. One of the primary ways, primary ways looking to serve MPN from the city's wastewater reuse, and so when we were looking at all of the options to serve them, two additional permits were pulled primarily because of their desire to use wastewater in that instance, and so the city's permitting picture and all the permits you have is relatively complex. A lot of this, and a lot of the reason this table was developed here within the last couple of days was to help answer some of this complexity from the questions we received from the Minnesota DNR. So I wanted to just share this table with the council and the mayor to give a highlight of some of the questions we've been answering relative to these permitting and supply questions. This is a summation of a few different graphics that we've shown previously in meetings, but just to put some of those values on the prior slide into context, the city, over the past 20 years, has had an average day use of right around 7.6 million gallons per day. The addition of Fu Fang would bring the city's average day use to that approximately 14.2 million gallons per day with their stated 6.6 MGD requirement for their plant. If we looked at that relative to historical flow in the river, we did that percentile analysis that we've talked about, and what that percentile analysis looked at was every day of gauged flow across the approximately last 90 years, how often do you have enough water supply in the river? And the answer is, most of the time, if not, you know, 99% or more of the time. There has been some questions around what does the Red River Valley Water Supply offer for the city? When we look at a 99th percentile event where we start to push up the availability, there have been historical droughts, and then the word historical is key there, where there's been significant enough reduction in flow in the river, where there could be a time in those historical events, you know, the 1% to greater, where the city could, you know, be short of supply in the type of conditions we're talking about here for the growth of the community, current residents' business, industry, and then future industry. And because of that, the city has nominated for the Red River Valley Water Supply, a volume that would meet the needs of the city in those events. And so the current nomination for the city's participation in the Red River Valley Water Supply Project is 16.8 million gallons per day. And when we state that value, that was put together as what was considered to be the city's 2075 need, and ensuring that the city in a historic drought had the ability to meet that 2075 need. You could see that number, if I was to correlate it back to what's available, or what we're proposing to be used, is greater, and so when we look at what that nomination was established for, what Fu Fang and the current city usage is, there still would be a little bit of room left within that nomination value for the project, for some additional growth within the community. I should say all of this, I think Todd alluded to it in his comments, all of this is currently being re-looked at with garrison diversion, and there'll be some meetings coming up here as their modeling for water supply values is renewed, looking at when, when are these, as I mentioned, these historical drought conditions, when are the needs expected, and how will the Red River Valley Water Supply Project operate in those historical drought conditions to meet the need? So some more information to come, I would expect, over the course of the summer, some of that information will be shared with the city on how beyond permanent capacity available today, beyond what you have in redundant supply in Lake Ashtrabula, how Red River Valley Water Supply Project will work to supplement all of that to complete the picture of water supply for Grand Forks. Real quickly on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, it's been mentioned a lot in these conversations, wanted to just highlight a map of the progress of that project. This here is a graphic that indicates of the total overall project traversing all the way from the Washburn area along the Missouri River over to its discharge point just upstream of Lake Ashtrabula, where are we at in that contracting process? The project is a 1.2, $1.3 billion project, estimates are being updated, but what these contracts represent within that total project cost is over $100 million of progress that has been made in contracts that have been awarded. So the project has seen construction proceed on the intake on the Missouri River, it's seen some construction proceed on the middle reaches of the pipeline of the project, and it's seen projects substantially completed for the outfall and discharge structure in Lake Ashtrabula. Just maybe real quickly, when we think about how it fits in, and I mentioned the city's overall water supply picture, it's transferring Missouri River water to Lake Ashtrabula, so when we are drawing on water within Lake Ashtrabula in a drought condition, making sure Lake Ashtrabula stays full is what the project does in its simplest form. So just wanted to highlight that there has been a lot of progress in the last few years and in the last couple of legislative sessions to really see this get off the ground, and that progress is, like I said, in excess of $100 million at this point. So real quickly, just a couple of takeaway bullets on water supply, given some of the questions we've had here recently, is, you know, Fu Fang's use within the city's permitting structure, within their water supply availability, fits well, and there are things working, that the city's working on with Red River Valley Water Supply Project to make sure that it will continue to fit well for the next 50, 100 years. The use of raw water, and this has been a question that's come up a couple of times, is pretty key here as well, is by using raw water for this project instead of treated water, this giving the ability to save on a lot of investment that's already been made in the city's potable water plant, because Fu Fang does not need full potable water supply. We're able to divert the supply in essence around that more robust treatment, save on that capacity, and give the city the ability, again, to preserve that capacity for those that will need it, and not impact that availability for, I'll call it, more standard growth of the community. I did hit on this a moment ago, in the modeling that is going on, modeling that has been done to date on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project has shown that, except for in those more extreme drought conditions, so the project was modeled around the ability to serve everything up to a 1930-style drought. In those modeled periods, looking at Grand Forks' 2075 needs relative to the type of drought that occurred in the 30s, that water supply model has shown that's when we would see potential shortages within the Grand Forks area. As Todd mentioned, working with Mr. Vian, there is some updates, and Garrison Diversion staff and the consulting team, there's some updates to that modeling that we'll be looking at here again, just to verify some of these assumptions in the coming months. But key here is that, like I said, the permits we have, the supply availability we have, the redundancy and the planning, all of those are fitting together to show that Grand Forks more than will have enough water available to serve Fang into the future with all of these elements in play. I hit on most of this here as far as the wastewater effluent review, I won't go blow-by-blow on all of these points, but what I did want to point out is there was some questions and discussion that came up within planning, the planning and zoning discussion around, and Mr. Brooks can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm terming this correct, within the PUD, there's essentially an exception area, which is where Fu Fang's proposed wastewater treatment is to be located, and so if you were to look at the PUD graphic, there's an area. There was a condition and discussion around that treatment, and what would be required within that area within P and Z, and I do think there was some, a little bit of confusion around the line of questioning as far as what is, what is this treatment, what type of treatment, et cetera? Some of the questions almost went down the path of like passive, I'll call them passive lagoons, where you just essentially send the water out into a big open basin, and nothing active is happening to that water, which in an industrial sense like this, that can create stink. But that's not what is being proposed by Fu Fang with their pretreatment process. It's a mechanical plant with active aerated basins, and again, active management of that water, where it's not just going to sit in open-air basins, it's all going to be active treatment. We've been looking quite closely with Fu Fang at their process flow diagrams, so this graphic right here on the right-hand side is some of the more nitty-gritty detail that we've gotten into around their sources of wastewater, and how that will be sent through their wastewater process. Couple of the primary areas where we're looking explicitly at the idea of like covering some of their processes is in the area of dewatering and waste solids disposal, and some of their, I'll call them more static equalization-type basins, their collection pools and pre-aeration basins. But as we look at this, you know, we've had good conversation with Fu Fang's design team and representatives around where it might make sense to cover processes. We have not worked all the way through the details of which process is for sure. Some of these we know can be done, some of this, you know, is done quite a bit in our cold weather climate, but one of the big areas of concern is their active aeration basins. There's so much airflow that goes into those aerobic treatment ponds, that covering them, how you manage that airflow, how you vent that airflow, how they have the ability to work with their blowers, et cetera, within those aeration basins, there's just some concern about how they would do that. And what I would say is, relative to older concern, because there's so much air flowing to those basins, of all of the things we're looking at within their overall processes, the more air in that location is usually, you would think more air might blow off more stink, but more air usually means more dissolved oxygen, far less likelihood for something to stink within the wastewater process. So the condition, I guess, long story short, the condition that was discussed at planning and zoning around requiring covering, I think we need a little bit more time to look at, you know, specifically what parts of the process make the most sense, and continue through the due diligence that the development agreement required to get to the answer of the best solution on a granular basis for what's being proposed here, and we just haven't gotten to that level of detail yet. So I just wanted to spend a little time on what we know, what we've discussed with Fu Fang's design team, because there is going to be a question around, again, the condition on that exception area, around covering all treatment, that, again, we need a little bit more time to work through with the developers on that. Nothing has really changed from a site stormwater management standpoint for the project, we're essentially done with the stormwater master planning that was completed, I want to say about a month ago, we essentially completed all of the work for that stormwater master planning. We are in the process, or we're in the process, before taking a little bit of a pause here in all this due diligence work, in the process of wrapping up our report. That report is gonna be key to provide to Fu Fang reps, so they understand what we're requiring of them on all their onsite drainage and controls, what their discharge rates and volumes, et cetera, can be to offset city infrastructure. So we haven't shared all of that with Fu Fang's design team quite yet, but we're very near being able to do that. Air pollution-wise, again, we haven't done a lot here, we got a lot of information, but we have not been able to analyze in great depth any of that information, again, because of the pause. One thing, though, that Mr. Phelan did mention is because of some joint discussion around Northern Plains Nitrogen and some of their emissions from their project that were already under study, we did have a meeting two weeks ago, two Fridays ago, with airport representatives to talk through some of those Northern Plains Nitrogen issues, as well as to introduce them to what we're looking at with the Fu Fang project. And that introduction initially centered on where more their visual and thermal emissions going to be from the project site, and just starting some of the discussions around what the scope of that study needs to be. As I understood it from the conversation, you know, there are some key differences here as we look at where the Fu Fang plant is proposed to be located relative to where the MPN plant, which is gonna create some differences in scope of review, but we're just at the front end of looking at that, and I think we had a good collaborative meeting with airport reps, their consultants, the authority, University of North Dakota reps, and city individuals all in the room discussing what needs to be looked at at the plant. So made a little bit of progress just by way of that related Northern Plains Nitrogen meeting, and ready to get into this in quite a bit more detail here as things proceed. On the traffic study, there has been some discussion since this slide, or a prior version of this slide was presented a couple of weeks back. One of the big areas is the traffic study and the traffic counts that it was originally built upon. The study was run on some earlier counts, which were higher than what is now being proposed in a more refined form from Fu Fang. So originally, we talked about 1,800 trucks per week being the basis for the traffic study. What more refined information has shown, and looking at that a little bit more depth with Fu Fang reps, is that truck count is actually quite a bit less as proposed, of around 1,000 trucks per week, which is good, you know, overall. The one thing I did talk to Mr. Bittner, and I don't have Mr. Bittner from Bolton and Mink online to back me up here today like I did last time, but in essence, the way I would describe Mr. Bittner's comments on the impact of this is, it wasn't so much the count that was driving some of the recommended improvements, it was just the addition of those new movements in the locations along Highway 81 North and along DeMers Avenue that was requiring these handful of improvement recommendations prior to startup. The one thing I did correct here, the two red bullets you can see down under item two, in the prior version of the slide, those were presented as long-term improvements for consideration. I did make comments in the last meeting that those were a couple of items the North Dakota DOT was requesting to be done prior, just because of these new, again, these movements that are going to be created by the traffic at those two primary locations on 42nd Street and DeMers, and 27th Avenue North and Highway 81. So some good news here around total truck counts, as far as the improvements, just given the background and nature of the traffic, and again, these movements, those trucks, looking at a very similar list of overall improvements needed prior to project startup. Continue to progress through all the other items, a lot of these have been on hold as we've, again, as we've been on a little bit of a holding pattern here for the past few weeks, but we'll continue to make progress on reviewing information and requesting additional information from the Fu Fang team in each of these areas, but nothing major that I would highlight as far as updates on each of these items here this evening. Again, similar utility service evaluations, a lot of our corridor work, as I had mentioned in our last discussion, primarily all of the urban areas that were key to understanding the assessment analysis and what utilities needed to be placed where, and do we have the ability to install those utilities in and around the project, both for to serve Fu Fang and the annexation area. That urban part of the analysis is primarily done, where we left this study off was more on the rural portions, so for the raw water lines traversing from the water plant, and for some of the wastewater lines that need to make their way all the way to the wastewater plant, we haven't rolled up our sleeves on, again, those rural portions, but we've put a lot of good work and essentially, I'd say, wrapped up on the urban portions, just given a lot of the questions that arose around the annexation area analysis. That included lift station service, we hit on that, nothing has significantly changed from our last discussion in the progression of that evaluation. There has been some update to Agassi Rural Water System Inter- There has been some update to Agassi Rural Water System Interface. We, we did have some additional discussion and further progress and Mr. Gostad could speak to this. Further progress has been made on the, the agreement that is being drafted to essentially work during a three-way capacity between the city, Agassi Rural Water user district and the city, or sorry, the city, Agassi Rural Water users and Fu Fang as far as relocating these, these lines off of the Fu Fang property, where they'll be located on an interim basis within proposed easements on the plat and PUD around the edges of the property to ensure no service impacts to all of the existing, all of the existing Agassi Rural Water customers in and around the project site. And that, that preliminary plan has been developed by Agassi. Our understanding is that once the agreement is signed, they intend to bid those projects here in a May-June timeframe at an estimated cost currently of around $30,000. And Mr. Gostad, I don't know if you'd add anything additional to this slide in terms of progress made on the agreement draft?
The agreement and what it does is those red lines are the current pipes that Agassi uses to service their existing customers. And the agreement is simply to relocate, well, I wouldn't say relocate, to abandon those red pipes, the pipes that are in the red there and move them into a location that are in the blue. And, and an agreement has been transmitted to both the Agassi Rural Water District and Fu Fang USA attorneys for their initial review.
Nothing major here on facility planning items for the wastewater plant. Many of the estimates and information we've shared prior is still our most current information. This has been an area, a very important area that is one of the more critical, critical path items to completion in order to ultimately have the ability to serve Fu Fang, but we have remained on pause for the most part on this work and looking to pick that up with, like I said, no major changes here over the last few weeks. Someone had mentioned that on the stormwater master plan as well. So with that, I believe, Mr. Phelan, I'm just going to say a few more words on the gas supply.
Mayor Potchensky and council members, excuse me, not much update on the natural gas supply other than the North Dakota Industrial Commission is planning, I think on this, this east-to-west leg into Grand Forks County. That's proposed, it's under an RFP process currently. I think it's planned to go to the North Dakota Industrial Commission in the May timeframe, where we anticipate they're going to award a contract to a, to a provider. Likely it's going to be One Oak slash Viking Pipeline because they're the most strategically aligned, not that it wouldn't have to be, but right now they're most aligned with doing that. I think along the way, I, when I've spoken to One Oak officials, they were planning as part of their RFP process to submit for the 12-inch line, which will give us that additional capacity in that line. We are, I talked about that $500,000 gap. I think at some point in that April-May timeframe, when this gets more solidified, I suspect they're going to be back and asking the city of Grand Forks whether it's with Fund 2163 or Fund 5996 and working with the EDC if we want to close that gap and build that larger pipeline. I think right now what they feel like is that 12-inch line is the most cost-effective and giving us the biggest bang for our buck. So with that, longer term, I reached out to Mr. Lynn Helms, who's the Director of Mineral Resources, and also Justin Kringstad, who's the North Dakota Director of the Pipeline Authority, and I asked him to come to Grand Forks to provide an overall presentation, not, not only on the east-west pipeline to serve Grand Forks County, but that larger pipeline that's going to go from the Bakken to eastern North Dakota that's going to provide a large volumes of natural gas that's, that's going to come hopefully along that highway to corridor into Grand Forks and what that's going to mean, what their timeframe is and what the impact will be to Grand Forks. I'm anticipating sometime this summer, both of them will be in town to provide a briefing and overview to city council. I think that'll fit our, our due diligence timeframe. By this summer, going into the fall, we'll have a lot of these answers that Mr. Gaddy just talked about right now. And I think in the midst of that, Mr. Helms and Mr. Kringstad will be here to talk about the opportunity that, that is going to come to Grand Forks County on future projects. I'm going to talk about the funding plan. These are the array of the menu of options that we're looking at for, really to fund these various projects. And so I won't go through all those items. We've talked about a lot of these various component parts of trying to fund the various projects. So this is the list we're working off as part of the multiple development of sources. So Marine Storestead and myself and our teams have been working together and how to put all these funding mechanisms together. Here is a, you know, we get a lot of questions about these various infrastructure pieces. How does Fu Fang USA pay and then other planned funding sources? And so you can see from local potable water mains down to 27th Avenue North. In the middle is how we are proposing Fu Fang to pay. This is all contained within the development agreement. And then finally, what other outside funding sources that we're bringing to the various pieces of infrastructure. The other thing we did is trying to look at what, what does that mean? So the upfront contributions and we've talked about the escrow account, that's going to pay mainly for that raw water, some of the wastewater treatment aspects, some of the wastewater pump stations. Also, there's that upfront cost with the wastewater tapping fee and also fees regarding building construction. So that's that upfront that they're going to pay as part of the 12.7. And then what, ask Mr. Gaddy if he could give us an estimate as part of the development agreement, what will be the annual contributions that Fu Fang will make? And so if you go down the various infrastructure pieces, the, the areas that are related to assessments, those are those capital projects, whether down this list is wastewater, stormwater and flood protection, those are all those capital assets in the paving. And you recall that the paving is at 80/20. So we tried to say what will be their annual share of those assessments? And when we go on the annual share, again, we're trying to move all these assessments out to 30 years and we're trying to get the financing as competitive as processed and many of those are in state programs that are 30-year, 2%. And then finally, trying to translate, as you recall, as part of the development agreement, we have various rates that are set within that agreement. And so we went down the water utility rates at 480,000 a year, and that's for two things. Number one, the raw water supply is going to have a per thousand charge above and beyond that, that capital amount that's going to go into it. In addition, Mr. Gaddy talked about that long-term water mains that we're going to put up there, and so they're going to need potable water supply too. And so that, that's a revenue item for that. Wastewater utility rates, they're going to pay on a per thousand gallon basis too for their, on their wastewater side. And then finally, stormwater, flood protection, mosquito and sanitation. Right now, we haven't worked through all the sanitation, but as part of the development agreement, it goes through, they're going to pay all normal fees that any entity would come into Grand Forks. So if you total that all up, we're a little bit over $1.7 million. We haven't added in the sanitation fees, whether that's landfill fees or whether it's just collection fees. That's kind of where we're at with the annual basis on the estimate based upon the development agreement. Again, we've talked a lot about the state funding programs. I'm going to go from left to right. We have had a lot of success and we should be really thankful to our state of North Dakota, in particular, North Dakota State Water Commission and Governor Bergman and his staff. So we have been successful at this point for not only the raw water supply, to provide water supply, but we've also been successful at getting a 60% cost share for that water distribution system. So about a week or so ago, we did get a cost share approval up 60% for the upfront design of both of those systems. And so you can see down below, we're at 1.34 million secured as part of the design and what, and how the state water commission moves forward with projects is that they, they first fund them through engineering and then later they look at construction and we anticipate going back to the state water commission to get the balance of that 12.3. Prairie Dog funds, in particular with the 27th Avenue North, we have set aside Prairie Dog funds for that particular road for our cost share. And number two, as part of the wastewater pump station. So you can see we've, right now, preliminary set aside 4.5 million of our 12.4, 12 million plus that we anticipate getting on the Prairie Dog fund. So you can see that's where we're proposing is that. We talked about ARPA. Again, we have wastewater ARPA funds for both the city and the county. That's 6.4. And then finally, we've talked about the natural gas pipeline that's pledged. Those are all those state programs and we're talking about grant funding shares to help mitigate the cost for the adjacent property owners, also to mitigate the cost for Fu Fang. And this is really how the state of North Dakota is really participating in, in this particular project. Finally, we're going to have our own cost share, so we're trying to look at the best financing we can. And so if you go from left to right, we're looking at 30-year financing at 2%. And with, as Mr. Sandy talked about earlier, with rates going up and to include if we were to start selling revenue bonds, we should, again, be very thankful that we still have these state programs that can go out 30 years and stay at 2%. We're not going to be able to compete with that in the, in the revenue bond market at this point. So really, we're focused on the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality for both water and wastewater will be our primary areas that we're going to look at. In both the drinking water SRF program and the clean water SRF program, we're going to look to try to find potential loan forgiveness programs. And we're going to focus that in these adjacent property areas. That will be our focus to see if we can get loan forgiveness in those two areas. There's two other programs right now. The state of North Dakota, thank you again to them. They, we have an additional $25 million that we can seek bonding capacity from the bank of North Dakota, and so we can use that for water, wastewater roads. And again, that would be a 30-year, 2%. And then finally, the last loan program that we can qualify, and when I was here last and when you approved the loan for Series C for the Red River Valley Water Supply Program, those funds came from this. So we got not only 2% interest rate, but we also got a 40-year term. And so that, that's another unique program. So we're, we're looking at all those programs to try to get the best deal that we can. Again, the city council is going to see loan applications, you're going to see assessment districts, you're going to see budgets and budget amendments, and you're going to see project bids and awards. So there's going to be a lot, as we move forward with these constructions, it's going to be a lot of detail that's going to be coming through as we work through this summer into the fall and into next year as part of the development agreement. Nothing has changed on the annexation area. I know Mr. Brooks is going to talk about this, but you know, we've done everything we can through all these funding programs to mitigate the special assessments in this area and to provide really great infrastructure to these areas. And I think we really have a mission accomplished on, on what we've done. We've got a lot of work to do to, to work through all those programs for the state of North Dakota. We've done our very best to make that happen. Again, I talked about this last time I was here. We did get feedback. People are concerned about property taxes, they're concerned about special assessments, they're concerned about traffic, they're concerned about workforce availability, they're concerned about China. And so we try to address all those various concerns that people have had when we've gone out to talk to them. Again, Mr. Hodak talked about trying to, how we evaluate the property out there. He came up with this graphic where there are going to be some additions. We're going, they're going to not pay Falkner Township property taxes, the city of Grand Forks is going to take that over. And so there's going to be a net gain in property taxes in those, in that area. Finally, on the national, national security outreach, so we talked about the Grand Forks Air Force Base review. We talked about some of the security risks in our, in our country, whether it's economic clusters or that Fu Fang doesn't fit in with, as a wet cornmeal. It is also not on any federal list of not to do business with. But finally, in the FBI area office, we did reach out to the FBI office. We do have a meeting set up with a few of us to go over an initial unclassified briefing. And then based upon that meeting that we're planning to have in the next couple of weeks, we'll determine kind of how we can even broaden that meeting. But we have reached out to FBI, they are going to provide us a briefing, and so we'll provide more briefings to come here in the next coming weeks. With that, I'm going to ask Mr. Gostad to hit those two items that came up in planning and zoning, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. There were two items that planning and zoning asked that I review. One was the, an agreement with Mr. Corinta that's basically a non-annexation agreement. And then also whether a contingent annexation would be, could be done. I'll start with the Corinta non-annexation agreement, just kind of go over its terms. It was, it was approved or dated in June 30th of 2016. It dealt with the Green Pulp subdivision, which I believe is the Red River Biorefinery Development. It's an area just north of 20th Avenue North. The agreement called for Mr. Corinta to waive any protest of annexation. In exchange, he would not have to pay any special assessments for the area, the remaining property that he owned in that area, except for that that was contained within the Green Pulp subdivision. Also, as part of the agreement, the Corinta land cannot be subject to an annexation process unless it either is developed by Mr. Corinta or utilized for uses other than pasture agricultural purposes. And only that portion that is developed or is changed from something other than pasture or agricultural purposes can be subject to annexation. The agreement also is non-assignable without the consent of both parties, which means that, for example, if Mr. Corinta would happen to sell the property, the buyer would not get the benefit of that particular non-annexation agreement. There is however, no time limitation on that agreement. The second issue that planning and zoning asked me to review was a contingent annexation meeting. As I understood, the annexation wouldn't apply until some contingency would be satisfied. And talking to Mr. Brooks, this city has done what I described as delayed annexations, which are annexations where the property becomes annexed either on the earlier of the development of the property or a date certain. So if the annexation was going to occur, if the, even if the property wasn't developed by that particular date, it was going to be annexed. I have contacted several other cities in North Dakota to determine if they've done any contingent annexations. I received seven responses back, and these are cities that are the 13 or 14 largest in, in the state. None of them have done a contingent annexation. That includes Fargo, Williston, Jamestown, Minot, Dickinson, Valley City and Wapton. I did have a conversation today with the Wapton city attorney as well and speaking about their, when they do developments, either residential or industrial, they will enter into development agreements with all kinds of conditions precedent, including letters of credit is what they, what she told me. Some of the issues that I've identified with the contingent annexation are really, there are some pragmatic issues such as what's the contingency? Who's going to decide if the contingency is satisfied? Who would be the decision maker? Would it be administration? Would it be city council? How would we notify the affected landowners if that contingency was satisfied? There are some legal issues that I've identified as well. The annexation statute in North Dakota speaks of after the adoption of the resolution, absent a sufficient number of protests, the territory described in the resolution that you'll see here in a bit becomes part of the city. It doesn't say it becomes part of the city on an effective date. It says as of the date of the resolution. The next sentence of the, of that particular statute goes on to say, when the resolution is recorded, the annexation becomes effective. Seems a little bit at odds, those two sentences are a little bit at odds of one another. I view recording as something to provide notice to third parties. When I record a deed, I'm not conveying the property, I'm providing notice that, that I own the property. There is, I didn't find any interpretation of this particular statute in North Dakota. However, I found it relative, well, not a relative, it's an old case from dating back to 1914, in which the city of Grand Forks was involved and it was the same Falkner Township that was involved. And I'll just go through some of the facts with you because I think it's important to understand my analysis of that particular case. In that case, the city had issued a resolution to annex about 780, 770 acres. After that resolution was issued, there were objections that were lodged. The city then reduced the area to be annexed down to approximately 700 acres. Also significant was that at the time of that, of annexation law in North Dakota, if there was a sufficient quantity of farmland that was in, within the area to be annexed, and they didn't give me the percentage, but for the sake of discussion, if, if for example, it was 50% farmland, then the annexation process could, couldn't go forward. It was the death knell of that annexation on its own. The North Dakota Supreme Court concluded that, went through an analysis and said, you know, when we went from, went from 780 acres down to 700, that it, it said, we cannot presume the objections would be the same if the protesters knew the annexation area was only 700 acres. Also, they could not assume that those they could not assume that those that did not object to the larger area would likewise not object to the smaller area. Also, they said that if the, the larger area contained enough of that farmland, where the annexation would be defeated on its own, those that didn't object when the area became smaller and therefore the farmland wasn't sufficient, didn't have an opportunity to object. They may have not objected because they viewed it, the original resolution is having enough farmland where the annexation would be defeated on its own. And so bringing it in, in the context of a contingent type of annexation, the concern I have is providing sufficient notice to those that would be annexed and the ability to protest. For example, some may not protest because they believe the, the particular contingency may not be satisfied. It'd be a similar type of circumstance here. Also, we wouldn't know, there may be some that would be in favor of the annexationists, but may not be in favor of Fufang and may, you know, we just don't know what that means, the contingency. And so because of those factors, my concern is how do I allow and provide notice? And when those things occur, how do those that are out there protest or not protest if the contingency is satisfied or not? We also have some other, I did one, I did a national search in my West Law program of all federal and state cases. I found one case out of Florida from 1965 that talked about a contingent annexation. I didn't find any other cases, and I used the word contingent, contingency annexation in my search. So there are some other issues with the contingent annexation. We have existing agreements with Agassi today. The deal with when we annex property, the agreement is we have to compensate Agassi for customers that may be lost as a result of that annexation. That agreement does not contemplate putting out water pipes, drinking water pipes, or potable water pipes without the annexation as part of the process. Also, by our city ordinance, if we provide potable water to customers outside of our, outside of the city limits, we have to charge them 150% of those within the city. Also, by city ordinance, we're not allowed to provide wastewater services to those outside of the city. So the concern is with these contingencies, if it doesn't get satisfied, what happens with, with that, those particular infrastructure concerns? So my recommendation is, is not to embed a contingency within that annexation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gossad. Mr. Brooks, you going to wrap it up for us?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, President Sandy, and members of the council. I'll quickly go through our P&amp;Z approval items. There's four on the agenda tonight. Plat, vacation, rezoning, and annexation. First of all, here's the plat. Since the area is so large, it did span two sheets. And then the third one for the, the title sheet. This is the southern area. Here's the northern. Lot one, at the very top here, that's English Cooley diversion. We had that included to, to get our city property platted as well. So this is the very northern portion. Lot two will be where the, the plant itself will be. And then there was a smaller lot three here, which is going to be that regional stormwater pond. There's a small vacation. This is on the western side of that, that stormwater pond, vacation of that existing North 32nd Street. That's platted, just on paper. There's nothing in there today. I'll hit on some of the big items that we talked about. And I think Sean on the, on the rezoning, Sean Gaddy previously talked about one of the conditions that the planning commission put on in terms of odor and covering of the pond. And I'll be asking Sean to be at our next planning and zoning commission. So he'll hopefully be able to make that to explain to our commissioners. But first of all, I want to show the area. This is the 2045 land use plan that we have in place. It's been in place since 2016. The gray that you see here, that's industrial land. The location that we're looking at is in this area here. Here's 27th. Here's Gateway Drive. Interstate's up through here. And this area by and large is set up for industrial. There's existing industrial to the north and then obviously to the south as well. And I'll show you that a little bit. Here's our zoning. Currently, this is ag property on where that Fufang property will be. Down to the south of here is Simplot. And then to the north is Mindak Seeds. I'll show you those a little bit. Here's North Washington as it comes up and through. Along the west side is industrial as well. Those are those existing businesses that are there. Here's the site itself again. And what I want to do is show some distances from some of the existing residential. That's been a lot of the concern on a plant this size of what our distances are. So first, I want to show you where the state mill is at in relationship to this. State mill, very high, I think nearly 200 feet in height. Distance to, I went to the closest property, the Riverside neighborhood where their closest residential homes were, and straight line distance about just under 1,200 feet. And fairly close location. Those have been existing for a long time. And then the distance to where the edge of the property will be for the Fufang area, and you're talking about, about one and a third miles away. And not only that, but it would be on the other side of that state mill location. Here's the Simplot location, the High Bay freezer, roughly 140, 150. That's that new freezer that was just put up. This is a picture from the, the north of that site. Straight line distance to First Residential, south of there, the Lake Agassi area, along Stanford Road. And that's about 827 feet. And that was right to the, the building face. And then again, where this plant will be, it'll be about one and a quarter miles away to the north of there. And again, right on the other side of Simplot. So in terms of what I'm looking at is the buffering of the existing industrial sites to those locations. And then on the north side, Mindak Seeds is here. Here's that diversion channel, English Cooley diversion is here. So this is right on the south side of there. You're getting into where that property is. And there's some existing ag industry that's up on that, in that area there, Mindak. Here's some warehousing, CF Industries, and I can go all the way up to the former PV area there as well. Here's what those look like. Here's the Mindak Seed site. So I showed you what the state mill and Simplot look like. Here's a view from the interstate of the Mindak area. Here's the zoning that we're talking about. So this is the action item that's requested. That exception area B, that was the area that Sean had spoke of. But this is, this is putting it into a PUD. And the conditions that the, the city's putting on that in terms of height limitations, where we're looking for some of those things to occur. The exception area A, this is where the actual main plant, some of the heights are going to get a little bit higher. And so it's hard to read, but this is about 600, 800, actually maybe closer to 800 feet north of 27th Avenue. So we're already getting some distance there, buffering where some of those increased heights will be of the, of the plant itself. When I start talking about the annexation, in the past, I've, I've said that we've been looking at this for many years. I've been asked to, can you show us some of the things that we've looked at? Here's the analysis that was done back in 1994. And this is from the document itself. It was done by Grand Forks planning staff and, and handed out and presented to council. The last communications, at that time, business and property owners on Highway 80 North, 81 North, were obviously very involved at that time. I know ownership has changed over on a lot of those properties. But at that time, they were not against the orderly city growth of annexation, but they were concerned about some of the costs and having them be looked at as covering the majority of those costs. So they, they actually wanted the city to look at a little bit bigger annexation to spread some of those costs. And they were concerned about leapfrog development. And I can get anybody that document that wants a, a copy of that as well. So here's a quick history of some of those things. And it was about 1989 when we first looked at it. City delayed action for five years at that time. Asked for a report to come back. That was the report that you just saw. 1994, they delayed action. I'm still trying to get what the delay of action was, if it was five or 10 years. But as most people know, 1997 occurred. And city planning staff had quite a bit of turnover. And there's just basically been no action since. We've had a lot of things going on during that time. So apologize, but that's one of the reasons that it hasn't been back before you. Here's the annexation area, the, that we've looked at. It, by and large, is very similar to the businesses that were looked at before. Some have actually come in since, but, and then obviously the farm area, some of the field area where the plant's going to go as well. Providing for you some of the things that we looked at from a staff level to include this in the annexation area. This is actually out of North Dakota Century Code. And specifically, some of the things that we looked at and how it was a community of interest in this area. Here's the annexation point rating system. So we have this rating system. It's been used for many years. It was all the way back in that report as well. It's been tweaked since that time. But it's based on a 23-point rating system. And if you were over 12, this tool was, was looked at as a way to kind of assist people when they looked at whether or not an area was ready for annexation. In this area, we've looked at this, and we're looking at 18 out of 23 is what we have for annexation point system. As I said, down here at the bottom, as soon as I get that out of the way, it talks about 12 points as kind of a minimum for justification. So the last thing I want to talk about was next steps. So North Dakota Century Code for annexation by resolution is very prescriptive on what should occur next, is notice to be published in paper twice. Sherry and Finance has always been good to help us out with that. Certified mailings to the owners required once the, the area is set here tonight. And owners have 30 days from the date of the first publication to provide written protest to the city auditor. Township is to be notified by certified mail as well. With that, that concludes the presentation I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I think at this time, if council's got any questions throughout that, it's become a little bit of an endurance test at this point. But I think, you want to go to some comments or questions first, or how would you like to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please, President Sandy.
I've got, I don't know, 20 questions written down for, on a variety of topics. At some point, I also want to talk about the petition. I'm not sure. I'm anticipating there are a few people that have provided speaker cards that want to talk about the petition as well. So I don't know if we shouldn't have us talk about the petition first, and maybe that will drop some of those people off or, or not. I also feel like we just had a significant presentation. And so I'm not sure what's, I don't want to make all of the people that presented wait. And so I'm happy to go with whatever others on the council want to do first. Anybody has any ideas?
Mr. Bean or Vice President Mock?
Yeah, I guess there's, there was so much information given tonight that I really like to have some time to digest it because it's a great update that we, that we've, we've seen, and we've seen advancements. But I probably have more questions generated because of that. So I don't know how to make that fit into everything because we've been at this for three hours already. What makes the most sense? So however, I just want to make sure, because I think the biggest thing we've, I've been after is data. And we're getting a lot more data, but that probably generates a lot more questions, too. I won't get into some of the issues. And Todd and I've had discussions on water, raw water availability versus what's being permitted. Two, two different issues as far as I'm concerned. That is still one of my larger concerns, that I, I know we're having further study done. We've started that and implement, are in the process of implementing. That's, it's critical. That's one of the major issues that I see along with a number of others that are, I think we're getting some answers to. A lot of the studies were put on hold for a period of time, I understand, which is delayed getting some of that information. But we still need it, of course, as we go forward. The other thing I guess I would relate to is I was able to watch the planning and zoning on video. I thought there was a lot of good information that was presented. The meeting went well, which helped a lot for what some of the, the questions I had. And now with some of the presentation, it's, it's still a step forward. But, you know, there's still so much information to digest here.
Thank you, Mr. Bean.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Bean a question?
Please.
Do you have any questions right now that you don't have the answers to, that you believe somebody currently has the answers to? Or are, do you believe the questions that you have will be answered based upon the additional studies and additional information that we will be getting?
I would say most of that will be coming in. I would, I think.
I would think so, too. I've had people tell me that you've asked a lot of really good questions, but we haven't gotten the answers to them yet.
Right.
And, and I agree with that. But I believe that's because you're waiting for more data out of the studies. Is that accurate?
That's accurate for some of it, not all of it.
Okay.
Back in, I guess it was the end of October of last year, when we first found out that, I came up with a whole list of infrastructure and other types of questions that I submitted to. The mayor has, and Todd has, that I know is being worked on. There are probably some other things that have certainly came about since then.
Sure.
And, and so I would still be in a position to wanting to, to know that.
Yep.
Because I want to make an informed decision based on data. I think that's the long and short of it for, for me. And right now, I don't have all that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if somebody else saying that I really want to talk about the petition, I'm going to get into some of my questions unless somebody else wants to take the floor because I feel like I've been speaking too much already tonight.
Why don't you start with the questions since we got the, them here?
Thank you.
And then we can, we can go to, to conversation about the petition after that.
Sure.
And then we'll go to, to public comment and try to do that orderly so we can get everybody.
Perfect. Is Mr. Lund still in the audience? Mr. Lund, I have a question for you. I appreciate Mr. Baumbock stepping up and, and providing a nice overview. But you're the guy that a lot of this falls on. And I appreciate the, the fact that you've been taking lots of questions and also some heat about this. Let me ask you a very direct question. Why wasn't this pilot project reviewed by a third party?
What? Why wasn't the pilot project?
Yeah. Why wasn't this pilot, all the other pilot projects are reviewed by a third party? Why wasn't this pilot part, project reviewed by a third party?
Mayor Bertinski, Mr. Sandy, the pilot agreement in terms of the property tax incentive?
Yeah.
I don't believe the pilot projects are ever reviewed by a third party, Mr. Sandy. I feel like I'm really misunderstanding your question.
Can you explain the difference between this and an apartment complex? I guess it'd be beneficial. What's the difference between this one and a Simplot project versus?
Yes, yes, yes.
Like the Olive Anne?
All right. I'm, I'm, I'm on track now. The development, you know, the Olive Anne and downtown redevelopment or redevelopment projects in general, Mayor Bertinski, Mr. Sandy, those are generally done to determine whether a project is feasible or not, or what type of level of incentive is needed to make the project feasible or work. So in a redevelopment, in many cases, you take a look at what makes a greenfield competitive. In a redevelopment project, you have acquisition of land, you have relocation of utilities, demolition of property, and you have to take a look at that. On an industrial project such as this, I mean, these are extremely competitive projects. And you need to be in sort of that game in order to secure them. I mean, we've taken a look at different states in terms of what they do in their competitiveness, Mr. Sandy, am I on the right track?
Yes.
Okay. In terms of what you need to be competitive, you know, there's a baseline. Property tax incentives of this nature are, that's the standard. Every single state that has a sales tax has a sales and use tax exemption for manufacturing equipment and construction equipment for these types of projects, similar with, similar with a, similar with a corporate income tax. When you're competing with another location, there are many locations in this case, you need to put your best foot forward in order to, to secure that. And you need to keep that information, you know, a little bit. And you need to keep that information, you know, a little bit to yourself as a community so those other communities don't understand what you're doing. So you're, you're competing in highly, in highly competitive market. I mean, we took a look at some of the other communities that they were looking at and had some conversations. And, you know, we didn't have necessarily the most aggressive proposals. Some of those other communities went even further. Some communities were, I consider it sort of proactively aggressive, and you can say better prepared, however you want to describe that, but communities had installed the infrastructure that you're talking about today, had expanded their wastewater treatment facilities and water distribution facilities. And in some cases, those citizens were paying higher rates as a result of them making those proactive investments in hopes that something like this would come. On a couple of the locations, and I think nearly all of the finalists, the land was controlled by the communities that the projects were looking at. So the community was going to be negotiating either a gift of land or a low-cost sale, transaction of land. This was the only one in the finalists that they're actually dealing directly with the landowners or paying, you know, what you would call a market rate for that. So I think, you know, this community has struck a very nice balance in terms of, you know, being prepared to make these investments, not burdening the citizens with those rates because you're making them too quickly, but being able to react when an opportunity such as this comes along. So the bottom line, it's along the answer, it's a very, very competitive. And these communities, particularly the last four, competed very hard and had very sharp pencils.
Thank you. Follow-up question. So typically, when we're doing a payment in lieu of taxes, and it's longer than five years, we have to go and verbalize that concept to the other taxing agencies in town, correct?
That's correct.
Who went and verbalized this concept to the other taxing entities?
Well, there were a number of folks. I was a part of those conversations. Mayor Bertschinsky, Mr. Sandy, Mr. Phelan, really led a lot of the conversation. And the leadership of the council and the community made those conversations. And each one of these taxing entities unanimously approved, I believe they were all unanimous, approved the, supporting the 20-year pilot agreement because, this is economic development, this is, I mean, as Mr. Bonbuck and others added, 5,500 worth of taxes today, year one, 927,000 estimate of new taxes. So, you know, political subdivisions were all, there's limited resources. And this is a big boost in year one. If you take a look at over 10-year, 20-year, and beyond 20-year, this is a big boost to new resources our community that will pay for schools, that will pay for city and county services, that will pay for roads. This is new resources that can lift us all up. This is not a burden to the taxpayers. This is adding to the tax base.
Just to reiterate, you, a team went to the county commission.
Yes, Mr. Sandy.
And not only asked them for money to help us put in infrastructure in Faulkner Township, which they granted.
They did.
They also unanimously agreed that they agree with the concept and therefore unanimously agreed with the pilot program.
Yep.
With one exception.
Yes. There's always an exception.
I just forgot.
The county commission, it was.
Diane Knopf voted no.
Commissioner Knopf.
Commissioner Knopf voted no.
It was unanimous at the Grand Forks Public School Board.
But the Grand Forks Public School Board, Board of 11 of our peers, who are from all areas of our community, not wards, but all areas across town, they voted unanimously for the pilot agreement.
Yes, Mr. Sandy.
Yes, sir. And I think, I think it's important to note that the team, at the same time, was talking about the Olive Ann Hotel. Am I correct with that?
That's correct.
And the Olive, the Olive Ann did not get unanimous votes at the school district, for example, correct? If I recall correctly, it was pretty contentious vote on the very small project, the $30 million project, yet they were unanimous on the $700 million project.
That's right.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lund. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Gostad, received an email late this afternoon from Mr. Beauclaire. I don't know if it became part of the public record, but he did indicate in his email that you have a conflict of interest because you are being paid by the city of Grand Forks. Can you help us understand if you actually have a conflict of interest in this issue or not?
I guess I haven't seen the email.
I know. I'm bluntly asking, do you feel because you are paid by the city of Grand Forks, your law firm is fazed to work on this, do you have a conflict of interest?
Well, that would mean that I'd have a conflict of interest with my own clients on every asset I work on. I don't believe that to be the case. I don't believe that to be the rule of professional conduct that I operate under.
I would agree. You are working for the city and the citizens of Grand Forks, but I just wanted your professional I've heard all sorts of differing comments regarding water, drinking water, wastewater, you name it. Is there anywhere in the, in the construction of this facility, is there anywhere where there's a direct pipe of processed materials that can either go into the Cooley or go directly into the Red River? Is there any way for them to turn a valve open and push untreated materials into the river?
Mayor Bertschinsky, Council President Sandy, you know, right now, the plan is that they're going to discharge all their, any processed water to the city of Grand Forks. It's going to go up to our treatment plant, and then it'll be discharged to the river per our, per our permit with the state of North Dakota.
Very good. So there's no way they can do that? There's no physical way?
Yeah. You would have to get a, not that there hasn't been people fined for doing things illegally, discharges, but no, there's no legal way for you to do it without a permit.
Our drinking water plant, what pipe is going to go from our drinking water plant to the Fu Fang plant? What are we going to be taking from our drinking water plant to the Fu Fang site?
Mayor Bertschinsky and Council President Sandy, we will have a pump station, raw water pump station located on our water treatment plant site that will transmit through via two pipelines to the Fu Fang site and the general area. So there will not be a connection on that. That's at 6 to 7 million gallons per day. Will not be a connection with our water treatment plant. However, there will be a connection because we're also putting water lines in there for potable water, drinking water.
For toilets.
Yep.
Drinking fountains.
And for fire protection.
Dishwasher.
Yep. And for fire protection. That water will come from the city of Grand Forks because we're going to extend our water mains in that area further north and loop it around.
Similar to all the other businesses that are going to be annexed, they will get drinking water.
Yes.
Yes, and be able to run their toilets. But we're, the majority of the water we're feeding them is directly out of the river, the rivers. We're putting in new pumps. We're pumping it over by our drinking water site and then pumping it north to them. Is that accurate?
We are. We're taking it from the Red River.
And, and we know that we have access to 30 million gallons a day, even, and on 95 percentile, there's 100 million gallons a day going by. We have access to almost, it's 39.4 million gallons a day, and we're going to feed them raw water out of the river.
That is correct.
Great.
One of the advantages we have in Grand, we've talked about this even at planning and zoning, we have a wider stream supply here in Grand Forks for water supply, and we have a wider river to discharge wastewater. So we really have a real advantage versus if you went down to the Southern Valley, both on water supply and discharge.
If I could just add some, you know, one point to that. And the Red River, and Mr. Bean can tell you, we're one year away from a drought to a flood. Things can certainly change drastically. Last year, at the peak, we were down to 102 million. That was a historic peak. If you look at the water that's flowing by today, it's 7% above average today in the Red River. That's 19,600 cubic feet a second. That is 12.67 billion gallons of water that's passing through here. So in the spring, and majority of the time, 95% of the time, 99% of the time, you've got billions of gallons that are passing through. Now, there's going to be chances, there could be opportunity of extreme drought, and I think we need to look at our policy over the next couple of years. And in those times of extreme drought, look at industrial, and how do we curtail, how do we make it more clear? I look through our policy, and it's not even clear to me today. So I think there's some things that could be done on that. But looking at the raw water supply, we're normally in the billions of gallons that are flowing through the city, not the millions. And what Sean Gaddy's showing you is the extreme drought conditions. And that can happen. That's happened in the 1930s, happened in the 1800s. We've been better with water at Devil's Lake, with Red Lake, with Red Lake as far as when they released it with Ashdabille. Those things weren't in place then. We've got opportunity to protect ourselves, and we're doing more. But in a normal situation, we've got more water than we, than certainly Fargo has, certainly anybody in the Red River Valley has because of the confluence of those rivers. Continue, Mr. Sandy.
Thank you. So, Mr. Phelan, how much money are the owners of Fu Fang? How much money is the company providing the city of Grand Forks for the upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant?
Council President Sandy, that's part of that escrow count, that $9.3 million upfront that we talked about. I, in one of my slides, added 12 million, but that was additional with fees, building fees and also tapping fees. But if you want to just look at that, it's about 9.3. It is an estimate at this point. Again, we don't have all the final details. So eventually, we'll have final details of what, this is what the raw water supply is going to cost, this is what the wastewater. And we will have to come back with a finalized version of that.
But it's, so it sounds as though, and you've already told us this, that we're going to be doing some upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant. Are we doing them because of Fu Fang?
Not, not phase one, two, and three. Those are all related to what we're already planning. That's at 45 to 50 million dollars that we were planning for. Again, fortunately, about, almost 40 million dollars worth of debt service has, has come off. And so it's time to renew the facility and expand and move on with, with renewed technology in that area.
I would agree. We know that, we know that the wastewater treatment plant is funded generationally. So every generation, we remodel, we refurb the wastewater treatment plant because, people that don't know, it takes a lot of wear and tear on machinery when you're treating wastewater. And so we need to do upgrades generationally, and therefore, we pay for them generationally. Sorry, Mr. Phelan, I'm working my way through, through my questions here. Regarding the annexation and making it contingent, I really appreciate the city attorney's explanation of why it would be very difficult to make it, if not impossible, to make it contingent. I'm wondering, I think the, the people that I've spoken to that are concerned about the infrastructure costs are concerned that the taxpayers of Grand Forks are going to get saddled with whatever special assessments get assessed to that property if something happens and they end up walking away at some point. Now, we all know, the council members, city administration staff, we know that special assessments are assessed to the property. And so if today, we assess 10 million to the property, and tomorrow, they decide to sell that property, we can even divvy it up, and every piece of property gets its portion of the special assessment. The problem, I guess in my mind, and if you can look for a problem in this, is what if they get started building, they've made a big mess of the property, we've annexed them, we've special assessed whatever it is, $20 million, they've put the land in a position where nobody can really go in and easily do anything with it, and then they file for bankruptcy, or they walk away from our community, and there's this chunk of land that has $20 million in special assessments on it, and nobody's paying the assessments, and nobody wants to buy it because the land isn't in any shape where it could be purchased. So I know we have a letter of credit that they've provided. I believe it's $5 million. My question is, does that $5 million letter of credit cover all of the special assessments that are going to go with the property? Mr. Gostad?
There was a calculation done. The $5 million was relating to both the fees and costs that are, that would be associated with the studies that were going to be done. And I believe there is a calculation done as well to arrive at this $5 million number to account for those special assessments. One thing I want to make sure that you're aware of is the letter of credit, and this was something that was put on pause because of the petition. And I got a draft. But the letter of credit then is intended to end at the time they become operational. And so the special assessments, which I think you're explaining is, it becomes a lien on the property, second only to general real estate taxes. They take priority over, I believe, over mortgages as well. So the letter of credit is $5 million. I, I don't have the exact calculation, but I believe that it was reviewed with respect to accounting for those special assessments and the, and the potential costs.
Would you like to go to public comment, Dana, before you ask the rest of your questions?
I was hoping that by going through my questions, we could answer the questions of the audience.
I don't think anyone cares about these questions you're asking right now. It's a little petition, sir.
All right, then let's talk about, why don't we shift gears and talk about the petition? No problem. Mr. Gostad, could you start from the beginning and explain to us what the process was for them to initiate the petition? All right, Mr. Mayor, if you want to go to public comment, it's fine.
Why don't we do, yeah, if you guys are okay, I think we should go to public comment. People have been waiting a long time. We can go through that. All right, we've got a lot of public comments. People have been waiting a long time. We're going to really try to stick to the three minutes. So whether you're positive or negative before the plant, we're going to try as hard as we can to stick to the three minutes. So we've got, I'm going to, I'm going to give the, the person who's up, the on deck, and the in the hall. So we got Dr. Barber, you're up. Robin Steve, I believe I'm saying that right, is on deck. And Dennis Cadillac, you're in the hall. So please. I'm using a baseball term.
Cool. I wish it was that French front. Okay. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I especially appreciate Mr. Sandy's comments about redundancies of, of projects that he brought up at the committee of the hall when he spoke about water treatment behind a housing development. Anyway, so I'm from Wheaton, Illinois. Went to Wheaton North High School, grew up there, great town, like Grand Forks very much. Lots of very nice religious people. Spent the best part of my life there. So I took great, I'm also a Rotary Scholar who represented the Chicago area for a year after graduation competitively chosen on my speaking ability. I guess I was entertaining. Anyway, so I took great offense when Mr. Chatterash decided to say that Fu Fang has a Chicago address, which it does not now, nor have, never has it had a Chicago address. Okay, that's lie number one. Big lie, big lie. I've never seen anything like the number of lies that I've seen on this whole petition. So I'll talk about the things that haven't been discussed. Well, I don't have much time. So I'll talk about the report I have in my hand, which you all have a copy of and have had a copy of since Friday, the lawyer and the finance director, Corporate Agribusiness and the Foulwing of America's Waterways. In it, on page 19, I suggest you all look it up, very, very interesting report, as is the Fu Fang annual report. So on page 19, it talks about the Cargill, Inc. Wet Corn Milling Wapatin Plant, which toxic discharge pounds are 73,154 per year. That's in Wapatin, which is an hour and 5:00 minutes drive from here. And I've been wondering now for five months why it is that our corn producers can't drive that distance to have their corn feed for animals processed in this very polluting plant. Question number one, which has never been addressed or answered, so perhaps one day it will be. Item number two, Red River of the North Health. This was done by Minnesota, not North Dakota. Very helpful report. On page seven of this eight-page report, it talks about the stretch of water from Wapatin to Pearlie. It is all totally polluted, as you may see on your camera. See all this red right here? That's the unusable part of the river, okay? Then, if you go up the river to some, on this map, between Buxton and Neelsville there in Minnesota, this little X here, that's Grand Forks, okay? So that's got red all the way up to Canada on both sides. That's aquatic life and aquatic consumption. In the middle is aquatic recreation. So we're just hanging on right now before we build this plant in aquatic recreation. Moving right along, let's talk about the other thing that's never been discussed in the last five months. And I only have a doctorate in biochemistry from Oxford University, for which I was funded by the Imperial Cancer Research Fund, so you know, I'm really not that bright. But maybe I can understand. This report that talks about toxic water across much of China, huge harvests irrigated with industrial and agricultural runoff. So why do you think China's really interested in our stuff, our water, our petroleum, our other natural resources? Because they're destroying their own. Why do you think they have so much money to spend on our land, which the state of North Dakota has barred them from buying for agricultural purposes? A little bit of it is zoned for industrial use, not all of it. This never should have been allowed to happen. So, but let's talk about this report where they talk about they feed their own. So, but let's talk about this report, where they talk about they feed their own people with water that has, this is, this is near Fu Fang's plant in the Shandong Province, it's really pretty, it's got garbage on both sides of this extremely polluted waterway. That's what they water their crops with and feed their people with. And if they do that to their own people, what do we really think they're going to do with us? I'm a landowner and I can do whatever I want with my property, and I apologize, I'm just going to make, no, that's really my last, that's really my last major point. And I think that's really enough. But, you know, I think we need to think about what hasn't been said for five months while we hear these repeated performances by these people who are allegedly going to give us an up-and-up plan. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
So, we got Robin Steve and then Dennis Cadillac, after that Steve Burian. So, please, am I saying that right? Is it, is his last name Steve?
You can say Stan, Steve, or Steve A. We got all three pronunciations in the same tone. Oh, I was just going to talk, and I learned a lot today from the presentations, you know, on, on the grain side. I've been in the grain business for 45 years, and obviously the basis is going to be better, so there shouldn't be any farmers or elevators that would be against this. Obviously, at 640,000 a storage, they're going to grind 500,000 a wheat. Winter happens, April, May happens when they're busy, they're going to need 100,000 bushels a day. One of the biggest things I thought, so I'm looking a little farther ahead, I kind of know where you guys are at, because 21 years ago I built the first shuttle loader in North Dakota, and everybody was against it. And now there's 30 of them, so if you just kind of put your head down and, and do what's right, if you do the research. But the biggest plus to me is the natural gas pipeline coming from the west, because I would look at this and say that, that gas line comes in here probably in two to five years after that, there should be a nitrogen facility up here. You know, there was talk about one in the 08 timeframe, but you don't have the feedstock, which is natural gas. So, you know, I, I'm very positive towards it. Will it change the way grain flows? Absolutely. But it isn't any different than how the shuttle loaders change the flow of grain, but everybody will figure it out, and, and I do live across the river from Hollston, Minnesota, I'm on the Hillsboro side, so I'm going to have to be careful on that fish eating out of the river.
Thank you, sir. All right, we got Dennis Cadillac up, Steve Burian on deck, and then Sheila Spicer in the hole.
Thanks for sitting there, because that's all you're going to do. You know, one of the steps up there specifies public hearing requirements, which you guys don't have, because you guys don't hear. You let a few people up here and you give them limited time to speak, but you do not give the opposition the proper time. You guys play your little puppet show up here, go on and on with the same story all over again, trying to paint black-white, and you wonder why it don't cover. You done the same thing with the Fu Fang deal to begin with. You never gave the opposition time to speak. You gave the other party all the time they wanted. Us, we got three minutes. And it's like with the petitions. These are we, the people. And these people signed the petition. Please stand up if you sign that petition, because you did not want Fu Fang in this town. We do not want Pottenger.
I signed it because I wanted a vote. Day or day. I want to raise the vote.
Fine, you got to raise the vote. But don't be turning around saying there's very few opposition to it, because the opposition is fantastic and you know it, because that's why you don't want to put it up for a vote. And you know, there again, it's very manipulative what was pulled off there, and you guys are very good at it. And that was a great puppet show, Sandy, you know? You go over the same material we went over before. I've been here, I've listened to it, you know? You probably act like you're really asking the serious questions. No, you don't ask the serious questions. I'll ask the serious question. How does that hand feel up your back? Now, how do the strings work? You know, my hand has a buff on it, so it's a puppet show.
Thank you, Mr. Cadillac. We got Mr. Burian, Sheila Spicer on deck, Todd Leek in the hole.
Mayor Botinsky, members of the council, my name is Steve Burian, 3969 Ivy Drive. I'm here as a private citizen in support of value-added agricultural production in Grand Forks, including the Fu Fang facility. I had the luxury to spend 25, 28 years in my previous position doing engineering consulting in Grand Forks, North Dakota. I also had 10 years serving on the Grand Forks Economic Development Board, including four years as its chair. If we go back to 1995, Grand Forks was in the process of doing master planning for its water facility down at the current site next to the, the, the bridge in southern downtown. All of a sudden, the drought of, the flood of 1997 hit, inundated all of our water supply, all of our water treatment, all of our water distribution, forcing the city to resurrect all of that and spend significant federal and local dollars to do so. It also, however, provided the city with an opportunity to master plan in a different direction, and I was the principal in charge and, and the project manager for all of that master planning. And when we did that master planning to look at the long-term vision of the city of Grand Forks' water facility, we were very intentional. We looked at a water, a water supply with redundancy, as I've been mentioning numerous times, between the Red Lake River, the Red River and Lake Ashtrabula, behind Bald Hill Dam. In doing that, it was sized for 25 MGD, but with very simple provisions to put another 25 MGD with just pumps at a very low cost. We looked at the new location for the water plant. Instead of leaving it downtown and making it flood susceptible, we intentionally moved it to the far western part of the, the city, where we could easily expand to the north and the south, but we easily also had the ability for those raw water transmission lines to provide industrial water all the way along throughout the course of the city. When we built the water distribu, the high-service pump and the, the clearwell out there, we sized that for 7 million gallons and 25 MGD. We made that easily expandable to another 7 million gallons and another 25 MGD capacity, and we're not having to use that in this case, because we're just looking at raw water. And lastly, with the treatment plant, we put all those provisions into place. And so as far back as 1998, the city was making very intentional plans to provide service to value-added agriculture, just like we're talking about tonight. Now it's time to execute. If you then look at it from an economic development perspective, the Keats Group has five major pillars that we've, we've followed for many years, including agricultural, value-added ag is one of our key tenants that we want to have in the city. We have the state mill and elevator taking care of the wheat in the Durham. We have a pasta plant taking care of the Durham. We have Simpot taking care of the potatoes. We have Pritha Sugar across the river handling the beets. But we knew we had lots of other crops out there that we could potentially take advantage, and we have an opportunity now to take care of the corn. What I think you need to look at, and I'll be done here, Mayor, in a few quick seconds, is that not only do we now have this opportunity, but we have the opportunity to do all the synergistic things that go along with this, and then I challenge you, we better look at the soybeans next, because most of the crops that we're planting here are a rotation of corn followed by soybeans followed by corn. That's the next things we need to look at. I, I think we've been looking at this for over two decades, and it's now time to execute. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burian. Ms. Spicer. Then it'd be, Mr. Leek would be on deck, then we got Smiley Thacker in the hole.
Hi, Sheila Spicer, Grand Forks. My only question, oh, my only question is, I was told that you met with Matt Pottinger in Washington, DC. I would like to see a written document by his analysis firm that you met with him, that you were okay with, that he was okay with his company coming in. You need to have documents. You need a security analysis check on all this, not just in the office talking to him. That's not acceptable to us. And I also want to know if you have your FBI meeting, can some of the community be involved so we hear the truth, not they have no concerns? That's all I'm asking, is that we get the truth, we get it in written documents, not you guys saying so. You need documentation. And that has been said by numerous people, you need to get written documents. So, Matt Pottinger, get him on paper, all right?
Thank you, Mrs. Spicer. All right, we got Mr. Leek, Smiley Thacker, and then Ms. Carlson.
Todd Leek, Fairfield Township, Grand Forks County. I'm here to give you an update on the forced, Uyghur Forced Labor Prevention Act. Mr. Brumbach here talked about that the world is watching. Yes, the world is watching, Congress is watching, and just to give a quick overview of, again, Congress in December passed the Uyghur Forced Labor Prevention Act, which will bar companies that are doing business in Xinjiang province from exporting their products to the United States, including their capital. What the Forced Labor, Forced, Uyghur Forced Labor Prevention Act does is that it provides the Commissioner of Customs and Border Protection with the ability to enforce that sanction. To investigate that, there's the Forced Labor, the Forced Labor Enforcement Task Force, and part of what their investigation is, is to look into the, into the accounting of these firms, and that's done through a board on the Treasury Department called the Public Company Accounting Oversight Board. They investigated Fu Fang's accountant, Price Waterhouse Coopers Hong Kong Limited. They're under a statute in the People's Republic of China under their, under their Department of Finance, they may not cooperate with foreign investigations. So, that makes it so that the Public Company Accounting Oversight Board cannot look into their labor costs, as opposed to all their other costs, to look and to see whether the forced labor is, forced labor is being done so they can earn themselves an exemption from the sanction that will be put on by the Commissioner of Customs and Border Protection. So, this is a transparency issue. They are not being transparent. Their accountants are under duress in China not to be transparent. I don't think that they're probably going to give you a more clear version of what their labor costs are to this board, to this council. But I would ask the council to abandon this project, to move away from this project and abandon it, if you don't get some more transparency from this company that they are not using forced labor. That will be determined, of course, by Customs and Border Protection. And President Sandy has made a pledge not to go forward if that exemption is not found to be, found there by Customs and Border Protection. But you're dealing with a company here in a country who do not want you to know that they are using forced labor and genocide in Xinjiang. This company's got, and Yurimki has a corn wet milling facility very much like what they want to build here. And I don't see how this council can do business with this company, knowing that, without investigating it, without putting a pause on this until what Customs and Border Protection comes up with. It's a moral, ethical situation, that's what Congress considered it, a human rights, moral, ethical situation, and they dealt with it, and so should you.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. Speaking for Smiley, okay, we got Joe, Mr. Kozart, you're going to speak for Mr. Thacker. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council President and the council members.
Just one second, we got Jody Carlson next, then we got Evan Montgomery in the hole. Please, continue.
I propose that our citizens should be forever grateful that our community leadership and the Fu Fang leadership, many in this room, have gone above and beyond to surprise and delight the citizens by accommodating this company that chose to enhance our community by setting up shop here in Grand Forks. This is a magical opportunity, it's not by any means a zero-sum game. This is an opportunity that's absolutely a win-win for all of us in this room and for the community. Working and living in multiple metro cities, both foreign and domestic, and I've actually lived in China, and I've witnessed some of the things, the problems that people have complained about China, and I've also witnessed some of the good things that are the reason Fu Fang is here. And I lived there for a year in 2011, and I just think we should all be proud that this partnership, again, many in this room, are the finest and most capable, accomplished I've ever had to live with to be around in all the metro cities in the United States that I've worked, and also throughout other countries around the world. That's why I chose personally Grand Forks, and you may take that lightly, but it was very serious to me. We have a terrific quality of life in this community, I know everybody agrees with that, and this partnership will provide major enhancements to the quality of our, and attract other similar opportunities that are going to enhance the quality of our life. To basically do some of the things that I think people have wanted to happen for a long time, and that is to retain our top talent that is graduating from the University of North Dakota, and to mentor them, and show, just like we have done with the art downtown with Bad Man's Lights that were proposed and authorized by this council that has greatly enhanced and will continue to enhance our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kozart. We're going to, yeah, one second, we got Evan Montgomery on deck, and Beth Waldeck will be on, in the hole. So, please, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak. The one thing that I, I do want to put into context, my earlier outburst regarding whether or not it was on the agenda, for those that were not here last week, that we, the council had a conversation for approximately 40 minutes to make a decision that we could not change the agenda. So, an agenda, the change of the agenda tonight to make it a presentation, I was quite surprised by that. So, I apologize for my outburst, but I was pretty upset by that, and I know that we're all tired. I do want to say to clarify, please, with Mr. Sandy, as far as the pilot agreement goes, what I'm looking at as far as the pilot agreement is that, in one pilot agreement here, and for those, pilot agreement has to do with the, the tax incentive, and what I'm looking for is third-party studies, is what I was looking into. I have one pilot here, agreement here from Block 5 that says the city pursuant to its policy for property tax incentives, okay, has had, has had a third-party review on that for the Block 5. This one, which is the Fu Fang, the pilot agreement, says the city pursuant to its policy for property tax incentives has had the project reviewed by its local government advisory committee. And so what I have been looking for is this policy that gives direction on what you do with pilots. And so when I see the differences with this, that's when it makes me kind of suspicious. I do want to say from the last meeting, thank you. I, I went back and listened to that last meeting, lots of great things going on in Grand Forks. I was very excited to hear about a lot of the great things. I don't think that Fu Fang is a good addition to that. Jeannie, keep your integrity. Sheri, thank you for the hard work that you helped me with and for putting up with my many visits to your office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. All right, we got Mr. Montgomery, and then Ms. Waldeck, and then Mr. Graduleski.
Mayor Botinsky, President Sandy, and members of the council. My name is Evan Montgomery, and I live outside of Grand Forks, North Dakota. I had a teacher one time tell me, when preparing for an essay test, to tell you, tell me what you know, so I will do that here. I'm a local farmer, and these are my, just a few of my thoughts. This region is a relatively young corn-producing area, because we didn't really have varieties suitable to this climate, told by the mid-'90s. As a result, we've had almost no end-user infrastructure developed in the area, in this area for corn. A corn plant would create an additional corn marketing opportunity for farmers and commercial elevators in the region. In the past, nearly every bushel of corn that I have sold has gotten put onto a rail car and shipped outside of this region. Most of those train cars wind up on the West Coast, being loaded in Panamax freighters and shipped to other countries. I was told the other day that North Dakota ships on average 120 million bushels of corn a year to mainland China, among other places. This plant will allow both farmers and commercial elevators to have another option for corn marketing, a local option that does not have to factor in the rising costs of rail transit marketing, a local option that does not have to factor in the rising costs of rail transatlantic boats. This alone will help the corn plant to offer an improved market bid for farmers and commercial elevators alike. Even having the opportunity to sell corn, even for me to have the opportunity to sell corn for an extra 10 cents a bushel, makes a huge difference on my farm. The American farmer is revered the world over for producing high-quality grain, and we are consistently increasing yields, and we are using cutting-edge technology to produce these record yields more efficiently. We will be here, producing, consistently growing this corn. Things like this wet corn mill plant are an opportunity for the city to capture and utilize this resource that we have watched sail away from our state year after year. Thank you for your consideration on this plant and this value-added agricultural thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. We've got Ms. Waldeck, then we've got Mr. Gradulesky, and Mr. Maticek.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, and President Sandy, and the rest of the council. I have some questions, and I guess they're directed mostly to you, but probably would be answered also by the Fu Feng representatives and things like that. One, if this is such an ideal location for a wet corn milling facility, why haven't we been approached by other companies? Okay, you know, they talked about how this is just the best place on the planet to do this kind of production, yet nobody's talked about it until Fu Feng decided to come here. The other question I had was, he talked about the breakdown of ownership within the company overseas, stating that the chairman owned like, you know, 39% or something like that. And then there was investors that owned 61%. I want to know where those other 61% of those investors, where are they from? 5% were from the EU. Where are the other 61% located? Right now, they supply about 2% of the fertilizing stuff that they make here to North America. What's going to guarantee that they're not going to export the majority of their stuff that they make here right back to China? How are we going to, how is America going to benefit from that? We've talked about, they talked a lot about how the jobs it's going to provide, et cetera. And we all know, if you spend 15 minutes in this town, you can't walk into a business right now without seeing a "help wanted" sign out. I understand they're not all corporate jobs, they're not all industry jobs, some of them are lower-wage-earning jobs, but everybody is undermanned and understaffed right now. Why do we think that that's going to be any different when this company comes to town and tries to hire people? They may be wanting just as bad as everybody else. Then you have a company that's here, getting all kinds of tax incentives, and they've got nobody to do the work. That's another big concern. The other comment I really guess I wanted to make in closing was, I had a chance to look at the sign that's behind you, City of Grand Forks, North Dakota, and what it says, "Liberty and Union, Now and Forever One and Inseparable." That's our state, or our city seal, our motto, if you will. And I don't see any liberty or union in any of this, because you're not allowing the people to have a vote. And that's all we want, is the right to vote. You put a simple question on a ballot that says, "Are you for it, or are you against it?", and let the people decide. You say it's going to benefit us, some say it's going to hurt us. Let us be the ones to make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got Mr. Gradulesky, then Mr. Frank Maticek, and then Michael Hooversen.
Good evening, guys. Thank you. First of all, again, thank you, everybody, for sticking around, because this has been really something else. Can everybody, again, raise your hand? Who signed in favor of a vote? Everyone raise your hand, please. That's a lot of unity, I think. That's a pretty good turnout. You don't often get very good turnout to these meetings, from what I understand. I think that's a real good turnout, and I think that's a real good sample size of what's happening. A lot of things were talked about this evening, a couple of things that I found really interesting. You know, going back to the bridge, Mr. Sandy commented that he would like to rent out the empire and fill it up, overflow the empire, so we can get all sorts of public comment. Great, we want to hear what the public has to say. Awesome, that's a great idea. And then there were two other issues where we talked about being really concerned about the developers, downtown parking, the stuff going on on the south side of town. We're really concerned about these people. But yet, again, as has been stated over and over, you have all of these people in the room who are voicing our concerns, and we're not being heard. It doesn't make any sense. Could somebody please explain to me why the people in the bridge project have more consideration than us, when we put in the work, and nobody has yet on the bridge project? Could somebody explain that? I think there's another issue when it comes to the bridge. You seem to be very upset, Mr. Sandy, with the East Grand Forks mayor, there's no compromise, and he's not working with you. How do you think we feel? That's a little bit of your own medicine. And lastly, when you asked Mr. Lund for an answer on the third-party study question, if anybody was listening real close out here, what I gleaned from that is, we only do third-party studies if we feel we don't necessarily want the business. If we really want the business, we'll just give them the money. That was basically the answer given. So, thank you.
Thank you. We've got Mr. Maticek, then a Mr. Hooversen, and Mr. Coachman.
If you want me to wait, I will. What I want to talk about is a PUD that was brought up at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've seen a lot of PUDs come through, and they usually are Mr. Brooks and Mr. Grasser. They want details, they want rules in what, how the PUD is going to work. This PUD comes through at 370 acres, and here's what we said. Okay, we're going to allow the entire PUD to be used as a wet milling corn facility, bio-fermentation process, and associated uses. Now, associated uses, what are they? Why can't anybody ever tell me what you want to do with the rest of the property? Now we've decided this PUD, that this plant's going to be right there in the middle, and everything's around it. What's around it? All the other PUDs I've ever said, if you want to keep your PUD, you do what's in it, right? This is telling you there's nothing in it, so you can do what you want. Then we go on here, and it says, "Storage of hazardous and non-hazardous materials should be in accordance with the Uniform Fire Code." Okay, exceptions are. And then you turn to the back, we have exceptions, which I've never seen on a PUD before, but exceptions are, "This area will not conform with the standard building height requirements pursuant to the City of Grand Forks Land Development Code. Maximum building height in this area will be 150 feet. Cooling towers may have a height 100% higher than that." So that means these cooling towers they have could be 300 feet, right? I mean, I don't, this is what's in here. But here's the other exception that I thought was really interesting. "This area is used for the treatment of wastewater and will not require a conditional use permit as stated in the section number of the City of Grand Forks Land Development Code." So why, if they're supposed to get a conditional use permit for wastewater, how come are we giving these guys an exemption? Conditional use permit means you've got to live up to the standards. If you don't, you're going to get fined, or you're going to be out of business. This tells me you're giving them a carte blanche to do whatever they want with the wastewater. You should reinstall the conditional use permit on that PUD. I've never seen one so plain. And I'm sure Mr. Sandy, Mr. Veen, Mrs. Mock, you've been on planning and zoning with me, you've seen tons and tons of PUDs. Have you ever seen one, Miss Blatant? I haven't. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, we've got a Mr. Hooversen, Michael Hooversen, then Coachman, and I don't know if I'm saying this right, Matthew Piccolo.
Mayor Bochensky and President Sandy, council, thanks for letting me speak. I'm a farmer from Laramore, North Dakota, lives in our village township. I just wanted to come here and voice my support for the Fu Feng plant. I think it's a wonderful, exciting opportunity for the area of Grand Forks, eastern North Dakota, northwest Minnesota. Exciting for small businesses, and new, new, new small businesses coming in to support the plant, just like Simplot, and Megan Crystal, and the State Mill, all that support that those businesses support them. I think it's just a wonderful opportunity. I hope that this plant is able to be built here, be a great asset to the community for many, many years, I believe. As far as for farmers, I believe that the basis will be in, will be in our favor quite a bit. I think we can look at other, like I stated earlier, that, like in Castle Town, they have a better basis, and the State Mill has a better basis compared to other areas west of here, or out of those two areas. It's exciting, this is an exciting opportunity for farmers, and I just wanted to come here and state my support, and I hope that you do also. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Coachman, we've got a Mr. Piccolo, and then a Mr. Holf, Mr. Jonathan Holf.
Hello, everybody. My name is Michael Coachman. Could you give us two council members? Appreciate it. May I have a question for you? Just to clarify, on the petition, there was 5,311 signatures on it, correct?
The number that was verified, the starting number was 5311, the verified amount was 4797.
Say that again?
4,797.
And what is required for this to pass? Was it?
I didn't understand your question, I'm sorry.
Was there a certain number that they needed?
Oh, 3,617.
So they had the required number of signatures?
Yeah, the recommendation, the decision, wasn't based on the number of verified signatures.
Okay, so there was enough. In this book is the Constitution, because that's the key. On page five, if you turn to it real quick, first three letters, "We the people," that is the key. It's based on "we the people." And if you turn to page 17, for the First Amendment, and you go down, that's already highlighted, if everybody run a book, I believe Craig had a couple of books, if you would like one, he'll give you one. On the very bottom that is highlighted, says "The right to the people, peaceful assuming, and to petition the government for a redress of grievance." So that is the US, but in the North Dakota, which is this other piece of paper, in such a land, in the North Dakota Constitution, "All individuals are by nature equally free and independent, have certain inalienable rights, among which are those." And at the end, it says "other lawful purposes, and they shall not be infringed." Section two, "All political power is inherent in the people." Again, "we the people." Section four, "Every man may freely write, speak, publish his opinion on all subject, being responsible for abuse of that privilege." Which is key. Section five, "The citizens have a right in a peaceful manner to assemble together for the common good to apply those invested with the power of government for the redress of grievance or any other proposed purpose, for petitions, address of remote threats." Basically, the people have the right, even if they wanted to get on a yellow piece of paper and write down, says, "We have a problem with our government," something like the Declaration of Independence, something like that, and say, "Look, this is what we're going to do. This is what we do not like about your government." So we have the signatures, so whatever you're saying, "Hey, look, these are the reasons why you have to kick it out," you're saying the Constitution, and the North Dakota Constitution is not valid. The people have spoken, they want to hear a vote, they want to take it to a vote, and you're denying "we the people." You're denying the Constitution, you're denying the North Dakota Constitution. One thing I know is, more people are watching this, not just in North Dakota, we're talking from east coast to west coast, to see what you're doing. Your decision to say, "Hey, look, we're not going to give you a vote," is saying, "We don't support the Constitution." So what do you support? Either communism or freedom. That's what you're leaving with the people. Are you going to let the people vote, or not? One question before I go, the FBI meeting, I would love to sit on that meeting, okay? If it's okay. As far as the clearance, I've got a top-secret PSYOP clearance, I had one in the military. We have no problem sitting down and listening what the FBI have to say to the group.
Thank you, Mr. Coachman.
Thank you.
Am I saying that right, Mr. Piccolo?
Piccolo, yes.
Okay, and then after that, we will go to Mr. Holf, and then Mr. Spicer.
So thank you very much, Mayor Bochensky, and the council. So I've lived in Grand Forks now for 20 years. I came from the east coast, where we had Dupont Chemical, that released lots of nice things in the air, and in the ground, and in the water. We could smell them all the time. So I'm here in Grand Forks, I raised my family. Now, I understand, and am sympathetic to the plight of the farmers. This is not an easy time. I get it. Okay? I get that an extra 10 cents makes or breaks you. But I'll also say that many of the folks here, you don't live here in this county, you don't live in this town. Do you want the, do you want the?
Excuse me, sir, can you just?
Do you want the plant? Then, in your town. You want that, have it in your town. But I'll also say that we put our names on to a petition, and we're saying, "Hear our voice." So that's what I'm asking, "Hear our voice." Do not have the Kabuki Theater that you just had here. That basically insults our intelligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolo. We've got Mr. Holf, and we've got Mr. Spicer, then Mr. Chris Byrd.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky, President Sandy, members of the council, Jonathan Holf, 58, 37, Pinehurst Court. I'm a lifelong resident of Grand Forks, have been a small-business owner here for the past 16 years. I'm also the chair of the Board of Directors for the EDC. I've had the good fortune of serving on a number of boards locally, working on a number of initiatives across the community. I want to start off by saying that I've always been an advocate for more community involvement, more healthy dialogue surrounding issues in our community. I hope that regardless of the results of this particular project, that many of you have been, that have been engaged, will stay involved in Grand Forks. I'm here to speak in favor of the Fu Feng project. I have many friends that are not in favor of it, and that's okay. Some of them are here in the audience today. I hope that we're still friends after they hear me speak. People can disagree on topics and still have healthy dialogue. I'm not going to rehash or bring up any previously discussed talking points here tonight. I did want to make a few comments about momentum, and who we want to be as a community, and how this project might tie into that. I believe we're at an inflection point with this project. And I'm not just talking about the business community, I'm talking about the whole community. And honestly, I'm worried about the future of Grand Forks if we say no to an opportunity like this. Opportunities like this don't come around very often. The school board meeting that was referenced earlier, I was at that meeting when they voted unanimously for this, and a couple of school board members called this a once-in-a-generation opportunity. Mr. Brumbach highlighted some of the economic impacts that frankly are staggering, what they can do for this community. And I want to be clear, that this isn't me saying we should just rubber-stamp everything and move forward. It's not me saying that. The due diligence piece is important, and valid concerns should be addressed. But this is me saying that I think we need to be a community that works together to get to yes. We haven't always been that way. We haven't always embraced opportunities or change. But we have some really good momentum right now. Momentum towards some exciting things that could happen, that could positively impact our quality of life. There are things like museums, and an exciting new indoor turf courts and aquatics facility that are being proposed for this community. There's no secret to anybody that lives here that we need some help with our school facilities. If we want these things, we need more people and more families to move here and call Grand Forks home. Museums, sports facilities, they happen when we have more people living here, paying taxes, using the facilities. Retail stores are more successful and don't close when we have more people living here. Malls fill up when we get people to move here. So I'm here just to ask you to think about who we want to be as a community, because if we say no to this, I think we just need to be prepared for what that means for us long-term. long-term, in terms of opportunities. About 10 years from now is about the time that I'll likely be trying to convince my kids that they should make the same choice that my wife and I did, which is the choice to call Grand Forks home. I hope that I can point to awesome facilities, like a sports facility and a museum, great schools, and a host of other things that we've added as a result of growth. And I fear that if we say no to this, that I won't have that opportunity. We need more high-paying jobs that attract families to move here, if we want to grow and add important quality of life amenities. Let's find a way to work together to get to yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holf. We got Mr. Byrd, Chris Byrd. All right, seeing no Mr. Byrd, our last speaker tonight is, we got Mr. Anken, John Anken.
Good evening, Mayor.
Sorry, I missed one. But, go ahead, sir, we got one more. I didn't mean to miss you, Craig, where was you at? Go ahead. You're second to last, son, please. Continue.
Good evening, Mayor, and President Sandy, and the council, and along with everybody here tonight. I'm a local business owner, I'm also a regional business owner. I'm the CEO of True North Equipment. I employ over 230 people within this region, and I wanted to take the opportunity in that to talk about two specific things, innovation and partnership. And if you look at the seal, and we referred to the city seal earlier, but it's really founded in agriculture, when we think about ag, and what has happened in our region. We are one of the most innovative regions in the country with the most diverse capability in food production, and we work on a global market. We work on a global food supply chain. I, as a John Deere dealer, supply them with the innovation and the technology, along with other companies, to make them one of the most innovative groups in the United States and in the world. I'm also the Vice Chair on the EDC, I've been involved with other organizations, such as the Chamber Chair for the Grand Forks Chamber and other entities. I've had the distinct honor to work with the city, with the EDC, with everybody to talk about partnership, and work with the due diligence that it took to work with the Foo-Fang group and their team. And I hold them in high regard, because I've been able to work with them multiple times in that process. I know the chairman personally, and one thing I just want to share with you, he was a farmer like many. He started as a farmer. And he was able to drive one of my new tractors out at our Impact Center, and that was the first time he's driven a tractor since he retired from farming, and took on his new career path in his company that he has. I believe in the strength of looking at people and understanding what they're made of, and the team that they make up within their group. And this has been a really rewarding piece. I want to assure you that I wouldn't be in this space if I didn't believe in what they do, and we as a community have to always be on the leading edge of innovation and partnership in order to look at the next step that we have. I lead, I don't follow. I think we as a community have to lead. If we follow, we tend to get into the wrong position as a community. We have a distinct opportunity right now to accelerate from our fruit production side of everything that's been commented on, to add another element to the space that allows us a maximum return for the dollars that are put in, the ground, or the crop put in the ground and retrieved out for our world food supply. And I think that, as we look at the future, this is a distinct opportunity for innovation around new jobs, succession planning for families that come here, that have opportunities in the future, for our producer base that has succession plans that creates opportunities for them, because if they don't have the opportunity, farms will end and different things happen. So I think, looking forward, this is gonna be a great addition to our community, and I fully support it, and I ask for your partnership in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anken. Mr. Spicer, please.
Hi, everybody, council members. I'd like to start off by proceeding through the fact that there's a real lack of trust with the city council, that they can put on themselves, because of the way they handled this from the beginning. I think we would all feel better if this would have been a little bit more forthright from the beginning, that we could actually talk to you and listen to some of your comments, if there were any, and make a decision that way. But to be put on hold with everything we ask is an insult to the citizens of this town. I believe that we are setting ourselves up for a collection of toxic plants. We're dealing with the Foo-Fang plant right now, we have the Red River Bio Plant that's failed miserably on some of their behalf people that said there would be no problems. Just like we have heard tonight, that there would be no problems, everything is covered. I believe that's more misinformation, too. I also believe that down the line, with the way this plant has been set up, and the annexation that's coming through, we are setting ourselves up for a city that will be more toxic, and more smelly, and more polluted than probably any city in the state. So that leads me back to location. And through all of this, the location comes down on me harder than it does anybody else. So, I have the bigger stake in it than, per se, the farmer that's gonna collect so much money, the lawn sellers who are gonna collect a great amount of money, the people who will be first in line to collect on the industrial side of building the plant and all of that. And I'm not against growth, but I am against growth at what cost. And I believe this is too big a cost to pay for our city. The next thing I would like to say is, I would like to address Mr. Chudoff. Chudoff, I'm sorry. Could you give me your opinion, please, on what you would think if it went to a citywide vote?
Mr. Spicer, you gotta address the council, I'm sorry. Please address the council.
Could somebody from the council address him, and ask him what he would think, what he would think of the citywide vote? He's had all kinds of compliments, and all kinds of... All kinds of statements that he is an upstanding and very well-rounded person from this company. So, could you ask him to give us his opinion, being he's involved in this very thoroughly, on what he would think of a citywide vote, and give us a straight answer, please?
I think the council's gonna talk about it right after this, so...
You want them to answer?
You're addressing the council right now, Mr. Spicer.
I'm addressing you to ask him.
Yes, well, we will ask as part of this. You're in the public comment period, we're gonna talk about it right after this.
Okay, I was gonna give the same question to you to ask...
In front of everybody.
Kevin's uncle, I don't know his name, but I would give that question to him, and he could interpret for us. Could we get an answer from him?
Sorry, who, Kevin's uncle?
Kevin's, the CEO, I believe, is Kevin's uncle, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not aware of that relationship.
Kevin knows who I'm talking about. Would you stand up, Kevin?
Stand up.
Mr. Spicer, please, address the city council.
I'm just asking them a question, how they feel about such a topic that concerns them and us. It's just first light to know from them. What's wrong with that question?
Mr. Spicer, we're about to talk about that. If the council wishes, they can.
We're back to the same thing, why we don't trust you, because you don't give us a fair answer, or an objective answer about any of this. So, the other question I have is, do you believe that Mr. Gosted's opinion was one of indifference, or one-sidedness, or was incorrect, or it was independent enough for us to believe what he came up with?
Thank you, Mr. Spicer. All right, so we've got, obviously, we've got four items here that we need to take action on, but now, I guess, want to open up the council, they did want to opine or have a conversation on the petition and next steps, and their wishes, so I'll open that up now, whoever wants to speak. Vice President Mock, please.
I guess, my biggest concern is that we make decisions, and we don't always make popular decisions. This is one where we've seen organized effort to say that we made the wrong decision. And I guess I didn't, I was recused, so I want to acknowledge that. But as a council, we're being told that the decision that was made is not what the public wants. My concern is that, you know, there are rules governing the petition, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not gonna go into any of those details. The petition was found to not be valid. I think that now the question is, with calls for putting something to a vote to the people, that we need to discuss it, and see if there's a willingness of this council to put something towards a vote. My main concern being that, many times, when you make a decision, in this position, you're making what you believe to be the best decision at that time. It can change. I think any one of us doesn't always agree with our past decisions, if we went back and looked at them with a very critical eye. But in this case, it seems like the community is so split, the people who want this project are talking to the people who want this project, and the people who don't want it are talking to the people who don't want it. And I'm concerned with how we, as a city, show and maintain any level of credibility with the public. So I think we need to at least discuss it, and maybe just let the votes fall where they may. I might be the only one who thinks that, and that's okay. I'm okay with that. But if we take it off the table, we at least answer the question, so that everybody knows.
Mr. Veen?
Yeah, I would like to follow up with that. I'm not a big fan of taking issues typically to the public to vote. I think we have a responsibility as elected people in the city council, to be able to do our job representing the people. On the same token, we have a process that's defined, that allows people to challenge the decisions that we have made, it can bring something forward. I think 4,797 people signed the petition legitimately, which is, I think, roughly about 20% of the people that voted in the last election, that's a fairly significant And so, I also feel like, Smack, I can't ignore those people. I will say, the more I hear, and the more I learn, the more I feel comfortable with it. I think there's facts that need to come out, though. And if we do talk about a vote, I don't think you just talk about having a vote, but when to have that vote. The vote needs to be, from my point of view, based on some of the facts that we are still developing and assembling, and that, once we have that, I feel confident that the people will vote in the right way. But, again, I think, as Ms. Smack, I think the discussion, we should have more discussion about that, and then determine more of the specifics.
President Sandy?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? So, we spoke a little bit last week about the process. I started asking, comment about, or question about the process of how we got to where we are today, before I was interrupted. Mr. Gosted, could you explain the process the petitioners used to gather their signatures, and what legal implications, and what legal, you know, what legal articles were they following when they were working to gather the signatures?
Yeah, they were under, trying to find the, yeah, it's Article IV of our Home Rule Charter. It was a referendum of an ordinance or resolution that they utilized. The petition was submitted, I believe it was March 23rd.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gosted, how do you know they used Article IV of our Home Rule Charter?
It's the only provision that allows for a referendum of an action by a city. There is, excuse, there is, sorry.
So perhaps, they didn't know they were using Article IV when they started gathering their petitions, but either way, that's the only article that gives them the avenue to put something to a vote, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Please, go on.
And that came in, the petition package came in, I believe it was March 23rd. And during that period of time, there was a 20-day period of time to determine the sufficiency of what was submitted. I prepared a lengthy memorandum to the city auditor's office, because the city auditor, under our Home Rule Charter, is the decision-maker as to the sufficiency of it. There were a number of items...
Mr. Gosted, I'm sorry, is that, do you know why the city auditor would be the deciding person rather than the council or the mayor?
That's what's set forth in the Home Rule Charter, and the Home Rule Charter was put to a vote of the citizens, and so they decided that it was the, that was what was proposed as part of the Home Rule Charter, and that was what was adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Gosted. Please, go on. I'm sorry to keep interrupting.
No, okay, and so, the decision for the, my memorandum was provided to Ms. Storsted for her consideration. She then issued her a certificate of insufficiency that laid out the various items. The primary, their first one was the distinction between legislative and administrative matters. That's a significant distinction, because, you know, this is a universal rule that's applied, I mean, we did a tremendous amount of research on that particular issue.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gosted, so ultimately, you provided a summary to the city auditor, the director, finance director, that said, "Here are the reasons why we believe that this petition is insufficient," correct?
Correct.
And then, based upon that, our city auditor made the final, because legally she has to, she made the final decision that, because it didn't meet those criteria, it wasn't a sufficient petition, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we've established that they've, the petitioners invoked our Home Rule Charter, the laws of the City of Grand Forks, when they submitted the petition, correct?
Correct.
And so, because they've enlisted the laws of the City of Grand Forks, we, as the governing body, are required to follow the laws of the City of Grand Forks, correct?
That's an accurate statement.
Okay, so, what do the laws of the City of Grand Forks say about something like this?
Well, they say that the auditor is to determine the sufficiency of what was presented. And our analysis was, there were five various areas that would demonstrate that this was not a sufficient petition. And it's a fairly lengthy email, that, or, excuse me, memorandum. I can go through each of them, I don't think anybody wants to, it's been out there for quite some time. And Ms. Storsted reviewed that, as I understand, and concurred with the recommendations that were made.
And so, what recourse do the petitioners have, based upon that decision?
They had seven days to try to cure, or, excuse me, correct or amend, as set forth in the Home Rule Charter. As of this time, nothing has been submitted by the committee for the petitioners.
May I ask a question?
No, please. Okay, so, they were given opportunity, legal opportunity, based upon what's in our Home Rule Charter, to provide a response. Whether they wanted to do it themselves, or hire an attorney to do it, or you name it, they could have attempted to correct, which, of course, we know based upon your findings, that they, because what you determined as an administrative action can't be referred, we knew that they were not going to be able to come back to us with some sort of a resolution, correct?
That'd be a fair statement. Legally, there's impediments that were, they couldn't overcome.
Right. Right. So there were impediments that couldn't be overcome. We are where we are. We're here today. So we, there are, I suppose, certain things that we can do today. We can move about our merry business, take action on the four items that are here, and, and so be it. We could have, Ms. Smack, others could suggest that we put this to a vote. If we vote to put something to a vote, I don't know what question we would ask, but let's assume we, we decided we wanted to put something to a vote. What are the consequences of doing that, under our city law?
Well, I think it, it opens the, the, it opens the, the door to referring, because what, what the matter is, is what was approved were a development agreement and task order agreements. That's what the motion was that, back in February. That's what was approved. And so the, the city runs the risk of every contract that it enters into, waste management, licenses, permits, any type of agreement that the city would enter into. If there's enough people that are upset about the particular contract, it becomes referable. And that's the analysis that, that the North Dakota Attorney General has said, is that's why these matters are not referable, because it would, and I will quote from the North Dakota Attorney General's opinion, would place municipal government in a straitjacket and make it impossible for any city officers to carry on public business. So you, you would effectively have to enter into a contract and wait for that 30-day period of referral to expire before you could even start executing under the terms of the contract that was agreed upon.
How about the pilot agreement?
This is the public's business. That's what we're doing.
So I, you've provided your legal interpretation. I-
How about another lawyer?
We, I think the, you know, myself, I think the, you know, Mr. Holt mentioned this. I think the long-term ramifications of referring this, or anything like this, to a vote is going to be incredibly detrimental to our city and the long-term. I think that our ability to recruit future employers to the community will be considerably damaged. I think unfortunately, sometimes seizing great opportunities takes great resolve and sometimes at considerable personal cost. I think this has probably cost me personally more than anything I've ever had to endure in my life. Being called a communist, being called corrupt, being told that I don't care about our community. I find it really hard to understand why people that don't live in our community, who spout a narrative that people want to believe, are given credibility when they don't even live here.
That's what Foo Fung's doing.
When they don't know who are-
Same thing Foo Fung's doing.
They don't know who are, who we are or what we do. So I think, excuse me-
Quiet, please.
Everybody, we're welcome to, we're welcome, if somebody wants to take a vote on this, we're welcome to, but I don't believe, for the good of our community and based upon the legal opinion of our city attorney, that we should put any sort of a question to a vote.
We don't trust you.
And if that did, and if that means that I get recalled or somebody runs against me and I lose, there you go.
Yeah, but that is true. Yeah.
Excuse me. Excuse me, we need quiet.
We have further comment from council this time. Mr. Weigle?
I'll be brief, Mayor. I haven't said much during this whole entire thing, and, and I've often thought about the importance of an election. Give people an opportunity to decide. I think it's important, but I also ask myself, where do we draw the line? Where is the line? And I've asked people that, that have called me on the phone, and I ask them, where's the line? Mr. Spicer owns a company, a company that serves a vital role in our community. But if I don't like something about Mr. Spicer's company, can I go get 4,000 signatures and have him kicked out of Grand Forks County? That, that is my concern. Where is that line? And, and nobody can tell me where that line is. Is it a line where if it's over a million dollars, then we, then we can vote on it?
It's whatever the government does.
Who do you represent? Spicer's established here. You're the-
Please, excuse me. Excuse me.
I often think about my son in school when I come to these meetings. If my son was sitting here yelling at his teacher, yelling at, for no reason whatsoever, screaming in the crowd, what would I say as a parent? I'd tell him to have a little respect, right? Wait your turn, come in and talk. But now I understand what, where some kids get it. They watch discourse like this, where people can't have an adult conversation, and this is what we get. It's ridiculous.
We are peers, not teachers.
That's fine.
You forget who you work for. That's the bottom line.
We're not the teacher, we're not the student.
Yeah. I work for the citizens in Ward 1. How many from Ward 1 are in here?
About 5,300.
How many from Ward 1 are in this room?
How many of you help ward meeting?
How, I, I've asked the question. If you are from Ward 1, will you please raise your hand?
Who what?
Who's from Ward 1?
Difference does it make?
They're the ones that elected me. You talk about who elected me. The citizens in Ward 1 elected me. Not one hand has gone up. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Weber, I see all, any comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the ongoing tensions, anytime we try to do something bold, is there's a tension between, have we done our homework? Do we have all of the answers yet? And we, we often can't have all of the answers until we engage and agree to go out and seek those answers. There's, seems to be a sense that the council has already approved the Foo Fung Plan. We have not. We have approved a program, a development agreement, so that we can go out and gather the answers to make informed decisions, the due diligence that we're charged with, with doing. If we were to put it to a vote at this time, if there had been a legally followed process to put something on the ballot, I'm not sure what that question would be exactly, because we still do not have all of the answers. So I have always supported as, as much electoral opportunity in our community as possible, and I would support it here again if we followed legal process. But even now, I'm not sure what it is that we would put on the ballot until we have the answers to the 20 points outlined in the development agreement. Once we have those answers, and if there is a legally followed process for bringing something to the, to a ballot, then I absolutely would be in favor of that. In the meantime, I think it's time to move forward, and I will move approval, if, if it's okay to do so, I'll move approval of all four of the items before us at this time.
You want to read those, you need to read those items in?
First item, 4.13, introduction of ordinance, preliminary approval of a plat of PNE first three subdivision located at 3,527th Avenue North. Second item, 4.14, approval of vacation of North 32nd Street from 30th Avenue North to 33rd Avenue North. 4.15, introduction of ordinance and preliminary approval of request to amend the zoning map to include PNE PUD located at 527th Avenue North. And finally, 4.16, approval of resolution relating to Highway 81 North Annexation generally located between 27th Avenue North and 40th Avenue North, and the Glaston River tracks and the existing businesses on North Washington Street and Mill Road Falconer Trenches.
So we do have a motion approved. We can have further comment, but I'd like to have a second before we have further comment, follow the order. You have a second to prove those items?
A second.
A second from Mr. Travami. All right, open up to further comment.
Just, please, yeah, so one question. So in referring to our Home Rule Charter, do we have a mechanism as a city council to just put things on the ballot? I'm just curious, as the city charter states.
There is a, a provision that talks about the, the city council can ask for an advisory vote before an ordinance is adopted. However, there are, in, in, there's North Dakota Attorney General's opinions that reflect that the city council could vote to put anything it wanted on, onto an election, or, for a
Could the city council then put an administrative item, even if it's not a legislative item?
It could, but then that, that's my point, is then it opens up to any type of contract, permit, license, then gets subjected to the same type of referral mechanism. And I, and at that point, I think the city council would be, the city would have a tough argument to make that you allowed this administrative decision to go forward to a vote.
So why not?
Why not? Everything else becomes fair game for a advisory vote.
No further, no further questions. All right. Let's go, Mr., I think Mr. Veen was first. Mr. Veen, please, and then, then President Sandy after.
I, I'm a little disappointed in that we're trying to vote on all four at the same time. I do think we should vote on them individually. I have questions on individual ones, and so I really have no choice but vote against it because I'm not having my questions answered. So, so that, that's my question, my concern.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, Mr. Weber, do you want to split, are you okay with splitting the items up so we can go individually and start with item 4.13?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Cravamie has a second? Okay. So would you want to initiate the item 413 as a motion?
I'll move approval of 413.
We got a second, okay. Open up for comment on item 413.
That's the plat, right?
That's correct.
And that also, is that associated with the vacation also?
That, that's the next item.
But the vacation, I guess I was looking at the right-of-way of 33rd Avenue and, and how that impacts the vacation that's, that's being proposed?
I'm sorry, of 33rd?
Yes. It's, it, 33rd goes from Gateway, not Gateway Drive, North Washington West, right?
Correct.
And then it stops.
Yep.
And then the vacation goes south from there, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So normally, when we have, we, we've created a dead-end road. And there's no intention to have a cul-de-sac or any type of turnaround there, because that's a public right-of-way, the dead ends.
That, that's going to be an entrance into the site. So that's why we didn't ask for the bulb, I think, is perhaps where you were going. We were gonna, that was going to be an entrance into the site and, and emergency exit.
So do we have a copy of the, of the site plan or anything like that?
Not before, I didn't put it as one of the attachments, but that, that's been the discussion. We don't have our finalized site plan as of yet.
Okay. Well, sometime between now and when we look at it again, can we see that?
This will be back before you next month.
Okay. So that's why I was associating those two together, because I think there's a link there between the two?
I understand, yeah. I'll have a better answer for you next month then on that, how that would work.
So that's all I had the question on.
Okay. Any further questions on item 4.13? Mr. Sandy, please.
Mr. Mayor, I still have, for, because I know that there are people that are interested in having questions answered, I still have a dozen questions I'd like, so we can do them now, or I can wait till some other item, whatever council members would prefer. If I, you'd oblige me.
Yeah, I think, I think if your, if your, your items are related to how your vote's going to play out, then you feel free to express it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Mr. Gaddy talked about the studies that are going on related to the ponding, the, as part of the environmental impact study that's going on, what sort of information should we expect to get related to air pollution, smell pollution, that sort of thing?
Mayor Potenski and, excuse me, City Council President Sandy, we're going to come back with a study on the pre-treatment system that will identify any of the odor-producing possibilities. We'll look at redundancies, so if one thing goes down, what will happen? We could, we'll come back to with the, the pre-treatment system, identify the areas that are odor-producing and suggest how we're planning to mitigate it. So if we could, instead of just blocking out, make a motion that, as part of the pre-treatment system, that there, and as part of the development agreement, there'll be no odor-producing mechanisms as part of the pre-treatment system. And so that will allow us to work through our, our development agreement, identify it as part of the planning and zoning, I think what their intent was. And then we'll have to come back to the city council as part of that final development agreement, all the studies we're going to do, and say, here's the pre-treatment system. We looked at all the odor-related things. We look at the location. And we'll have to verify back to you that it does not, it does meet the criteria that you passed as part of the planning and zoning items.
Great. Thank you. So that's part of the study that's in works. We won't know until we get the information back.
I'm just a little worried about narrowing our options while we're still studying it, and so, but if you put that language in there as part of the pre-treatment system, and said, thou shall not have any uncovered areas, that it should be built in a way, designed in a way, that will not produce odors beyond any industrial, beyond the property lines, those sorts of things. We can work within those limits.
Yeah, and I'm kind of following up on that, because it looked like we had political engineering going on.
Yeah.
And I would like to have a technical in nature so that we could actually have, and I think in this case, it's a third-party consultant who's trying to give us the advice on that. It's not, it's not Foo Fung that's doing this. It's a third party.
It's not the City of Grand Forks.
So I was talking to Mr. Brooks. I'm, whatever that item in on planning and zoning, I'm asking you not, whatever, and it was, it was a good recommendation, however, I think we need to widen it because we're in the midst of the state. Let's not narrow it so much at this point in time.
That'd be item 415, the, the zoning piece.
Thank you. And I'm sorry it's late, but I think it's important that we, that we keep plugging through this. So as Terry Bierke used to say, I'll be here all night if I have to. So it was, that was a long time ago. That was 10 years ago, as a matter of fact. The, Mr. Cadillac, a few meetings back, asked the question if we all knew what the meaning of Foo Fung is. And at the time, I had been told several things, but I actually did some digging. Foo Fung is widely known as the gourmet powder factory in China. And so I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's related to, many of the materials that you're producing are in powder form and are shipped out of, out of the factory. Is that, is that a fact? Eric, can you, can you comment on that?
Yeah, but you gotta come up here.
I mean, we've been, we've been talking about all the trucks that are coming and going, and all the trains that are coming and going. We actually haven't talked about, at all about what you're actually shipping out. Can you tell us a little bit about it?
Sir, first, I want to start with the meaning of Foo Fung itself. This word means abundance in Chinese. That's the expectation of the chairman when he built this company. He want to, you know, bring prosperity to the community. He want to product, produce a lot of, because he's, as we said, he's, he's so into agriculture, because he grew up as a, as a farmer. So that's, that's what he's, he has been doing for his whole life. So Foo Fung means abundance. So what is, what is the other question?
Can you tell, the, the amino acids and the other things that you're producing, are they wet goods or are they dry goods? Like, meaning, are you producing liquids or powders, or what exactly are you producing?
In China, we produce powder. We do have, we, yeah, we do hear that in the U.S., some company, they have the option to produce liquid, but apparently, until now, we don't have that technology. So all the product we, we produce in China is in powder shape.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
And I do really appreciate you coming and visiting. We, we were talking about the, when, before I was interrupted, we were talking about the, the letter of credit and the, the potential special assessments. I would, I would like to know the magnitude of the special assessments that are going to be assessed to that property, and if the-
to be assessed to that property, and if the letter of credit doesn't cover all of it, in this case, I would like us to go back and renegotiate to increase the size of the letter of credit, to make sure that we're covered in any circumstance that Fu Feng walks away. And of course, I recognize that you were mentioning, Mr. Gosteb, that it, it goes, the letter of credit goes until the time they start producing goods. If they walk away after they're producing goods, no problem, I'll buy the facility and start making all sorts of money and pay the special assessments. So, but I would like to, if we could do that for the short term, that would be great. I would like to talk about the natural gas pipeline. Mr. Phelan, I think you and, and Mayor Bucinski went to the state of North Dakota and talked about that natural gas pipeline. Can, can one of you speak intelligently as to why the state of North Dakota wants to move the natural gas across the state to the eastern part of the state?
I think I could start with that. First, along the Highway 2 corridor, you have lots of cities that don't have natural gas. They're relying on propane, they're relying on other sources that are, you know, difficult. They don't have that directly piped to them. Grand Forks in the northeastern part of the state is running, we're running out. We have a limited supply that's coming through here, so it makes a lot of sense to already get it here. And they saw opportunity for industrial growth. Lastly is they're flaring gas right now, so you've got gas that's being flared, and now they can pipe here and can be used for industrial production. So, that's a big piece because as you see our country and how we've gone from being energy independent to having now to have to deal with energy sources from outside our country, that allows the state of North Dakota to be able to actually take more oil out of the ground, which goes to the bottom line, goes to the bottom line of the city's, or sorry, the state's budget in the legacy fund. So unless, unless they have usage for that natural gas, they can't even pump any more oil. So, I think if on their, on their stance, it's probably four or fivefold as far as the reason to get natural gas out here.
So, just to provide additional clarity, the state of North Dakota is currently flaring natural gas in western North Dakota.
Yes.
They're just burning it off. It's going up in smoke. And so, for the people that call me and talk about they're worried about the, the usage of fossil fuels, we're actually going to find a positive use for the natural gas that's currently being burned anyway in western North Dakota. I, I think, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's true.
Very good. One, one quick, yeah, Mr. Phelan, Mr. Veen, I was going to ask one follow-up on that related to that. We're talking about putting in a traditional half million dollars to upsize that pipe. At some point in the future, as that natural gas pipe is coming from the west, see, we're upsizing the one from the east, at some point in the future, some town along the way is going to go to the state and they're going to say, hey, wait a minute, we might actually, instead of the six-inch pipe that you're putting in, we might want a nine-inch pipe so that we have a little extra capacity so that we can bring industry to our community, like Devil's Lake, for example, which has an abundance of water. They're going to go to the state and ask the state to pick up that town. I can guarantee it. Let's all remember, when that happens, that we're going to go back to the state and ask them for our half a million dollars back. I want it on record because it will happen. One of the towns along that path are going to come into the state and ask for that money, and when it goes through, we had better make sure that our hand is right there dipping in the state's pocket as well. That's just a point of.
Can I add to that?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I think you bring up the same thing we did at the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. By the time we got done with the design, which was originally intended for us, it serves half the population of North Dakota. I mean, it's got that design capability into it, and it even goes one step further, it serves into Minnesota. So if gas is being flared off, can it not, as a minimum, it better cover our needs if we're going to pay money for it for the long-term, but it may even have availability beyond that. It seems to me that more study could go into it to make sure, because once you're burying the pipe, to increase by one inch in diameter is not very expensive, but the volume is tremendous.
Thank you, Mr. Veen, and I'm sorry I always have my back to you. I apologize for that. I think that there has been some discussion about the, the plant putting the local elevators out of business. I, I hope that people listening and watching heard the farmers talk about this and how it's going to be good for the farmers. Not only that, that they need 100,000 bushels a day, and they don't have capacity for storage on their site. So we know that they will be purchasing from the elevators. We know they will. I believe that the rising tide is going to lift all the ships, and it will help all the elevators too. However, the one point when, when people tell me that the co-ops are going to go down, the co-op elevators are going to go down, the co-op elevators are by nature a co-op. They're owned by the farmers. And so if the elevator goes down, it's because the farmers are bypassing their own ownership interest and going and selling directly to the plant, which, as a, somebody that knows a little bit about business, that is counterintuitive. So, I believe that the, that the local elevators are going to thrive, and if anyone has any actual data to counteract that point, I'd be happy to listen to it and, and, you know, hear a different opinion. Mr. Leek consistently asks about slave labor. I think we shouldn't not address it, we should address it. I think the plight of the Uyghurs is horrible. I think people know that, and I think, again, as I've said, if it's found that Fu Feng is using slave labor, we shouldn't allow them in our community. I, I think most rational people will agree to that, that we don't want organizations that are using slave labor. I, I will say though that it's highly unlikely, I guess, not necessarily impossible, but it seems highly unlikely that an organization is going to put 800 million dollars into the ground here, knowing that if they're found out that they have slave labor, that they're going to be forced to walk away from it. I have a hard time believing that that's going to happen. So, perhaps, perhaps Mr. Leek knows more than I do. I don't know. I do know that the federal government has checks for these things, and we will be watching and paying attention to what the federal government does and says. Which I think rational people would agree with that. Good? Okay, great. Everybody, everybody who has stayed to listen are the people that actually want the answers. Everyone else left. The people that were interrupting us have all, have all departed. I think that speaks volumes.
No, there's still.
Okay, there are still other people that were interrupting us. Just kidding. Okay. Knowing that, and again, related to the whole Chinese, Chinese aspect, the, Mr. Phelan, you probably don't know what it takes to get an employee from China to come to work in the United States. Are there anyone, anybody in here that's an authority on getting a, a green card or an H, you're an authority?
Well, okay, I have a little, I have personal experience in me going to England, okay, not China.
Got it.
But I did read about it, and I did email the, the bit online about how to hire employees from China, and I emailed and sent it to.
Okay. If, yeah. Dr. Bar. Well, here, here's what I know. Here's what I know. Our organization, we have my, my employer and the University of North Dakota, who is not my employer, we're often trying to get people from other countries to work. It is like lifting mountains to get the federal government to provide a work visa for somebody to come to the United States, and it is impossible to get them to do so if the job is something that can be filled by somebody from our country. There is no possible way, unless they're bringing in very, very specific engineers in the short term to help them with the construction of the plant. There is no way for Fu Feng to bring a horde of people from China to work in the plant. I think, Mr. Shuterash, 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 is that how you pronounce it? I think Mr. Shuterash has been very honest multiple times when he's come here and said, "We're going to be using Americans, our neighbors, that are going to be working here." So I, I think that the argument that there, we're going to be overrun with Chinese people that are, that are trying to spy. You know, the one thing that I didn't see in the plat is where the tower goes for the spies.
So, did you see American Factory, the movie?
I, I do not, I do not place much value in.
It's a documentary?
In documentaries that are put on Netflix in order, there are all sorts of.
Yeah, I guess.
Yep, so, stick to your questions, Mr. Sandy. I'm going to keep moving. Please. There are questions of where are they going to get their employees? Mr. Phelan, where do you suppose they're going to get all their employees?
I think if I start with Grand Forks and I start with the region, and, you know, Mr. Holt, he mentioned quality of life. You know what we need to do? We need to attract people from outside our region too, because this is a terrific community. And we should never think down on ourselves that we can't accomplish workforce. This is a terrific place. And so, sometimes we talk in a way of, we're not a loser, we're a winner, and this is a great community, and I think we're going to attract more and more people from outside our region, just like we're doing today.
I, I would agree. I believe that, and people, correct me if you disagree, but I think because of the average starting wage being close to 20% higher than the median family income in our community, we are going to be attracting people to come to Grand Forks to work these jobs. They will be bringing spouses who will then be able to work other jobs, and kids that will be going to our schools, helping provide revenue for our local school district. Again, that remains to be seen, but I believe that's true. Mr. Phelan, very pointed question, maybe Ms. Thorstedt knows this. What percentage of the typical costs of specials are the people, are the businesses that are not Fu Feng being asked to pay in their special assessments? So if, if we were just specialists, if we were just annexing these properties and Fu Feng weren't here to pay lion's share, and we weren't putting in city money and state money and federal money to help cover the cost of infrastructure, what percentage of the special assessments are those companies being asked to pay?
I don't know the percentage, but I know the, we talked about the water distribution. That is not planned to be assessed to any of the property owners. Sanitary sewer collection, those are the two primary things that in most developments, property owners get assessed. It's a big deal in this development that, right now, the proposed plan is for those two things not to be assessed to the properties. Further, the stormwater pond is in the, is in the queue of Fu Feng in the city. That would be the other third part that would be assessed. So sanitary sewer collection, water distribution, stormwater ponds, and that's why we talked earlier in the conversation a while ago about the residential developments. It's because the water is assessed, sanitary sewer collection's assessed, and the storm pond's assessed, along with the street. And on the street, in this case, 27th, we're going to pay 80% of it, so it's only going to get assessed 20%. So, we've eliminated a lot of the things that we did, that's why we don't need to defer specials in this case, because you know, it's easier, the city's paying for infrastructure that we normally don't pay for upfront.
People are being told that we're putting an undue burden on the property owners, the business owners on the north side of town. Can you please give me an educated guess as to what percentage of the special assessments that they are actually being asked to pay?
I think if you remove the flood protection, it's essentially zero.
If you remove the flood protection, which is, which is.
It would go from roughly, you know, a cost share on the road. If you look at water, wastewater, it'd be 100%. Now it's zero.
Right.
So, you would have a road at 20%.
So, the flood specials aside, everyone has to pay their fair share of the flood specials. Of water, wastewater, stormwater, roads, they're paying 10% of what they would normally be asked to pay? Maybe? So, for the people that, that call me up and say, "We're not doing anything for the folks in your township," I, I have a hard time, and I don't, but I don't know how to explain that to people. Frankly speaking, as a taxpayer, it, it really pisses me off that they're getting such a good deal, because all the rest of us have to pay our, our fair share. I'm still paying my share for 17th Avenue South. We're, but this is, the point is, this is important, and the, the business owners up there are being treated incredibly well. Again, that's just my opinion though. Mr. Mayor, I'm done with all my questions. Thank you.
I have one follow-up with that one.
Mr. Veen, as many questions as you want. I hope it's just the one though, please.
Well, for now, it's just the one. He got all of his questions, I want to have a few more. It does follow along with lines, exactly with what you're saying. You know, if you look at what typically people have to pay for in their annex, this is quite out of the ordinary. The, the question I probably have is, you, we have proposed policies that talk about SRF funding, which we don't necessarily have. We talked about forgiveness of loans, which we don't necessarily have yet either. So, we don't have a concrete plan that has been approved by the city council for funding this, and yet in the annexation, we're talking about and have given them prices for that. And I, I'm a little concerned where we make some type of promise to them based on a formula that's not been approved by the council, nor do we have fully understood approvals from state that they're going to do what we're, what we're planning to do. There could be a shortfall here. I don't know where that shortfall is going to come from and who's going to pay for that. But we're also telling the, the property owners, this is all they're going to pay. And I don't want to have a problem down the road saying, well, you told us this and now we don't get it, and if we, they don't pay, who is going to pay? It's the rest of the city that pays.
Yeah, Mr. Phelan, if you, you can add to that, but I, I think one of the benefits, one of the tough things we've seen, obviously, at the, at the gas pump with oil prices being so high is we've been hit, obviously, hard every time you fill your tank up. The, one of the benefits of the state of North Dakota is the legacy farming amount of oil money. So, I think we, we do have a pot of money that's going to be coming with the Prairie Dog funds, and then we'll have some flexibility to give us some backstopping on that. Not that that could be used in other places, but at least it's not going to be, you know, on the back of, of local taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, because we do, that's what I do, a risk assessment. What's the risk when that doesn't happen? What's the, how do we recover that? Because that is money that could have been spent for something else citywide too versus for just this one here, right? So, that's a little bit of the concern that I have, is how do we make promises when we've, and we haven't had a city council approval of the formula? And, and I think that should come sooner rather than later, because I think you've made a lot of assumptions, and we may not all agree with them, and there's no council approval of it.
Would you say, I think at least on the water, I mean, you've got preliminary approval or full approval on it, like the potable. You know, you're, you're looking at some federal funding, and you're looking at SRF funds, which need to get out the door. I mean, I'd say the level of confidence is high, but it's not 100%. So I think, you know, it's, it's, it does need to have a council approval sooner rather than later, so they're, they're confident on that area, and we might not have all of it sorted, because even the forgivable side, you know, that could be years down the line.
Yeah, I mean, that's right. And so, is there any way to, to further mitigate that risk at this point and still pass it? Because otherwise, I feel, I don't feel comfortable passing, not knowing how we can fund that.
I think Mayor Bucinski said well. So when I presented at the city water commission, they asked this very question on the drinking water side. Hey, we're going to give you 60% cost share on the, on the water mains. What if it doesn't come in? And what I've said is this, similar to what we do with the strategic infrastructure growth areas, is that we, right now, the city council intends to annex this area to include the adjacent area, and because they need water supply for both potable and for fire protection, we have the fire station already to serve it. So what I've said is, worst-case scenario, we're going to serve the adjacent properties with water mains and receive a 60% cost share. Worst-case on the Fu Feng site, Fu Feng doesn't come, but we have a great site for the next industry. I think, so I, and that's why they gave us the 60%. We have to go back and get construction, so I feel pretty strongly on that one. On the, on the sanitary sewer side, we are going to get a clean water SRF loan. It's just whether the 49% of it will be forgivable. Right now, the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality is creating rules. Those rules probably won't be completed until later this year, and so we are out there a little ways on whether that's going to be forgivable on, on the sanitary sewer collection side. On the stormwater side with the pond, I think the best part of that is, is to annex the property. Fu Feng, I think, wants to purchase the property then, if it's going that direction, and that at least we have that parcel inside the city. It's another further step that Fu Feng is going to come, because they're paying a large portion of, of that stormwater pond, if you will, including the pump station and all those sorts of things. But I think on some of these items, I agree with Mayor Bucinski, we do have the Prairie Dog funds that can supplement, and we're fortunate to have those funds. funds. We have economic development funds that we could put, similar to what we did in those other growth areas that we've mentioned around the city for primary sector development. We would use those as backstops. Our one A game is to go in there and have a really good argument from the state. I think what the adjacent property owners are worried about, the one they're worried about is on the, or the loan of 49%, what if that doesn't happen? Is the city council going to step in and find an alternative strategy to fund that 49%? That's probably the biggest question we've heard. I feel good on the drinking water side. We're gonna have to wait a while on the sanitary sewer side. I think at some point, we just have to accept the risk and move forward, because that's a small piece of a bigger hole.
I guess I'd like to just mention one thing, too. And I know this is another cost that they have up there. You know, we talked about the special systems, but there is an increased cost that's gonna come from being in this area, added to city tax and park district tax, which currently isn't the case. So there is additional cost that they are there, so I think that's important to keep in mind. But there's also additional revenue there. And we also hope that this area's gonna grow. We want this area to grow. We want SNS and other groups that are there to now have the ability to grow, to grow. So I think that there's, you know, an economic development play there, just like out in the industrial parks. So I think there's, there is some risk, but there's, you know, I think there's an upside that's big beyond, you know, the big project and all these other companies that are in there. So, I'll leave it at that.
No, I think that's a great comment. I think what we, you know, if you look at it as a strategic growth area, because if we do it here, why don't we do it in other places? I mean, that would be, because it's not necessarily our norm. But if we, I guess, identify it under that umbrella, at least it makes me feel better that there's rationale for what we're doing, and that we have thought about it, and we have a fallback for why we're doing it, with just some explanation.
Mayor Bocinski, I think the clearest sign was, we had Oscarville, clearest case, we saw that's a growth area that we're gonna put infrastructure in. We served in an adjacent infill area in Oscarville. And then we had the greenfield site, which is the Corinta site that they talked about. That's where Red River Biorefinery went in. We also had green pulp that never went forward. I think other areas in that greenfield. So we put in upfront infrastructure into that area. The difference in this case, we're proposing better cost shares than went in on that greenfield site and that went in in Oscarville, to be frank. But we have special programs now with drinking water and with sanitary sewer collection. So we have examples that are similar but not the same.
All right, so we do have a motion, a second item 4.13. So if there's any further comments on 4.13, I'd look to have a vote from the council on that and then move on to the next agenda item. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of item 4.13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item 4.14, this is now the, I can listen off, you're getting tired, Marine, go ahead.
No, it's okay. 4.14 is the approval of vacation, North 32nd Street from 30th Avenue North to 33rd Avenue North.
So if anybody's got any specific questions on that piece, that's probably the, maybe the least concerning of all of them, but, Mr. Sanders.
I do have a question. Who owns the, is that, does the property line run down the middle of that road?
I guess the vacation, where does that split go?
Yeah, if you look back at the plat, here's the vacated area, so it's completely on their property.
It's completely on the one property.
Yeah, they own both sides now. We're gonna ask for Lot 3 to be dedicated as part of that, we're getting that, that's gonna be where the pond is.
Got it.
The actual dedication roadway will be on their mainland.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm gonna approve them, Mayor.
Got a motion to approve. We have a second. Second from Mr. Kalani. So the motion was from President Sandy, second from Mr. Kalani. Any further?
Weber's second, too.
Okay. We'll give it, okay, we'll give the second, show it to Mr. Weber. Any further comment, item 4.14? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
4.15, introduce ordinance and preliminary approval of request to amend the zoning map to include PNE PUD located at 527th Avenue North.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just enter in, this is gonna be one area where planning and zoning had the recommendation before you with the condition on that covered lagoons. We're still, as was discussed, still studying that, and we didn't wanna put limitations on that. So, that was a presentation that I'll be asking Mr. Getty to make to P&amp;Z during final approval next month as well.
Okay, then, just to be clear, this is introduction 413 and 415, introduction ordinances will be coming back. Would the vacation, would that, that item be the last? I guess we've already had action on that, but that's done? This is final action tonight?
Final action...
4.14, is that a public hearing under?
That'll come back to you still.
So, all these items are still coming back?
Yeah, to city council, correct.
Okay, Ms. Mock, did you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on Mr. Maticek's points. I think the easiest is probably to discuss the exemption area A. That was the cooling tower height. What concern would there be with the cooling towers at that height? Any?
Yeah, so the language that's in the cooling towers, the current city code allows them to go 100% above.
Okay.
So in this case, we're following that. In this case, 150 is the limit on the building height. Normally, in an I-2, it's 75 feet high. And then the last piece he had discussed was the conditional use permit. We're not suggesting that we don't follow any guidelines here. Rather, I would say that this is going through a much more rigorous process than we've ever done with any other conditional use, including Simplot, who has a biodigester as well. So, in this case, the conditional use permit process is a separate process. We're wrapping that into the rezoning. We're still doing all the notifications, but in terms of due diligence, we're doing much more here with the party consultant.
Yes, but, and I don't know if Mr. Maticek left, because I don't wanna guess at his concern, but a conditional use permit has to be renewed, so...
Not necessarily. Those can have unlimited. So in this case, we are following it with the PUD. So, if there's ever any issues, our due diligence reports allows us to take a look at those at any time, and I'll leave that up to Mr. Goss.
So, we would have the recourse, if there was an issue, to pull the PUD and relook at that?
Yeah.
Add requirements or address any concerns and issues?
Correct.
Okay. And I think his other concern was the and-associated uses clause that was included. Can we tighten that language? Is there a reason that that was added?
Well, you know, there's lots of things that are going on with this, that they're telling us. I guess we have, we have documentation, we can bring it next time in terms of what's on that site plan. I believe what his concern is, is the rest of the location. But like any PUD, we always put on there, it's I-2. And in this case, this is I-2 up in that northern portion, which I think in the past has been Mr. Maticek's concern.
Any other construction would still need to come before here? Anything else that's, any touching, any infrastructure, water, wastewater, any building, any construction, anything that starts to go through the city in that area?
It still would come before and go through our normal review, correct?
So if they added a building, it would have to go through review? Or if they added additional facilities? I think that that's what his concern is, and I, he's served on planning and zoning for a long time. I've gotta take his concern serious.
Yeah, I'm not too sure what all of his concerns are, and I'll try to get with him before our final approval. But in terms of, as long as it meets the PUD, we go through a site plan approval process and check that box. So, I'm kinda hard time trying to answer all the questions that he may have, because some of the, some of his thoughts, I guess, I'd need to get with him specifics on those.
Can I interject? But that's done administratively?
A site plan would be, yes, correct.
Sure. Can we attach something to the PUD that says any new development has to go through city council rather than administrative approval?
You certainly could. But that is a potential condition you could put on the PUD, correct?
I guess I'd ask, yeah, Mr. Goss, is there any issues with that? I think that you can come up with it this time.
No, I don't, not that I can think of. I think we'd probably need to talk to Fu Fang and have that discussion and maybe bring that back and, at the, what's that?
How do you want to put the condition on there?
No, but this is just a preliminary approval. And what I'm suggesting is that, trying to, I think the issue is that the language about any associated uses is maybe broader than what some are used to. And maybe adding some language to tighten up, and like Ms. Mock said, tighten up that language probably makes some sense.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Great. And then, yeah, just have it very clear that's separated at the next link, so we can see exactly where that language is.
Sure.
Present that.
And the site plan, the only question I had on the site plan, to be honest, I haven't seen it, don't know what it is. I'm a little bit worried about truck backup and storage. If I go by what I see at Thorlson, and I can see lines of trucks for literally a mile, sometimes trying to get in, and I just, and I've been told by Mr. Grafter that they think there's room there for it, but I certainly don't wanna see them backing up on North Washington as an example.
Yep, that's been a concern, and we can bring you what we have so far, correct.
All right, any further comment, item 4.15?
So then, we're asking that if there are changes to the site plan or changes to the site, that it would be brought forward to the council? That's being added?
So I think the motion would be to approve, but to ask that additional language be added that can be essentially, you know, reviewed by council or in some other means, to be able to have the language and something to work off for the next meeting.
Yep. Well, tighten up the language, you'll have it by final, to include new uses and taking a look at that.
Do we have some time before this public hearing? When is the public hearing? What would the date be for that one?
May, the first Wednesday of May, May 2nd, I believe. I don't have a calendar.
Well, this would come, this one wouldn't go back to planning and zoning, or would it?
Yes, the rezoning does.
Okay. That's the last item. All right. So we'll have two more locks, both there and here.
Correct.
Getting the language correct, so.
That's correct.
Mr. Brooks, if I could ask you a question. Do we need to remove the language of no open ponds?
That's correct. So I think the recommendation before you from P&amp;Z does have that on there, so...
I think for the discussion, we're gonna do a further due diligence. I would ask the council to remove that, but make a condition on the development agreement regarding the wastewater pretreatment review. That's already being done in that area.
Mr. Veen?
I didn't know we were advancing the previous motion. I thought we were creating our own motion.
Yes, I'm just saying right now, if you're gonna use that current motion, that's...
Yeah, and I was thinking we had a separate motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor at the moment? We don't have a floor on the table at the moment, so I guess we'll be looking for a motion if we can clarify that as we speak it, too. Do you wanna take a whack at that, Mr. Veen?
I don't know what the wording would be.
Maybe, you know, President Sandy, you subed on the planning and zoning committee at some point, so...
I'll make the motion to approve the amending the zoning map to approve PNE PUD with the stipulation that city attorney will tighten the language to provide more clarity as to the approved uses of the additional land, I suppose, to the north of the plant facility.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Igo. Motion, President Sandy. Any further discussion, item 4.15? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries unanimously. Our final action item, please.
Yeah, 4.16, approval of a resolution relating to Highway 81 North annexation generally located between 27th Avenue North and 40th Avenue North and Glaston Railroad tracks and existing businesses on North Washington Street and Mill Road.
All right, any questions on that final item, item 4.16? Ms. Mock, you wanna start, please?
Sure. So...
Actually, if I could just quickly, Mr. Brooks, for clarity, this item would come back. This would be a public hearing essentially after you get the zoning done, so we're looking at probably the second city council meeting in May? Is that what you would?
Yeah, I believe so. I think the only thing, we'd have to make sure that the publication twice in the Herald, that we can still make that second meeting in May, but I believe we can. But before you, on the screen is the requirements for the annexation. It's a little bit different than the other ones.
Okay. We don't have that on our screens right now.
Oh, I'm apologize.
Sure.
In this case, we'll notice, publish in the paper twice, and we send out certified mails to the owners, requiring, notifying them of that public hearing, and then the owners have 30 days. So, in that case, I...
That might push it till...
Might push it to the first Monday of June.
Okay, okay. Looking at the 30 days in May, starting, okay. All right. Sorry, Ms. Mock, please.
So, so much of this is so complicated. I think, you know, the annexation, to me, is really a different question than even Fu Fang, because it has such a long history. Mr. Phelan, this area is served by flood protection. Is that correct?
Yeah. Council Vice President Mock, it is, it's bounded by the English Cooley diversion on the north. And so the annexation area is really to that north boundary, except for that northeast corner where state owns the land with the North Dakota State Mill. And then also, there's Mr. Cadillac's business is not as part of the annexation, so in, just in that northeast corner. But it's bounded by the English Cooley diversion, so it's clearly within the flood protection zone.
And how does our flood protection work? When do you pay for that service?
Essentially, what happens once you get annexed, there is a future flood protection assessment that comes on. And so everyone who was part of the, inside the city paid their flood specials, and I think there were over three phases. And then they set up a future special. So as land is developed and moved into the city, you're not paying for the flood protection project itself, but you're paying for the renewal of those facilities. And that's where your, those revenues come in. So, we always talk with the stormwater fund, it has those ongoing flood protection. And then you have that bigger capital fund, and so that's where those funds are going into, to help, you know, renew the pump stations, erosion control, all those things that go into making sure we can sustain that flood protection.
Mr. Phelan, so were those funds, I mean, is that part of the plan that the city had? I mean, the city needs those funds to be able to continue to maintain and operate that. I mean, without that, you're going back to the citizens that are currently in flood protection and annexed to cover those costs.
It is. You know, in lieu of that, we'd be doing citywide special assessments all over again, and we'd say, hey, you know, we've got to make some improvements, we're gonna do another citywide. So this has been an effective way, I think, where we can sustain the flood protection project long-term with using future. Again, it's probably, I've said it before, it's a challenging for growth, because it's by the largest special assessment property owners see as they brought, get brought into the city of Glen Forks.
Sorry, Ms. Mock, please, continue.
So I guess, to me, that's why this issue gets so confusing, because this is really about the annexation. I did agree with a lot of the comments that Mr. Reichert made at planning and zoning, that some of it seems somewhat rushed, especially since we don't have a lot of the results back on, you know, the studies that we're doing for Fu Fang and seeing if it is even viable. That's also further complicated. Like, I understand the sentiments with the vote, I understand the concerns about putting an action towards the public. I just, you know, I think, for me, part of the difference is, we didn't do this before they collected signatures. We waited until they collected signatures. We forced them to do that action. And I think it is a little more complicated. Even if we did have a vote, we would have questions of language and timing, and those all need to be considered very seriously. This is not the city's land, so it's not something that we can prevent the sale of. This isn't even something that we can prevent Fu Fang from coming here. It's more the city investment that becomes a question. And so, my biggest worry in all of this is that I'm afraid for the people who are concerned on this, that the city just is not a credible source to them. And I can, it concerns me for the long-term leadership capacity of the city to be a credible source of information to the citizens. And I don't, you know, the annexation is a different question, and so I'm, you know, concerned about the points that Mr. Maticek came up with, and I think we need to follow those concerns seriously and make the best decisions we can. I also, I worry about the credibility of the city and how we maintain our leadership capacity when so many people don't trust what we're telling them.
Council Vice President Mock, certainly we are hearing credibility, but you know, when I speak with people and I tell them the story of how we got to where we are, people are relieved that we have a city council, we have a mayor, and we have city administrative staff that are following through all these details. And so I feel confident in that. I feel confident in the fact that we've been to the state water commission twice and have received approval for 60% cost share on the drinking water fire protection side, on the raw water side. I feel confident that we've submitted on the drinking water side for that other 40% cost share. We've been ranked in the top 30 of, you know, over 300 projects, so I feel really confident about that project. We've already submitted on the clean water SRF program, and as I went across from left to right on all those programs, we have other projects in there, we've engaged quite well. People, for example, the traffic study, it's going to be overwhelming, there's no way you can do it. We've come back with studies, preliminary studies that show that we can move forward with the traffic. We've moved forward with the North Dakota DOT, they've even moved up some of the projects into secondary to primary issues. So, you know, our credibility is on the line. I feel good the fact that every issue people have brought up is, is in the development agreement. And beyond all the specifics, you know, if there's, if Fu Feng's going to break a federal, state, or local law, well, that's in the development agreement, you can't do that. But I think what Fu Feng is looking for, they would probably, they want to close on this land, they want to demonstrate to the city of Grand Forks that they're committed to the project by doing that. I'm just going to tell you, there's not a lot of companies that come in and say, we're going to buy a 370-acre parcel in the midst of a development agreement where we haven't finalized everything, but they're willing to do that. They want to have some predictability with city government. That's what they're looking for. And so that's what is in front of you today, they want to move forward, they want to show that they have, they want to work with due diligence with us. That's what's really in front of us right now. And it's hard when you're here and you're just starting some of the due diligence, and then people say you don't have any answers. That was the whole part of the development agreement, that we would get answers. We said, we stood up here and said, likely most of those final answers aren't going to come until the fall of this year. In the meantime, we've gone to the state of North Dakota to say, we're doing our due diligence, we'd like cost shares on the upfront engineering on these things, and you know what the state of North Dakota has? They trust the city of Grand Forks that we're going to do the right thing. And do we have to do that every day? You bet we do. And the pressure is on us, there's no doubt about it. It's a seven-day-a-week thing. It's on our operators that have to do all these things. So I take umbrage because we've worked hard on this thing and we've done the very best we can. And when people have had questions that have come up here, I think we've been able to answer every question. And when we don't know the answer, we say, we'll come back to the next meeting and answer it. Fu Feng is looking for predictability. And when Mr. Baumback was, I'm not even sure he's still here, he's still here. What, what others are looking for is Grand Forks as the way with all to keep moving forward with projects. And if the projects aren't right, we said this from the very start of the development agreement, if something's not right with the project, we're going to come back here and say, this is a showstopper, we can't move forward. There have been no showstoppers yet. But a lot of the due diligence, we're at the front edge of at this point in time.
Mr. Veen?
Just, and Todd, if you don't mind, I want to do a follow-up on that because, you know, we've said, I've said for a long time, we want those final answers, the ones that you just talked about. You know, I talked to you and John about trying to get this better communicated and understood out in the public, right? And you've changed the webpage, you've started to get things up. I think we have a responsibility to the public to make sure that everything we say and do is available, people can see it, they can read it, they can challenge it, right? Because they may, but we've got to have data that, and I like the idea of third-party review and approval of that. But if we do have a problem, and you talk about the final answers, and we decide we can't follow through with this, what does that do with the annexation? The annexation is permanent. I really did like the planning and zonings to put it to a date certain, and I was going to challenge Mr. Gosdod to search and be creative for how we could have a date certain and still be able to proceed. Now, I know that you, I've heard what you said earlier, you said, basically, my interpretation can't be done. I'm asking you to be creative and figure out how to get it done. And that that would be a part of what we would do with the annexation because there may be those things that could come up, and then do we want to continue with the annexation and the other financial commitments we've made? So that's where I am with the annexation. I'd like to see us approval contingent.
So then I have to ask a question, contingent on what? What is that contingency?
I don't think I could tell you that right now, but I think it's something that's worthy of trying to articulate and figure out. I know others haven't done that, but hey, we were the first to have a city sales tax. I mean, we've done other things to be the first, and we can do something here, too.
If you're going to do that, then you're going to have to come up with that contingency tonight, or you're not going to be able to approve that resolution because the resolution has to be sent out to landowners and has to be published. And if we're going to put a contingency in there, that would have to be included within the resolution.
Can we hold that for two weeks and then figure that out before we pass it?
You don't necessarily have to vote on the annexation tonight, it's not required. I don't know how that impacts the Fu Feng and their acquisition and other issues that go along with the development agreement.
I don't either, but all I'm saying is, I appreciated that when it came out of planning and zoning, and I feel like we should try to figure out how to make that happen, that's all.
Mayor, if I may, that is exactly why I was going down the path of their letter of credit. Between now and when we have the next public, the public hearing, and then it comes back to us, I want to know all of the risk. And then, and they said that they were going to work to put that data together for us, and then we could negotiate a letter of credit to cover that risk.
But it wouldn't just be about the cost, it would be about the annexation at all.
Certainly, but I think that the, how do I say this correctly? The business owners that I've spoken to up there, their concern that they've told me over and over again is, if Fu Feng, if they get annexed, but Fu Feng doesn't come in, the city of Grand Forks is going to have all of these expenses, and they believe we're going to go to those business owners and saddle them with this debt. I think if we can show that we are not going to saddle them with this debt, I was going to say the majority, I don't know if it's the majority. I know at least two of the business owners up there are okay, knowing that there's no, they're okay with the annexation, knowing that there is no chance the city's going to come back to them and try to get more money out of them that would have been covered by Fu Feng. Mayor Bocinski, I would ask that we'd approve the annexation, and with that review that Mr. Sandy has come out, I know what you're saying, Councilmember Veen, you want to make sure regarding the risk mitigation, so I'd ask you to approve it with the understanding that we're going to come back, analyze some of the risks regarding the annexation, whether it's infrastructure or other related things. But I would ask you to approve that with, on that final public hearing, that we'll have that information well in advance for your review.
Okay, so this is coming back?
Right, tonight we have to set the public hearing date, so we'd be setting it for June 6th.
Yeah, and I just want to be on record, that doesn't mean that I'm supporting it, is the big issue that I want to make sure. Because unless we have that, I think, better knowledge awarded, and maybe that's why I would vote no now until we have it, whatever, but I hope we can get that when we do have, when it's done.
If you vote yes, I understand. You're voting yes, but you know further information is coming for your review.
Very clearly.
Turn your mic on there, Mr. Veen.
Yeah, so I don't know, that's why, so I waffle between saying no, knowing it's going to pass anyway, versus, you know, waiting. So that's the only issue that I got to think in the last, next couple of minutes, so.
I think it's a preliminary, to me, it's a preliminary approval. You're making it on note that you need to be satisfied in between with information to mitigate the risk, and that's our job before, well before that public hearing occurs.
Mayor Bocinski, I'll make a motion to include Mr. Phelan said as well.
I'll second that. We got a motion and a second. Motion for Mr. Iggo, second from Mr. Weber. Any further conversation? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to number five, information items.
5.1 is a statement of changes in cash balance as of January 31st and February 28th. And 5.2 is the investment portfolio summary as of March 31st.
All right, and then we did have a few online citizen comments, but they've been posted, is that correct? Anybody else that wanted to speak this evening? Mr. Kozar, yes, please.
I just think it's important that the citizens realize that they've been 100% represented and that it has, in a sense, gone to a vote. They voted, and you guys are very humble, and you're not going to self-promote, but they voted for every single one of you in office. Therefore, you, the constitution has been honored, North Dakota and U.S., you were voted in. Unfortunately, some people always say, well, there's flaws in democracy, you know, but it is the system we chose, and it's the best system that there is, and we're a capitalist society as well. And I just think it's too, it's sad, I guess, that the citizens don't recognize that their voice has been heard all along. And not everybody agrees on everything, but the fact of the matter is that they voted you in. You represent the city of Grand Forks, therefore you represent every single citizen, and their voice was heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kozar. Please, ma'am.
I have a question. Item number action 4.3, the light pillars on North Fork.
Yes.
Has that already, I mean, I have a green action item, so we never discussed that tonight.
Yes, I apologize if you, did you wish to speak on that item, did it get passed as part of the consent agenda?
No, I was more or less in listening on, I was listening to talk radio today, and that's what got me coming to the meeting tonight. And I just wanted to check if the statement on the radio is correct. We're putting in four decorative lights to the tune of $44,000 apiece. Is that correct?
I believe those match, yeah, they match the demers, the same lights around demers.
Okay. How do we justify $44,000 a light for four lights that are decorative pillars? I mean, why radio talking? That's 176,000. That's being used for something like that? Where's the money being taken from?
I think, can you be answer that fund? I would say that this project was, you know, started many years ago as part of the downtown plan, and the idea was an artistic corridor. So they're adding an artistic element which included those lights. And you may have seen them, I don't know if you've seen them or not, on demers, they're large, they're expensive, which is why you're.
I guess it's just a question. I knew nothing about it until radio today. My gosh, if you were to ask radio opinion.
Yeah.
I think the Third Street ones are going to go up this construction season, and then these finals, these are the final four, I think, for now at least. They're going to be placed, you know, where the Edgewood Building, and they're going to build a boutique hotel, so they're going to, there're going to be four through that intersection by Central. And I think that'll be by the last area that these four will go.
Forty-four thousand?
Yep, and they're going to be taking a beautification funds half, and the other part is street and highway funds, so it's going to be a 50-50 cost share. They certainly are serving a streetscape function, but they also serve a public art feature, too.
Okay, well, I was just listening on the radio, and I was trying to figure out how we justify $44,000 a light.
Well, you know, they're going to be there a long time, they're going to be there a long time.
I think it's important to point out, too, do you have any frame of reference how much light fixtures actually cost? I mean, you're saying $44,000, but do you, do you know that the University of North Dakota, have you been down University Avenue through UND? The light pillars that they have are maybe a third or a quarter of the size of the ones that we have, and they paid $25,000 for each of theirs. This is what things cost.
Okay, like I said, just go to what I heard on the radio, and I'm trying to figure out $44,000.
And I do appreciate, it's very hard to come here and wait this long to not hear.
Yeah, that was my question for 5:30 afternoon.
So I'm sorry that I wish we had.
We didn't go down the actions like my husband did, she was still there.
Have changed her mind on that one now because she waited so long. I promised you.
I still think that's a lot of money.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. It is a lot of money. Me and Dana will get to ask that question on the radio tomorrow on Wednesday. I don't know, I have a great answer for it, but.
They discussed it a long time on the radio, Jim.
All right, so thank you. I appreciate you waiting that time and your comments. We'll move on to seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 is your vendor's list as is presented.
Got a motion to prove, motion from Sandy, second from Iggo. All those in favor, same five, same sign. Vendor list is approved.
And 7.2, minutes from December 13th, 20th, January 3rd, and the 18th.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Mr. Sandy.
My apologies, but I haven't had the chance to read the minutes. Would you like them kicked? Yeah, can we kick them to the next meeting, please? Thank you.
Why are we not, just not motion, and we'll just plant on those the next meeting? We'll move on to eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Phelan, you can keep it within a half an hour, please.
I will. Thanks for all your attention, I really appreciate it. I think we made some good ground today. Thank you.
All right, moving on to nine, mayor and council member comments. I'll start with Mr. Iggo, please.
I better pass, thank you, mayor.
Ms. Dockler is absent, Mr. Weber.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cavani.
All right, I'm going to take one minute, real quick. So just to talk about the credibility item for the city, sorry, I'm losing my voice. I've had a lot of, I've spent a lot of hours talking to people on the phone about this, and the comments that I've had and the questions that I've answered are all in the EDC documentation that's online. So I just would ask people, if you have a question, don't go to Facebook, go to the city's website, or call us, or call the city administrator, we'll point you in the right direction. They're all there, all the answers are there, or it tells you what we don't have and when it's coming. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cavani. Mr. Veen?
Can we extend this like 10 more minutes because then it'll be a six-hour meeting, and that'll probably be a record, don't you think?
You don't know my comments yet. All right, Vice President Mock?
Oh, I think I've talked enough.
All right, President Sandy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know sometimes it's unfortunate, we can't always make everyone happy. Again, it's, these decisions aren't easy for any of us, and I think based upon the time we're willing to spend, the amount of phone calls, the amount of communication that I do, I think, you know, it's interesting because I get, over and over again, people complain to me that Kyle doesn't respond, and that Ken doesn't respond, and that Jeannie doesn't respond. And so I go out of my way trying to respond to people, and then they take my emails, and then they put them out on social media so that everybody can bash everything that I said. So you want us to respond, but then you want to take every opportunity to bash us at every possible chance. I, although I'm not losing my patience because I know people need to, they need communication, it is becoming a little bit tiring, so I just hope that people can continue to act respectful like we try to be respectful of other people, try to be respectful of us in our time as well, because these aren't full-time jobs for us, and we are, I'll continue to say it, although we do get paid, these are volunteer, and when other people want to volunteer, they should raise their hand. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. My last comment, obviously, very, very long meeting, tough, these are tough meetings, this is tough to get through, these are big things that are happening. I would echo what President Sandy said earlier, I've spent almost a decade living I would echo what President Sandy said earlier, I've spent almost a decade living overseas, I've gone, been traded, been moved around multiple times, have had tough family issues, have had lots of different things happen in my life, and the last two months have been probably some of the worst two months of my life trying to sort through this. It's not been fun, it's not fun for anybody up here, but these are good people trying to make decisions they believe are in the best interest of the city, and I wholeheartedly believe that in each and every one of them, so just want to thank them for their work, want to thank all the city staff that sticks around and has been doing a lot of work on this as well. I mean, this has been a burden on city staff, this has been a tough, tough couple of years, when you mix in COVID, now inflation, a lot of other things, people are riled up, and they're rightfully so, but the staff of the City of Grand Forks has shown up and gone to work every single time, and I just appreciate that, appreciate everything you've done, so. I don't think anyone's ever clapped in my comments before, so let's do, sorry, Mr. Veen, you're going to.
Well, I'm going to, like I said, stretch it out, no, I did want to say, this is around the anniversary of 25, 25 years since the flood and the recovery, I was interviewed on public radio for a show yesterday, and the question was asked, you know, did you want to be here, do you want to stay, and I basically said, this is the greatest place to be, is to be here in Grand Forks, and I think it's very significant for all of us that this is, this is where we really want to be.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. With that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Got a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.